Okay, good morning. It's 9:32 and I'm going to call this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order and ask Madam Clerk to please call the roll to establish quorum and read the Metro Cable statement and meeting procedures.
Good morning, Member Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
And Desmond.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, November 10th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Sitting is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda/off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to the clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda/off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of the public comments, the speaker waives his request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the American Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff or assistants or contact the clerk's office at (916) 874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you, Alma. But everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, well, thank you and good morning. We have a very full agenda today, but we are going to start with off-agenda public comments. And this is an opportunity for folks to speak about an item that is not specifically listed on today's agenda. And what we have started doing this year, which has worked out well in terms of helping us manage the agenda, is take off-agenda public comments for 30 minutes. And if we have people sign up for off-agenda that go beyond the 30 minutes, we will take the remainder of those commenters in the afternoon after the timed items. So with that, Madam Clerk, oh, good morning, hello. Thank you, Alma, for filling in. Do we have off-agenda public comment?
We do. We have several here. Hang on just one second if I can get them up on the board. So our first one is Kai.
Yes.
Good morning.
Oh, thank you. Good morning, all supervisor. I was here last meeting. It has been three months since I went to DA office on August 11. I am still not able to get help from DA office to review the case file of my father's die of hit and run. My family is under the DA office Victim Assistant Program. I went to DA office last week. They even didn't have a staff to talk with me. That's why I appealed Board of Supervisor to look into if any political power is behind I also begging all supervisor can help me to forward my DMV payroll for email to State Auditor Office, Mr. Michael Tilton. State Auditor Office accept any person to report California state fraudulent activity. That's why Sacramento County official can do it for me. I was a Sestes student. I went to Sestes professor, criminal justice and accounting professor. They didn't help. I went to Sacramento B, KCLA, ABC 10, they didn't help. Of course, last year I went, I talked to Mr. Jim Cooper when he was a lawmaker. He didn't help too. So that's why I hope you can help to look into any political power behind my father's hit and run case and my DMV payroll for case. I appreciate for your helps.
And thank you, sir. And we're not gonna, I know you were here before and I can't remember if you made contact with one of the supervisors' offices, but I'm not too clear on what you're asking for, but I'm asking, yeah, no, I'm looking at Mr. Jones. Eric, could you possibly just maybe give him a card and make contact with him so we can help understand what the issues?
Yes, Chair, we've actually spoken before and I've referred everything to Sacramento Police Department.
So you're already, you're in touch with county staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sabrina.
Good morning. My name is Sabrina Pike and I've been an IHSS provider in Sacramento for over three years. And for all those three years, I've been on the county's waitlist to receive health care benefits. I remember when I first called to enroll back in 2020 and I was told that I was number 700 on the waitlist. Does that sound like a health care plan that's adequately funded? Right now, I currently qualify for Medi-Cal because our IHSS wage is so low, but as Medi-Cal eliminates the protections for Medi-Cal recipients put in place during COVID, I'm at risk of losing my coverage. My current IHSS wage, along with the amount of allotted hours that my consumer qualifies for, puts me just above the income threshold to continue receiving Medi-Cal, but nowhere near enough to pay for health care on my own. As a breast cancer survivor, going without health care coverage cannot be an option for me. I undergo regular checkups every six months to monitor my remission. I have frequent visits with my oncologist. I have a variety of vitamins and medications that I have to take and to keep me healthy and cancer-free. I just hope that I'm finally able to access the county's health care benefits before I end up without any health care coverage. The work that IHSS providers do is a highly scaled work that requires knowledge, training, and empathy. The work that serves 35,000 people, keeps Sacramento's older adults and people with disabilities safe to be able to stay in their own homes to have care. It's work that is worthy of both health care and livable wage. Thousands of lives across Sacramento depend on it. IHSS providers and recipients can't wait any longer while the county drags its feet for making meaningful proposals that will actually address the issues that we've been raising for months. The Board urgently needs to get back to the table and find a way to address Sacramento's care crisis by funding a livable wage for providers without limiting our access to health care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alvinia? Alvinia Scott.
Good morning. My name is Alvinia Scott and I've been a IHSS provider in Sacramento County for five years. I fell into this work in 2018 when my younger sister's need for care increased after a heart valve replacement surgery. At that time, I had to leave my career in insurance to respond to my sister's call for care. And trust me, I'm not the only IHSS provider in Sacramento who had to leave a former career to enter into long-term care workforce for a family member. I spend at least five hours a day, seven days a week, providing care to my sister. Since she is an SSI recipient and only make about $12,000 a year, it's just enough money to keep her safely housed. Every other expense comes out of my pocket, whether it's food, clothes, or hygiene products. This also includes all her transportation. She often has eight to nine medical appointments in any given month. With today's cost of gas, can you imagine how much this expense impacts my household? Do you really think that $17.50 is enough for anyone to survive in Sacramento? Never mind enough to also provide for another human being. It is completely ridiculous proposal. There's approximately 35,000 people in Sacramento who receive care through IHSS and that number continues to grow while our workforce's qualified providers continues to shrink. For months, we have been sounding the alarm that the county proposals is not nearly enough to address Sacramento care crisis. But this Board clearly has failed to listen to our call for practical, long-term solution. Instead, the county has made lame agreements to continue bargaining while expressly stating you won't change your wage proposal. Your continued inaction is putting providers at risk of homelessness, driving providers out of the IHSS workforce, and jeopardizing our recipients' autonomy to receive quality, dignified care at home. You are public servants. It is your responsibility to serve the need of the public. It's time to get back to the table and live up to your responsibility, passing a strong contract with livable wage that will allow people like my younger sister and I to survive here in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Do you want the mic? Is that Mike? Yeah, that's fine.
Good morning, gentlemen. Ms. Frost.
Good morning. My name is Michael Kowalsick. I'm a recipient for IHSS. In 1995, I injured my back in a work-related incident, causing me to leave the workforce. My partner Sharon, behind me, took a leave from her job to take care of me at that time. Sharon takes care of all my needs. She feeds me. She takes care of my medication. She takes my shots for diabetes. She takes care of wound care. And she takes me to my medical appointments and helps me in and out of my wheelchair. And on top of all this, would be able to afford to keep a roof over our head. Sharon and even IHSS Provider Sacramento is the only line of defense that keeps people receiving care off of the street and out of nursing homes. Right now, Sharon and I have lived in a one-bedroom apartment with a roommate so that we can make, we can not be homeless. Both of us, both of us care recipient and partner is breaking my heart to see Sharon and other caregivers considering this Board. Force these caregivers to choose between a wage and homelessness is evil. Without caregivers, I would be homeless or in a nursing home. In fact, I've already been, had stayed in a nursing home that, by myself. Because Sacramento nursing homes are also on crisis, I'd like to say, I urge you to see the humanity, hear our call for help. IHSS providers need a livable wage and they need to keep their health care benefits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina.
And Madam Clerk, have we closed the queue for additional?
Yes, we have. The queue is closed.
Good morning.
Good morning. Buenos dias. Good morning. My name is Christina Alvarez. I'm an organizer representative with a sister union, SEIU USWW. And I'm proud to be here with 2015 to support, but more than anything, I'm asked, I'm here to ask you guys to negotiate a fair contract. You know, these workers work for their family, for the well-being of others. They deserve a fair wages, a fair contract, and that is what we're here to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. My name is Miriam Tapia. I'm also an organizer and representative with USWW. And I am also here in support of Local 2015. And I'm asking for a fair negotiation, fair wages for these health care workers. And I'm also asking that these fair negotiations do not cut into their health care benefits.
Mi nombre es Teresa Cardozo. Tengo 17 años trabajando de janitor para la compañía IBM y solo quería pedir si ustedes pudieran apoyar con salarios justos. Gracias.
Good morning. My name is Teresa Cardozo. I've been a janitor for 17 years here in Sacramento, working in different buildings. And I'm here to ask you, I'm here to support our brothers and sisters. I'm going to ask you to negotiate wages, a fair contract that does not cost into their health care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Martina Cano. Soy miembro de USWW, janitor de Cali PA. Estoy aquí para pedirles que negocien un contrato justo y salario justo para nuestros compañeros del local 2015. Gracias.
My name is Martina Cano. I'm currently a janitor cleaning the building at Cali PA. I'm here to ask you to negotiate a fair contract for our compañeros, brothers and sisters here from SEIU 2015. Thank you.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Yolanda Jaimes. Soy miembro de la USWW. Trabajo como janitor por cuatro años en el edificio de la 500 Capital Mall para la empresa ABM. Estoy aquí para apoyar a los compañeros del local 2015 para que sea un contrato justo y salario justo. Gracias.
My name is Yolanda Jaimes. I'm a janitor currently working for ABM at 500 Capital Mall. I'm also here to support our brothers and sisters from this local so that they also can have the benefits that we have. I added that little extra there. But to support their negotiations so that they have fair wages and benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for translating for us.
Okay. Was that everyone on the list or is Martina here? Okay. And then Teresa?
Teresa.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
So before we get to Charles, I will say that thank you for being here. We do have a closed session item today to discuss the status of the labor negotiations and our county staff will be having a discussion with the Board and seeking some direction from the Board. So thank you for coming and thank you for the work you do. Okay, Charles. Good morning.
Good morning. Buenos dias. Good morning. My name is Christina Alvarez. I'm an organizer representative with a sister union, SEIU USWW. And I'm proud to be here with 2015 to support, but more than anything, I'm asked, I'm here to ask you guys to negotiate a fair contract. You know, these workers work for their family, for the well-being of others. They deserve a fair wages, a fair contract, and that is what we're here to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. My name is Miriam Tapia. I'm also an organizer and representative with USWW. And I am also here in support of Local 2015. And I'm asking for a fair negotiation, fair wages for these health care workers. And I'm also asking that these fair negotiations do not cut into their health care benefits.
Mi nombre es Teresa Cardozo. Tengo 17 años trabajando de janitor para la compañía IBM y solo quería pedir si ustedes pudieran apoyar con salarios justos. Gracias.
My name is Yolanda Jaimes. I'm a janitor currently working for ABM at 500 Capital Mall. I'm also here to support our brothers and sisters from this local so that they also can have the benefits that we have. I added that little extra there. But to support their negotiations so that they have fair wages and benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for translating for us.
Okay. Was that everyone on the list or is Martina here? Okay. And then Teresa?
Teresa.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
So before we get to Charles, I will say that thank you for being here. We do have a closed session item today to discuss the status of the labor negotiations and our county staff will be having a discussion with the Board and seeking some direction from the Board. So thank you for coming and thank you for the work you do. Okay, Charles. Good morning.
Good morning. I wanted to say, because the last time I was here was brought up that this is mostly, not mostly, but partially a federal issue. I do put as much pressure on our state and federal representatives and senators as I do on you guys. I just can't talk to them for two minutes every two weeks. If I could, I'd be there. The other thing I want to talk about is we're, Hope for Sacramento is working pretty heavily right now on putting together an impact report and business plan for actually getting this going. And so we're narrowing down the three locations that we're working at. So Mr. Kennedy, if you could give me some information about what we talked about the last time we talked, that'd be really helpful because it's going to cost us thousands of dollars to do this per location we're looking at. And so if we can narrow that down, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
That concludes your public comment.
Okay. So wait a moment here. I think some folks will be leaving the room. So we have our consent calendar.
Yes.
And I believe you have.
Several notes.
Several notes. We'll wait a few seconds.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. For your consent items, two through 61. For item two, you are adopting an ordinance amending sections 2.115.300, 2.115.310, and 2.115.320 relating to contribution limits for on-election years and an aggregate limit pursuant to the review of biennial contribution limits. You waive reading on this on October 24th. For item number four, you're adopting an ordinance of the Sacramento County Code repealing Chapter 2.25 relating to Sheriff's Outreach Community Advisory Board. You waive reading on this on October 24th. Item 14, you're introducing an ordinance to establish the fee schedule for voter registration and elections for calendar years 2024 and 2025, waiving reading and continuing to December 5th for adoption. For item 19, I want to go on record correcting that you are acting as the Carmichael Recreation and Park District. This is to approve the attached resolution delegating authority to the district administrator to negotiate and execute a new lease between the Carmichael Recreation Park District and the Montessori School. For item 26, you are, this is for an extension of an urgency fee ordinance relating to installation of water meters, waiving full reading and adopting the urgency ordinance extension effective today. For item 55, I do need to take a motion to drop this item. This is a resolution recognizing Charles Chuck Schumate on the occasion of his 100th birthday.
I'll move to drop the item. Second.
Unanimous vote. And that concludes my notes.
Okay. And I'll turn to my colleagues to see if anybody has any comments on the consent items, starting with Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just wanted to take a moment on item 16. I have a comment.
Okay. I'll read that into the record. For item number 16, authorize the Director of Airports to execute the memorandum of understanding with the Federal Aviation Administration related to development of a new air traffic control tower at Sacramento International Airport.
Thank you. So certainly I'm going to enthusiastically support this item, I think, as will my colleagues. And this, I just wanted to take a moment this morning to acknowledge our Airport Director, Cindy Nickel, and especially our congressional representatives, Congresswoman Doris Matsui and Congressman Ami Barra for being terrific advocates and partners to fight very hard and for quite some time to get us to this point where we're finally acting on initiating the process of a new tower, a much-needed new tower at SMF. So I really just wanted to express my gratitude. Cindy, you deserve a lot of credit for being our local champion to get us this far. And this is very, very needed, as I said, for a lot of different reasons. And I look forward to one day leaving for a flight and staring up at a brand-new tower. That'll be a wonderful day. So again, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I know you and several of your colleagues have actually been up in the tower and you understand even more why it's necessary to get a new one. But thank you. And I echo your comments about our congressional delegation. They've been amazing. I know Congresswoman Matsui, I believe, has been working on this since 2006. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Thank you, Cindy. Supervisor Frost.
I just have a quick comment on item 24.
Okay. Let me read that into the record. Item 24 is the Rio Linda Area Streetlights bids to be received on December 7th. The environmental document is a categorical exemption.
And I just wanted to say a special thank you to the staff for bringing this forward. This is something that, they had to bring out generators before I was elected at the end of Supervisor McGlashan's term to do a partial part of this project. And it's not a big, huge thing, but to the community, it's a big thing to have lighting down that main street. And so big thank you to everyone who helped bring this forward before I am out of office. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Okay. No other supervisors with comments? Do we have a public comment on the?
We do. We have a public comment on item 3 and 38, and I'll read those into the record. Item three is to approve the American Rescue Plan Act district-directed funding allocations for districts one, three, and four. And for item 38, this is the authority to execute an expenditure agreement with Child Action in an amount not to exceed $1 million. And I'll call up Heidi.
Good morning, Heidi.
Of course, it's not doing what I want now. Good morning, honorable supervisors. This is Heidi Kaiser, speaking on behalf of Child Action and the Sacramento County Child Care Coalition. A special thank you to Supervisors Desmond Frost, Human Serna for appropriating some of your remaining ARPA funding to support the childcare community. Likewise, we appreciate you all for the unanimous support of appropriating $1 million of Family First Prevention Service funding towards building childcare in our region. Unlike most of California, Sac County saw a slight increase in childcare supply during the pandemic. Unfortunately, this is not to say that our local childcare supply is sufficient. Our supply has been just less sufficient than others. Now is really the time to build enough capacity to serve every child in need of early education. As of 2021, Sac County only had enough licensed childcare slots to accommodate 29% of children with working families. The availability of adequate early education programs that meet families' needs is essential for economic stability. Despite risks to well-being and snowball in red ink, most of our early education providers strive forward to serve our littlest learners. Our centers that offered non-traditional hours care, accepting the subsidy program and working with our foster care bridge families were often the first to permanently shutter. These programs that serve higher-risk families are usually the first to succumb to financial burdens. Early educators continue to operate on razor-thin margins. Support for providers makes a difference in their ability to open and maintain childcare businesses. Sacramento's childcare infrastructure needs to be rebuilt back better. These resources can go towards helping Sacramento's parents get back to work, back on their feet, back to self-sufficiency. Investing in early education will show America why we remain a premier growth economy. We help vulnerable families out of poverty. Sacramento continues to prove the American dream can be had within a community that cares. We appreciate both the Board and county leadership's response to childcare needs in our community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Heidi. Now, does that cover your comments for item 38 as well?
Yes.
I'm assuming. Okay. Thank you. And certainly, the omission of Supervisor Kennedy's name is not a reflection of his lack of support. It's a reflection of the fact that he did a better job getting ARPA funding out the door more quickly. So, thank you. Any other public comment on the?
We do not for consent.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Unanimous vote. Okay. For item 62, this is the presentation of resolution proclaiming November 30th, 2023 as? Number six? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So we have an introduction.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Desmond and Board members. I am very pleased to introduce Matt Satow as Director of Water Resources. Thank you for just approving that. Matt has over 29 years of experience serving public service agencies as a public sector employee and a private sector consultant. Over 12 years, he was employed by Sacramento County. He is currently the Vice President for Dewberry Engineers, responsible for overseeing operations and growth across four offices and over $20 million in annual revenue. He's done a lot of things. He's ran his own business. He sold his business. He's got great leadership experience and background and we are lucky to have him. So, Matt?
So, Matt, we talked a little before the meeting and it was touch and go whether the Board was going to support this. But now, you know, now that you've been affirmed, you can speak with a higher level of confidence for no more than two minutes.
Well, thank you. And I promise you, I'll take far less than two minutes. First of all, I'd just like to say I appreciate the opportunity. As a lifelong Sacramento County resident, it means a lot to me to be able to come back, work closer to home, hopefully have a very positive impact in the community that I grew up in. Secondly, as you mentioned before, that I did start my career at Sacramento County almost 30 years ago. I left about 18 years ago to the private sector and it's hard to believe 18 years has gone by fast, but I'm excited to be back and ready to get going.
Thank you, Matt, and welcome. And you will be interacting with each one of us, I'm sure, in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you.
Oh. [applause] Thank you. 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 Thank you.
care, accepting the subsidy program, and working with our foster care bridge families were often the first to permanently shutter. These programs that serve higher-risk families are usually the first to succumb to financial burdens. Early educators continue to operate on razor-thin margins. Support for providers makes a difference in their ability to open and maintain childcare businesses. Sacramento's childcare infrastructure needs to be rebuilt back better. These resources can go towards helping Sacramento's parents get back to work, back on their feet, back to self-sufficiency. Investing in early education will show America why we remain a premier growth economy. We help vulnerable families out of poverty. Sacramento continues to prove the American dream can be had within a community that cares. We appreciate both the Board and county leadership's response to childcare needs in our community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Heidi. Now, does that cover your comments for item 38 as well?
Yes.
I'm assuming. Okay, thank you. And certainly, the omission of Supervisor Kennedy's name is not a reflection of his lack of support. It's a reflection of the fact that he did a better job getting ARPA funding out the door more quickly. So, thank you.
[laughing]
Any other public comment on the?
We do not for consent.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, for item 62, this is the presentation of resolution proclaiming November 30th, 2023 as?
Number six?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
So we have an introduction.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Desmond and Board members. I am very pleased to introduce Matt Satow as Director of Water Resources. Thank you for just approving that. Matt has over 29 years of experience serving public service agencies as a public sector employee and a private sector consultant. Over 12 years, he was employed by Sacramento County. He is currently the Vice President for Dewberry Engineers, responsible for overseeing operations and growth across four offices and over $20 million in annual revenue. He's done a lot of things. He's ran his own business. He sold his business. He's got great leadership experience and background, and we are lucky to have him. So, Matt?
So, Matt, we talked a little before the meeting, and it was touch and go whether the Board was going to support this. But now, you know, now that you've been affirmed, you can speak with a higher level of confidence for no more than two minutes.
Well, thank you. And I promise you, I'll take far less than two minutes. First of all, I'd just like to say I appreciate the opportunity. As a lifelong Sacramento County resident, it means a lot to me to be able to come back, work closer to home, hopefully have a very positive impact in the community that I grew up in. Secondly, as you mentioned before, that I did start my career at Sacramento County almost 30 years ago. I left about 18 years ago to the private sector, and it's hard to believe. 18 years has gone by fast. But I'm excited to be back and ready to get going.
Thank you, Matt, and welcome. And you will be interacting with each one of us, I'm sure, in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you.
Oh. Sorry, Supervisor Human.
Thank you, Chair, for that timely acknowledgement. The moment has passed, but I just want to say, Matt, we were younger.
I didn't know you were here. Sorry.
We were younger men last time we crossed, but it's nice to see you again. Welcome.
Okay.
Item 62.
Yes, my apologies about that. Okay, item 62 is the presentation of resolution proclaiming November 30th, 2023 as methamphetamine awareness day.
We had a PowerPoint presentation. Do we have a PowerPoint?
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Lori Miller. I'm the Division Manager for Department of Health Services Substance Use Prevention and Treatment Unit. I come before you this morning to recognize November 30th, 2023 as methamphetamine awareness day. The Department of Health Services prioritizes addressing meth in Sacramento County and wants to bring awareness to the fact it's still a widely misused substance in our community. I want to especially highlight the continued efforts to increase awareness about the dangers of methamphetamine and the resources available. Deaths due to methamphetamine in Sacramento County. This is data from our Sacramento County coroner. We had 250 deaths in 2021, 280 deaths in 2022, 76 deaths from January to May of 2023, and with some new numbers that came through, 148 people lost their lives to methamphetamine from January to October of 2023. We continue to become, people continue to become addicted and die in Sacramento County every day. We need to do more. Last year, there were more deaths from meth than fentanyl in Sacramento, and meth continues to be overshadowed by the opioid and fentanyl crisis. We are also in a meth crisis. These are the areas most impacted with the highest numbers of deaths due to methamphetamine. People between the ages of 55 and 64, mostly Caucasian and African-American males. We had 5,359 people enter our substance use service system from July 2022 to June 30th of 2023. 22% of those individuals struggled with meth. Opioids just 1% higher due to We have to address this crisis through partnerships. We cannot do this work alone. It takes partnerships and collaboration. I want to especially acknowledge our Justice Partnerships, Child Welfare, the Sacramento County Coroner's Office, community-based organizations, hospital systems, law enforcement, and others. We will continue to fight this together. There are many treatment options here in Sacramento County to address methamphetamine: detox, outpatient treatment, residential treatment, treatment for co-occurring or poly substance use needs, and two providers piloting medication-assisted treatment, or MAT, for methamphetamines after a study came out from the New England Journal of Medicine in 2021 indicating the medication combination of naltrexone and bupropion showed some promise. We are still waiting for FDA approval, but the research is not there yet. However, we look forward to tracking our local outcomes and data for this pilot program. Our Methamphetamine Coalition, we are changing and saving lives through this work. Our mission is to prevent meth use and addiction. The Meth Coalition began in 2016, and meetings are held quarterly. If you want more information about the Meth Coalition, please visit the Let's Talk Meth or the Safer Sacramento websites. The Let's Talk Meth website was launched in 2020. The focus is on providing information and resources, stigma reduction, and increasing enrollment and prevention and treatment services. The Safer Sacramento website was launched as this year in 2023. And lastly, share your story. Meth use and addiction threatens individuals, families, and communities. If you or a loved one are struggling with meth, there is help and support when ready. If you or a loved one is in recovery, we want to hear from you. Share your story because every story matters, and it might save a life. Thank you for your time, and my contact information is here if anybody has any additional questions.
Thank you, Lori. Now I'll turn it over to Supervisor Serna.
Well, thank you, Lori, for the presentation and the important reminders that came with it. I do have the resolution here for, Lori, proclaiming November 30th, 2023 as methamphetamine Awareness Day in Sacramento County. I won't read from the resolution, but to add to the many important reminders that Lori has just cited in that presentation, I'm just as hopeful as you that those that may be watching will use some of those resources to help themselves or help their loved ones with prevention, treatment, and recovery from methamphetamine abuse. But one of the important reminders that I didn't hear but needs to be emphasized is the undeniable connection between methamphetamine use in our community and homelessness. Of course, not every homeless person is addicted to methamphetamine, but we know anecdotally, and we also know from data that we collect, that it is very prevalent in the homeless community. It is a very inexpensive drug, and for that reason, it is in some parts of our community, the drug of choice, unfortunately, for those that are living on our streets and in our doorways and under our overpasses and in our parkway. So I'm really here to provide this reminder in addition to what Lori's added. And I'll just conclude with, I'm very, very proud that we have someone like Lori in her leadership capacity with behavioral health that has really taken on the charge to address methamphetamine use head-on. She and her staff do amazing work. I've had a chance to work closely with Lori on this particular issue now for several years. And so, I want to provide this resolution on behalf of the Board to her with the sincerest thanks from all of us.
Thank you.
Want to face this way? You want to bring some staff?
Yes.
You're not taking the picture. You're in the picture.
Get over here.
There you go. Come on, break.
One, two, and three. Very nice. Yes, very nice. One, two, and three.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
All right. Item 63 is the presentation of resolution recognizing Kids Helping Kids Sacramento for winning the Students for the Advancement of Global Entrepreneurship World Cup.
I think we have some representatives. Kids Helping Kids, please come join me down here at the podium. Okay, these are all students from Del Campo High School in District 3. And this is some pretty good bragging rights because this, these representatives from Del Campo, Kids Helping Kids, was recently recognized as the top nonprofit, not just in California or the nation, but in the world, in this, it's this competition that was hosted by Students Advancing Global Entrepreneurship, the Sage Competition. So, thank you so much for being here and for that amazing award that you've received. So, for those of you who don't know, Kids Helping Kids is an entirely student-run, nonprofit organization made up of juniors and seniors from Del Campo High School, who believe that learning is best by doing and doing is best by serving others. Laura Noble, who graduated from Del Campo High School in 2013, founded Kids Helping Kids. She helped lead a team of students in hosting their first gala and raised over $60,000 in the organization's first year. Everything that is accomplished by Kids Helping Kids is completed by the work of the high school students with mentorship and generosity of individuals. Each student with Kids Helping Kids has a passion that fuels their enthusiasm for what the organization does, and everyone involved has a devotion to helping others. The skills they learn are applied to make tangible, lasting differences in the world. As I mentioned, Kids Helping Kids was recently recognized as the number-one nonprofit organization in the world after competing and winning the Students Advancing Global Entrepreneurship Sage Competition. And so, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I am happy to congratulate all of you and Kids Helping Kids for winning that award. And we appreciate your efforts and what you do in the community and the impact that you have on people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, who's going to speak?
Well, I'd like to thank you all for having us here today. It is an honor to be here on behalf of Kids Helping Kids. I'd like to express my appreciation for everyone in this class, all the SMTs, all our hard workers, and everyone who has supported us in our mission. Together, we are able to make a meaningful difference and a positive change in this world. And being here today is a testament to our incredible work. So thank you again for having us here today, and I can't wait to continue with our mission. Thank you.
All right.
So I'd ask my colleagues, please, to come down and take a photo with these wonderful students.
And isn't that your alma mater?
Yes. And our county exec can join us for the photograph.
Yeah. You want me to take one before we have one get in there?
All right, you guys got to scooch in and balance this out. Yep, there we go.
I'm teacher.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Would it be okay if I address the supervisors for just one moment?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Gordon. I am the Executive Director of Kids Helping Kids. I've been teaching now for 24 years as an elected official, also as President of the Rescue School Board. It's fair to say that we often are riddled with negative media about education, both locally and globally for that matter. And I will tell you that there is hope. There's hope in these young adults that are before you today. They are learning to be selfless servants of their society, both locally and globally. They are acquiring the skills that are real and applicable. We truly believe that learning is best by doing, and this program allows for them to do that. And they apply those skills in investing in children who are underserved locally and globally. And I can tell you, as their teacher, a lot of people have to go to work every day, but I truly feel I get to go to work every day and be around them and among them, and watch their development and the shaping of their hearts, and invest in others before themselves. And there's great hope for society because of these young adults. And so, I thank the supervisors very much for giving us the opportunity, making time in their schedule for recognizing them and the work that they are doing and have done. And it sure is exciting to see the changes that they're making. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay. She's in charge of the photos. Okay, are we ready for your next item?
Yes, let's go to item 64.
Okay, for item 64 and 65, I'll be calling those into the record at the same time. So bear with me, these are super-long titles. Item 64 is the County of Sacramento Communities Facilities District Number 2023-1. This is the Brayden Project Infrastructure and Services Improvement Area Number 1, previously known as Cordova Hills. Adoption of a resolution establishing the County of Sacramento Community Facilities District Brayden Project Infrastructure and Services, designating improvement area number 1 therein, providing for an annexation of territory proposed for annexation into the Community Facilities District in the future, and providing for levy of special taxes. Adoption of a resolution calling a special mailed ballot election. Adoption of a resolution declaring the results of the special mailed ballot. Adoption of a resolution deeming it necessary to incur bonded indebtedness to finance or refinance the acquisition and construction costs of or the reimbursement for certain facilities. Introducing an ordinance levying special taxes for the fiscal year 2023-24 and following fiscal years solely within and relating to improvement area number 1 of the County Sacramento Facilities District, the Brayden Project Infrastructure and Services, waiving full reading and continuing the ordinance to December 5th for adoption. And adoption of resolution authorizing the adoption of the Brayden Urban Services Implementation Plan and the execution of the Cordova Hills Sports Park Development Agreement and the Neighborhood Park Development Agreement. For item 65, this is the County of Sacramento Community Facilities District Number 2023-2, previously known as Cordova Hills, now known as the Brayden Project Services. Adoption of a resolution establishing the County of Sacramento Community Facilities District 2023-2, Brayden Project Services, providing for the annexation of territory proposed and for annexation into the Community Facilities District in the future, and providing for the levy of special taxes. Adoption of a resolution calling a special mailed ballot election. Adoption of a resolution declaring the results of the special mailed ballot, and introducing an ordinance levying special taxes for the fiscal year 2023-24 and following fiscal years solely within and relating to the County of Sacramento Community Facilities District 2023-2, Brayden Project Services, waiving full reading and continuing the ordinance to December 5th for adoption.
I missed that.
Start over. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we will be, obviously, reading them together, but we're taking separate action on these two items. And we'll be opening ballots and tabulating ballots for each, correct? Okay, Colin.
Yes.
Turn it over to you.
Good morning, Chair Desmond and Board of Supervisors. Could I have the presentation up, please?
Thank you very much. I'm Colin Bettis, the County Debt Officer, and this presentation will go through the formation process for two community facilities districts for the Brayden Community, previously known as Cordova Hills. And I'd like to thank Flo for reading all that very efficiently and effectively. Today's recommended actions for the hearing include a list of resolutions establishing the CFD, a resolution deeming it necessary to incur bonded indebtedness, a resolution calling for a special mailed ballot election, and a resolution declaring the results of the special mailed ballot election, introducing an ordinance, and a resolution authorizing the adoption of the Brayden Urban Services Implementation Plan and the execution of the Cordova Hills Sports Park Development Agreement and the Cordova Hills Community and Neighborhood Park Development Agreements. The second hearing today will have similar actions, but include just a resolution establishing the district, a resolution calling for a special mailed ballot election, and a resolution declaring the results, and introducing an ordinance to levy the special tax. Next, I'll highlight some variances to past practices that county staff are recommending within these CFDs. Included within the authorized facilities for CFD Number 2023-1 are various development impact fees. Historically, the county has not included these within other CFDs, except for when utilizing the bond opportunities for land development, or BOLD, or the statewide community infrastructure program, skip. Staff has reviewed the necessary administrative requirements of both the BOLD and skip programs, and determined that the administrative requirements for allowing fees to be financed through these programs are the same as if the county were to finance these fees within county-formed CFDs. For that reason, staff now recommends allowing these fees to be financed within the county-formed CFDs. County staff will need to evaluate the tax-eligible nature of these fees prior to any issuance of bonds in which proceeds are targeted for, to be utilized for those fees. Additionally, consistent with Melrose Law- Additionally, consistent with Melrose Law and the preferred method of operating and maintaining drainage facilities, staff is recommending funding private drainage improvements through the CFD so long as the board finds that there is a public benefit to these privately-owned facilities. Just to mention, the private ownership of that would be the Brayden Community Association. A clarification of the urban services plan was to shift the funding of the sports park from the Community Services Area Number 13 to CFD Number 2023-1, in addition to shift the ownership and maintenance of the neighborhood and community parks from the county to the Brayden Community Association. The park development agreements have been modified to reflect these changes. The termination of a prior park development agreement will be included within item Number 66 of today's agenda due to the association with the Community Services Area Number 13, which was the prior funding mechanism. For CFD Number 2023-1, the single-family residential base facility special tax would range from $2,900 per year to $6,500 per year, depending on the zone and the square footage for the single-family residential unit. These tax rates were developed, taking into consideration, a total effective tax rate of less than 2% based on market values at the time. There are additional provisions that would allow the developer with approval of county staff to reduce the base facility special tax at least 30 days prior to the issuance of bonds. Such an adjustment would be required to... Should such an adjustment be required to bring the effective tax rate down? And just for some additional information, the marketing estimates were for the single-family residential to range from $560,000 to $950,000 within this area. The base facility special tax will increase annually by 2%. The CFD will also transition to a services district after a transition event, when all the bonds secured by the levy and the collections of the facility special tax have been fully repaid. All administrative expenses from prior fiscal years have been paid or reimbursed to the county, and there are no other authorized facilities that the county intends to fund with bonds or facility special taxes. After the transition event, the special tax, the services special tax, will be 25% of the then-applicable facility's maximum special tax. Taxes from the district would be eligible to be covered under the TETER program, and bond covenants would be determined prior to the issuance of the first series of bonds, such as levels in which the taxes would be required to be removed from the tax roll for expedited foreclosure proceedings. For CFD Number 2023-2, the special taxes for the single-family residents would range from $163 to $238 annually and would escalate by 4% per year. Within the services tax, the starting point in each year for determining the applicable tax is to determine the amount of special taxes needed to fund the services at that time, including establishing a prudent reserve as services may come online in segments. At this point, I'd like to introduce Greg Thatch of Thatch &amp; Hooper, LLP, the attorney representing the Brayden Community Team. In addition to Greg, Bruce Bell of Summers West and Jamie Gomes of EPS are here today in support of the items before you. Greg?
Thank you, Colin. Good morning, Greg.
Good morning. My comments will be brief, probably briefer than the introduction of the item. Let me also say you have a third item coming before you, and I'm going to speak to that now, too, because they're all pretty much related. As Colin indicated, Bruce Bell, the CEO of Real Estate for Summers West, is here with us today. Sharit Chastain also from the Cordova Hills-Brayden team. We have Jamie Gomes from EPS, who can answer the tough questions, because I probably can't. And we have Ellie Gower from Miller Star that is with us today to talk about the Community Association, if you have questions about that. I can tell you that this represents years of work, many years of work, and I want to thank staff for their assistance. Some of the staff are even gone that we started with. So, this has been a long process putting this project together. It has been vetted completely and thoroughly by your staff. You can have great comfort, I think, in what they've brought before you today. I also want you to know that this is a very important step for this project, because everything that is coming before you today is required by the development agreement. We are required to do it, but the county is equally as required to participate in these efforts. And so, it's fulfilling a major step, and I would tell you that that major step is going to allow development to move forward. There are three approved subdivision maps out there, more on the horizon. This is a major, major step to moving forward. So, we hope you will see your way to vote positively for it, and I thank you and here to answer any questions or defer to my colleagues to answer questions.
Thank you. No questions right now, but you'll be here.
So, in addition to Greg, Bruce, and Jamie, the county has requested the attendance of Susan Goodwin of Goodwin Consulting and Brandon Diaz of ORIX, should you have any questions relating to the rate and method of apportionments or the formation proceedings, procedures themselves. Now that the presentation is concluded, I'd like to see if there's any questions from the board members.
No questions at this point.
Great. Now that the presentation is concluded, staff now recommends the following for CFD Number 2023-1. First, open the public hearing and hear public testimony or protests. Then, close the public hearing, and if there is no majority protest, proceed with the following actions. Consider the adoption of the Resolutions 1, 2, and 3. Then, the clerk would conduct the election and count the ballots. Number 5, consider the adoption of the fourth resolution. Number 6, introduce an ordinance levying a special tax, continue to December 5th for adoption. And finally, consider the adoption of the fifth resolution.
Okay, so with that, I'll start with opening the public hearing.
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. Close the public hearing. And then, Supervisor Hume?
I'll move Resolutions 1, 2, and 3.
Perfect.
Second.
Is there any... So, no public comment. Okay, please vote on the first resolutions. And then, I will direct the clerk to open and tabulate the ballots.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Serna with an abstention. Okay, and I'll go ahead and open the ballot. So, for item 64, I received one ballot from Cordova Hills LLC. The number of acres owned is 33.66, and the total votes are 334 in favor.
Okay, Colin.
On this one, I do not need to read anything into the resolutions, so the next items would be to consider the adoption of the fourth resolution, introduce the levy, the ordinance for the levy, and consider the fifth resolution.
Okay. Entertain a motion for the other ordinances and the resolutions.
So moved. And the motion carries with Supervisor Serna abstaining.
Okay, thank you. So, move right into 65.
Yes. And for item 65, similarly, staff has the following recommendations for CFD Number 2023-2. Open the public hearing and hear public testimony or protests. Close the public hearing, and if there is no majority protest, proceed with the following actions. Consider the adoption of Resolutions 1 and 2. Clerk conducts the election and counts the ballots. Number 5, consider the adoption of the third resolution and introduce a levy to... the ordinance to levy the special tax and continue to December 5th.
Okay, so, open the public hearing.
We have no public comments.
Okay, public hearing is closed. So, entertain a motion on Resolutions 1 and 2.
So moved.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Serna abstaining.
Okay, and then, I ask the clerk to open and tabulate the ballots.
Thank you. We've received one ballot from the landowner of Cordova Hills LLC. Number of acres owned, 626.40, and the total votes are 627, and they are in favor.
Okay, and Colin, just confirm, nothing else to add to the third resolution?
That's correct.
So, the next action?
The next two items, consider the adoption of the third resolution and introduce...
And enter your orders.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Serna abstaining.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. On to 66. And this is County Service Area Number 13, Public Hearing on the Adoption of a Resolution Providing for the Levy of Special Taxes for Transit and Transportation Management Services. Adoption of a resolution calling a special mailed ballot election. Adoption of a resolution declaring election results. Introduction of an ordinance levying special taxes within County Service Area Number 13. Waive full reading and continue the ordinance to December 12th for adoption. Approval of a transit funding agreement with Cordova Hills LLC and adoption of a resolution approving termination of the Cordova Hills Master Park and Sports Park Development Agreements between County Service Area Number 13 and Cordova Hills LLC and authorizing agreement... excuse me, authorizing the Director of Regional Parks Department to execute the termination agreement relating thereto.
Okay, good morning, Vanessa.
Good morning. Thank you, Flo, I appreciate that. Good morning, Chair Desmond, members of the board. My name is Vanessa Lieberman, and I am your Manager of Special Districts in the Department of Community Development. Hopefully, the hardest part is working this today, so a quick overview of today's item. I am also requesting a public hearing to levy special taxes for County Service Area 13 for the Brayden Community. I'll be introducing an ordinance to levy the special taxes for CSA 13 to be continued to December 12th for adoption. Staff also recommends the approval of the Transit Funding Agreement for Services and approving the termination of two parks agreements between CSA 13 and Cordova Hills LLC. Just a quick map on the location of the Brayden Community in unincorporated Sacramento County, which is approximately 2,700 acres east of the city of Rancho Cordoba. Some background on CSA 13, this was formed through LAFCO in August of 2013, and at the time, it was considered to potentially fund a multitude of services within the Brayden Community. With the update of the 2023 Urban Services Implementation Plan brought by Mr. Colin Bettis, this provided clarification and updated the ownership, maintenance responsibilities, and funding mechanisms associated with the services, infrastructure, and public facilities needed to meet the service demands of the project. The 2023 USP identified the purpose of CSA 13 was to fund annual transportation and transit-related operations and maintenance costs. Those are estimated to be in $20,022, at full buildout to be $3.4 million. At this time, I am going to call up my colleague, Mickey McDaniel, from the Department of Transportation to speak more on the Transit Funding Agreement.
Morning, Mickey.
Hi, I'm Mickey McDaniel, Principal Planner at the Department of Transportation. I'm talking... I'll talk briefly on the Transit Funding Agreement. The proposed agreement between CSA 13 and Cordova Hills will implement the Development Agreement and the Urban Services Implementation Plan and will give an idea... and will explain the form of the Transit Service Plan. The Transit Funding Agreement designates the service operator as the Brayden Community Association. They will in turn choose an operator for transit and for the TMA services. The agreement delineates maintenance and operation standards. It sets forth the funding mechanism within CSA 13, which is a special tax, and clarifies the service operator's obligations, rights, and duties. The recommended action today is to approve the Transit Funding Agreement with Cordova Hills LLC and authorize its execution by the Director of the Department of Transportation. Thank you.
Okay. As my colleague, Mr. Colin Bettis, had mentioned before, there are parks agreements with CSA 13 and Cordova Hills LLC, and we are requesting... oh, see, it is the hardest part. There we go. Okay. We are requesting the termination of these 2016 agreements, because they are now between either the Brayden Community Association for the Neighborhood and Community Parks and with the county for the sports parks, maintenance, and operations. Okay, so at this time, we'd like to give the board the opportunity to ask questions on this item, after which, staff recommends the board open the public hearing and consider public testimony and protests, close the public hearing, and direct the clerk to conduct the election and tabulate the ballots. If there is no majority protest, proceed with the following actions listed on the screen and in the board letter. That concludes my presentation. I have the same amazing team behind me in the audience to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. No comments from the board members, so I'll entertain a motion on the first two resolutions.
Move the first two resolutions.
Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Serna abstaining.
And so, I will open the public hearing.
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, close the public hearing. Please open and tabulate the ballots.
We received one ballot. And let me get to this. The landowner is Cordova Hills LLC. The number of acres owned is 2,676, total votes 2,676, and they are in favor.
Okay, so will you have to make any adjustment to the resolutions? Okay. So, we can move forward with adopting the remaining resolutions and introducing the ordinance?
Yes, that is correct.
And approving the Transit Funding Agreement as well.
Yep, and the termination of the parks agreements with the CSA.
Okay. Motion in a second. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Serna abstaining.
Thank you, Vanessa. Wasn't too painful. Okay, item 67.
Item 67, accept the Community Corrections Partnership October 2023 update of the Assembly Bill 109, Public Safety Realignment Plan.
Looking forward to hearing from our probation chief. Good morning, Mr. Yarber.
Morning, Chair, members of the board. Marlon Yarber, Chief Probation Officer. Thought folks were waiting to hear me, but apparently not with the exodus today, so... so, yes, here to give you just a very brief overview of our current 2023 plan update from the Community Corrections Partnership. I've got a brief PowerPoint, and I'll try to avoid reading to you as best I can. So, important to know, the CCP is responsible for developing the implementation plan. It really sets the policy for the county as it relates to the realigned responsibilities due to 2011 public safety realignment. The plan goals have not changed. This board or some semblance thereof approved the long-term plan back in 2014. The goals still remain: maintain and improve community safety, decrease the use of jail through expansion of treatment and support, and obviously, stay focused on reducing recidivism. Since 2014, all of the partnering agencies, community-based providers, et cetera, have continued in that same regard, pursuing those goals. Couple photos for you, I think I shared with the analysts, you know, I think last year, our plan and the presentation just very dry, and so, I was like, oh, can we add just a couple photos just to bring a little life to what, you know, feels sometimes a little bit rote in the way of the presentation? And so, what I love about this is it shares not only, you know, the pride, I think, that some of our clients demonstrate in their completions and graduations, but it's also the chance for our staff to recognize, you know, people changing and celebrating those successes, as we're sometimes faced with, you know, lots of failure in our work. The other piece, just to note, is, you know, the continued pursuit of more vocational training for our clients, as, you know, gainful employment is certainly a way to avoid and prevent returning to the system. The 2020 Budget Act requires us now to update this plan annually and hence, you know, my visit and presentation with you all today. Important piece, really, for the public, I'm sure you all are aware, is that the plan is deemed accepted unless you reject it on a four-fifths vote. So, I think if I recall correctly, like, no action from you is maybe my preference for today. The CCP continues to meet, of course, every other month. The CCP Advisory Board, really just a critical piece of our work. It's informed a lot of our forward thinking and direction, and I really can't say enough about that body, its leadership. Melinda Avi chairs the Advisory Board. It's certainly represented by... It's certainly represented by all of the partnership agencies and has four members of the public also who participate. Also of note, and not so much spelled out here, but the Advisory Board really did an incredible job with their public awareness campaign and public outreach, something like, I think, 400 surveys provided to our clientele. I think they conducted eight focus groups and some really interesting information gathered in that process. One thing that I commented on at a prior CCP meeting, I think it was the question for our clients, you know, what, if anything, would maybe have prevented you from entering the justice system? And the number-one answer was nothing. And so that, to me, kind of confirmed what we know in our work as it relates to, you know, the stages of change that people go through. Many of our clients really at that pre-contemplative stage, not yet thinking about, you know, a life that is in line with the law. And so that stood out to me, and we've called that out in our plan. Second, and again, no surprise here, second was, you know, better or more drug treatment, drug treatment services and supports. And then if you can just imagine, you know, with that being the second thing, the obvious logic thereafter is, you know, then you can see sort of the continuum of, you know, assistance with housing, assistance with obtaining a job. And so, you know, if we're better able to, again, meet people where they're at, continue to offer services, you know, and sometimes it is, you know, that arrest that maybe helps someone move towards, you know, or beyond that pre-contemplative stage to now contemplating change. But having those services, again, to help them thereafter. The plan, as mentioned, was approved unanimously by the CCP at our October 5th meeting. Some updates, just really briefly. I'm really proud of the work that the analysts have done and the Advisory Board, as mentioned. The plan is much more readable now. Again, very dry, if you will, in its prior formation, and now, I think, a little bit more readable. It emphasizes, obviously, you know, things like our goals, accountability, and the forward thoughts as it relates to, you know, better data collection and reporting. Few of the programs, things that you're all aware of, so obviously continuing with the long-term plan from 2014, supporting jail housing, correctional health, and supervision of our clients in the community, but then, you know, many of the other services and programs that I think helped get, helped get at that recidivism piece, so ensuring, you know, reentry is prioritized, ensuring that, you know, pre-trial services, both probation and public defender's office are supported, looking at, you know, better jail discharge processes. And of course, you know, at least in the probation department, I would be remiss where not to mention the Adult Day Reporting Centers that we're proud of. Additional programs and services determined by the CCP. So this plan enables us to stay innovative and, again, continue to think about, you know, how best to evolve our efforts here in the county. As it relates to the future, I won't read through all of this, but I think it's the fifth bullet there, so certainly not lost on us. It's that need to still support reduction of the county's jail population. So a very regular conversation, at least at my level and the Advisory Board level, and of course, within the probation department, and I imagine across all of our other partner agencies. With that, that concludes my presentation. Tried to keep it high-level, as mentioned. Would welcome any questions or concerns you might have.
Thank you, Chief. We'll start with Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to appreciate the fact that doing nothing is your preferred action. I'm willing to rise to that occasion. But I also wanted to call out the photographs that you highlighted of the Wild Horse Program. I didn't realize this was a thing until it was mentioned to me, but it's an excellent program wherein we take formerly wild mustangs and use our justice-involved folks to help break and train them. So just thank you for highlighting that.
Yes, yeah. Appreciate the recognition of the program. You know, I think when I first heard about the program, you know, I kind of looked at it like, oh, you know, will this work? And, you know, I always come back to, you know, my own experience working in the system forever, and, you know, whatever it is, sometimes that connects someone to that opportunity for change. Like, we should be trying to figure out how to connect them to the service. So glad to hear the recognition.
Well, thank you, Chief. We'll go to a public comment. Do you have any public comment on this item?
Do not have any public comments.
Okay. Well, and I thank you as well for the presentation and the work you do, and the work that probation does. I mean, I continue to be immensely proud of our Sacramento probation. Oh, Mr. Jones has a comment, but thank you, Marlon, and thank you for, to staff for preparing the presentation as well.
Thank you, Chair Supervisors. Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive of Public Safety and Justice. And I just wanted to thank Chief Yarber for his outstanding leadership for the CCP, all of the CCP members, as well as the Advisory Board members, who put a lot, a lot of work into what you saw today succinctly in the presentation, but, you know, so much work went into it. And I also want to acknowledge Laura Foster, the analyst that put together the report and is the staff member for that CCP and their Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
I appreciate that. We wouldn't be here without her, so thank you, Eric. Appreciate the reminder.
And you?
And she's here? Oh, she is here. Oh, well.
Oh, well, thank you.
Really, all of her work, I think, is what I've just talked about. So, yeah, we would not be here without her. Thank you.
Well, I know you mentioned that your preferred action is for us to do nothing, but I think the staff recommendation is for us to approve.
Yes, there is a resolution to be approved.
Okay. So I think you will have favorable action if I could hear a motion from.
Appreciate the clarity. Okay. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Marlon.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. For item sixty-eight, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors and Housing Authority of County Sacramento. This is the Approval of the 2024 Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency Proposed Budget and Adopting a Multi-Family Loan and Mortgage Revenue Bond Application Schedule.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Desmond and Supervisors. I'm Susanna Jackson. I'm the Chief Financial Officer at Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. So at this time, I am pleased to bring you the 2024 budget. So this is a balanced budget for the period of January through December of 2024. It incorporates the activities of the housing authorities for both the city and the county of Sacramento. This includes various federal entitlement funds and local housing funds that are administered by us for both the city and the county of Sacramento. The total estimated revenue for 2024 is $398.9 million, which includes multi-year grants that the agency manages. Approximately 69% of our funding is from different federal resources. So one of our major programs is the Housing Choice Voucher Program and also the Public Housing Program. I'll highlight these, both the revenue streams for these in future slides. The remaining amount of the funding comes from both state and local resources, such as the local housing, housing trust fund, and different housing authority funds. So as you can see, the majority of the agency fund is at the federal level, so it's really important for us to be connected with what is happening at the federal level to keep everyone apprised of how the funding is coming into the agency.
Excuse me. Supervisor Serna has a comment? Thank you. Can you remind us again why this budget runs on the normal calendar and all the other, the city and the county run on a fiscal year that begins July 1?
I don't know historically. I'm assuming because of the funding, but.
So historically, for housing authorities, the federal government determines what your fiscal year is, and because there are so many housing authorities throughout the country, they split them into different quarters. So we are the housing authority that happened to be a January through the end of December, and that's how that evolved.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So for the 2024 expenditures, they're estimated at $325.7 million, which is 38.4 million of salaries and benefits, 24 million of services and supplies, 8.3 of public services, 3 million and the remaining of the rental assistant payments, 2.3 is debt service, 62.4 million is estimated for capital projects, and 186 million for HAP projects. So this slide provides a four-year comparison. As mentioned, our total budget is $325.7 million. In total, the estimated expenditures are estimated to decrease by a total of $14.4 million, which is mostly due to the wind down of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. This chart reflects the revenues and expenses for the housing, excuse me, the HAP payments, the housing assistant payments that you hear a lot about, that the Housing Choice Voucher Program manages. At first glance, you can assume that maybe we are 100% leased up in our, in our, excuse me, in our vouchers. However, this is really a representation of the cost of housing. The utilization of the program has always been very high, and the department has done a very good job of maintaining that voucher utilization. The increase in HAP received over the years is truly illustrating, again, the increased housing costs. So the higher the utilization, the higher the funding that is available from HUD. However, that's really only half of the battle. HUD likes to prorate overall the funding, so they'll determine if you need XYZ, they may give you 92%, which is, I believe, the current proration rate. As we move forward with RAD, these HAP dollars will increase because we are moving from the public housing platform to the Housing Choice Voucher Platform, and these HAP dollars will increase, which will tie in here to the public housing. So this is the revenue over several years for the public housing program, and this is the subsidy received and the rents and other income received of the public housing program. So as you can see, in 2020, that's when a lot of the CARES Act money came in and has leveled off and will continue to reduce in future years due to the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program that we are participating in. So at this time, we are going to switch to a brief video, and then will be available for any questions.
Ask Metro to kick off the video.
So I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Susanna. I'll start with Supervisor Serna. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the video. I found it interesting that the last citation in the last slide there was the light rail station. LaShelle, do you want to give us an update?
Yes, the light rail station. We did have an opportunity last week, that was last week, to have a large meeting. Senator Ashby convened a group of individuals with Councilmember Valenzuela. Residents from Mirasol Village were there. SECOG was there, the State Department of Strategic Growth, so all the players were there at the table, including RT. And in that particular meeting, we did get a path forward in terms of how we will really stay on the timeline to meet the schedule that SGC has laid out for us. And we were very heartened to learn that they would give us more time. We had until December 2nd to come forward with a plan. So next Monday, we'll be going to the Regional Transit Board and talking about what that timeline looks like. And then from there, mid-December, we will be in front of SECOG asking for a placeholder for additional funds. So our next big, big thing that we want to do is make sure that the bid gets out. We receive that back. We think the gap is around 10 million, but until we actually receive the bid, then that's when we'll know.
That's great news. Last I heard, though, I thought the delta was more like 20 million. So, so what happened?
20 million, yes. There was money that was contributed on behalf of RT in terms of their staff costs, and so that's really what brought that cost down to more like 10 million.
Okay. Well, good. That's great news.
Well, and we'll keep our fingers crossed at 10 million.
Right. So the, the total amount of time that we have is what?
We need to have everything wrapped up and completed by 2027. So construction has to start next year.
Okay. Well, certainly look forward to hearing more details at the upcoming RT meeting.
Yes, we will be there.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, LaShelle. Don't see any other comments from my colleagues at this point. Public comment on this?
We do not have any public comments.
No, no public comment. Well, thank you, Susanna, and thank you, LaShelle. And you'll need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay. Motion and second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. And also, I just want to give a big thank you to the staff, who really, they're the ones who work really, really hard on all of these many initiatives. They're all here, and they just do an outstanding job.
Thank you. Okay. That'll take us to item sixty-nine, which I believe we will continue.
Okay. For item sixty-nine, you're acting as the Sacramento County Water Authority, and for this item, we need to continue it to December 5th. So this is the public hearing for the introduction of the ordinance amending Title IV of the Water Agency Code.
So moved. Second. Okay.
That's a unanimous vote.
Okay. So before we break for, I'd like to go to our nominations. Let's get these out of the way.
That's fine. So let's get over to item seventy-nine. Let me just grab it out of my binder.
Item seventy-nine, for, you're continuing to December 12th, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, First Five Commission, Public Health Advisory Board, Sylvan Cemetery District, continuing to January 9th, Adult and Aging Commission, Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Carmichael Recreation and Park District, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Equal Employment Opportunity Commissions Advisory Committee, the Human Services Coordinating Equal Employment Opportunity Commissions Advisory Committee, the Human Services Coordinating Council, the Local Child Care Planning and Development Council, the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Board. Your first item is Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please nominate Erin Stumpf and continue remainder to December 5th.
Thank you. The Community Review Commission.
Please, is that District 3?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please continue to December 5th.
Okay. Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council. I'll start with you, Mr. Desmond.
Please reappoint Kurt Haven and continue remainder to January 9th, 2024.
Okay. And then, Mr. Hume?
Also continue to January 9th.
Got it. Consumnis Area Community Planning Advisory Council. We'll start with Ms. Frost.
Please continue to January 9, 2024.
Okay. And then, Mr. Hume?
Ditto.
Thank you. Next is the Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council. Mr. Desmond?
Please continue to January 9, 2024.
Thank you. Natoma's Community Planning Advisory Council. Mr. Serna?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Agarjit Taur, and please continue the remainder to January 9.
Thank you. North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Mr. Serna?
Please continue to January 9.
And Ms. Frost?
Please continue to December 12.
Okay. Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board. Mr. Hume?
I have to continue to December 5.
Okay. Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. We'll start with Mr. Serna.
Please continue to January 9.
And then, Mr. Desmond?
Chiefs recommend continuing to December 12th, pending interviews.
Okay. And last but not least, is the Sacramento County Mental Health Board. We'll start with Mr. Serna.
Please continue the item until December 12.
Ms. Hume?
Ms. Frost.
Actually, my name is Frost. Sorry. Ms. Hume, okay. Please continue to 1212. Please forgive me. Okay, Mr. Hume?
My wife continues to January 9, please.
Did you say January 5? Yeah, okay. Thank you. That concludes your nominations.
Okay. Very good. So then, we will adjourn them, be on recess, and we'll reconvene in closed session in a few minutes on the second floor. Okay, it's 2:02, and I'll call the afternoon session of the Board of Supervisors to order to ask the clerk, please call the roll to establish quorum.
Good afternoon, Supervisors Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, let's move right on to our afternoon calendar.
Okay. Item number 70 is the Sacramento County 2022 Crop and Livestock Report Presentation.
Good afternoon, Chris.
Good afternoon. I almost said good morning. Okay. I won't make the day longer than it already is for you guys. So I appreciate this opportunity. My name is Chris Flores. I am the Agricultural Commissioner for Sacramento County and appreciate the opportunity to present the 2022 Sacramento County Crop and Livestock Report. The theme of this year's report is empowering communities through agriculture. We've noted within the report some of the agricultural businesses within each of your districts and highlighted the important job that you all do on a daily basis. In today's presentation, I will be providing the highlights of our crop and livestock statistics from 2022, and will introduce you to Laura McCready, who is a Senior Ag and Standards Inspector with our department and who will go over some of the specifics, as well as how we collect and collate the data. I'd like to publicly thank all of the agricultural businesses who provided us with their production data so that we can, in turn, provide that to you, to the state, and to the U.S. Department of Agriculture. I'd like to recognize Deputy Agricultural Commissioner Kevin Martin, who is in the audience today, who really assists with the creation of the report every year and actually created the posters that were given to you guys. And he's sitting right here. And then, lastly, I want to thank Laura McCready, who every year collates and collects this data. It's not an easy task, and to my staff, who actually provide all of the photos and the programmatic data. Okay. So our gross production value in 2022 was over $602 million. That is the highest value that the Sacramento County has ever seen. It's a 5% increase over 2021 values. And this production value does not include costs incurred by producers, such as labor, preparation for planting, irrigation, pest management, regulatory costs, et cetera. So this is just their gross production value. This slide shows the various categories and the percentage that their value contributes to the overall value of all reported commodities. And you can see that fruit and nut values account for almost 45% of the total value in Sacramento County. Field crops make up almost 17% of the total value, and so on. Our top 10 commodities, once again, include our favorite players here. Wine grapes. Wine grapes came in at $188 million. It was actually an 8% decrease due to a decrease in per acre yields, and this was seen pretty much all over the state. Market milk came in at number two, highest valued commodity with over $91 million in production value. Pears remained our third highest valued crop at $56 million. Poultry was valued at over $32 million. Aquaculture was our fifth highest valued commodity and increased by 43% over 2021 values. Corn for silage was our sixth highest valued commodity. Nursery stock came in at seventh. We actually saw a pretty drastic decrease in our nursery stock number due to a loss of production acreage. Alfalfa hay came in eighth. Cattle and calves were at ninth place, and rice production made the top 10 at $14 million. This year, I wanted to highlight some of the other million-dollar crops that our county produces. So we have corn for grain at 11th place, and those are based on values. Processing tomatoes valued at over $10.5 million. Cherries, almonds, wheat, rangeland, rye grass, excuse me, and then seed. And the sunflower crops that we have here in Sacramento are mostly grown for seed crops. Triticale, there, number 19, was actually a typo. That should be 2.6 million, not 16 million. So you see some of the other, those are all the other million-dollar crops in our county. Our organic statistics were very similar to 2021. We had 27 farmers growing organically on 3,107 acres, and their total reported gross production value was 4.85 million. We don't include that number in our total gross production value. We keep it separate, sorry, because some of the growers provide that data within our total gross production value. We just keep it separate. And then, this year, we decided to go ahead and survey some of our cannabis growers. We have legal cannabis growers within the city of Sacramento, as you know. There are currently over 100 licensed cultivators growing indoor cannabis within the city limits. In 2022, there was over 118,000 pounds of cannabis produced. The total gross production value of this crop was $104 million. And that value is also not included in our total gross production value. And in fact, you'll note that in the report itself, that information is added as an insert and not part of the report due to its lack of legalization at the federal level. So at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Laura McCready, and she will go through the next few slides and some of how we gather this data.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura McCready. I'm a Senior Ag and Standard Inspector with our department. In 2022, the overall field crop value was 101 million, a 19% increase from 2021. Our miscellaneous field crops had a combined total value of $2.9 million. And to give some insight on our miscellaneous categories, a commodity is added to the miscellaneous category to avoid disclosing confidential data of a producer. If a commodity has three or less growers, or one grower that's producing the majority of the crop, it's moved to our miscellaneous section. And all grower that's, all grower data that's submitted to us is confidential per the government code, Section 6254, and is only used to calculate the commodity yields and values. In 2022, the overall fruit and nut crop value was 269 million, an 8% decrease from 2021. Our wine grapes dominate this category, with 34 wine grape varietals grown on over 38,000 acres. Our fruit and nut commodities are extremely dependent on weather conditions. Weather events like frost or late rains can impact these crops significantly. And the way we determine commodity values is by gathering the individual yield and price data provided to us from our growers, and then calculating a weighted yield and price. The amount of harvested acreage is then multiplied by that weighted yield and price to come up with a total dollar value for each commodity. For livestock and poultry, the overall livestock and poultry value was 50 million, an increase of 14% from 2021. And this value includes cattle and calves, chickens, turkeys, goats, and sheep. Our market milk saw an increase in 2022 as well and climbed 27% to 91 million. Our poultry data is provided to us from the processors that our producers contract with, and the market milk data comes to us from USDA's National Agricultural Statistics Service and includes both fluid milk and manufacturing-grade milk values. In 2022, the APR value that includes honey and pollination was 1.3 million, a 24% increase from 2021. Sacramento County crops that utilize pollination include almonds, cherries, cucumbers, melons, onions, and sunflowers. The aquaculture value was 32 million and had a 43% increase from 2021, and that data comes to us from our aquaculture producers. Nursery, although still in our top 10, saw a significant decrease, as Chris mentioned, due to a decrease in productive acreage. In summary, there were over 20, ooh, back one. In summary, there were over 276,000 acres that were harvested, including our rangeland value, and 100 crops grown. This number does not include the specialty crops that are grown by our certified producers. We had 101 certified producers, growing 799 commodities. These commodities include a variety of fruits, vegetables, mushrooms, herbs, cut flowers, nursery stock, microgreens, eggs, honey, just to name a few. And these crops are sold at various farmers' markets throughout the Sacramento County and across the state. And that concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Supervisor Kennedy?
Yeah, I'm just punching in quickly because I know that my colleagues want to do the same, so beat them to the punch. You know, every year, we get these. They get better every year. This is really, really good. So I just want to, you know, my hat's off to you. The design, the readability, the information that's in there and concise, really, really well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Takes the team.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. I'd too like to congratulate you on a great-looking and very informative report summary here. I did want to just ask a question, though, about the, some of the numbers you cited with regard to cannabis cultivation. If it were to be included formally, it looks like it would actually be the second highest grossing agricultural commodity in Sac County. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do other of your peers across the state and the other 57 counties, do they, are they doing something like this, too, in terms of at least citing informally cannabis production and gross value?
They are. The counties that have legal production are starting to include it. Monterey County is the only one that I know of where the board actually, I think, created an ordinance that said it would be allowed in the crop report. So they actually, it's in the report and included in their numbers.
Is there any functional benefit to doing that?
I, you know, I like to keep it separate right now because we do submit our data to the National, yeah, Ag Statistics Service, and so I wouldn't include that anyway right now, but, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to echo the comments just about the quality of the report and the by-district posters, very cool as well. And it was interesting to read, I didn't realize that pears, called out separately by name, are, you know, the number three crop. That's pretty amazing. I did have a couple of questions. First is, you mentioned the typo, but what is triticale?
You want to answer?
It's similar to wheat.
Similar to wheat?
Yes.
Okay. And then, second question, I noticed the production of cherries fell off significantly from last year to this year. Was that due to one of those weather events that you referenced?
Correct. Last year, they had a fantastic year. This year, they were affected by early frost and late rains.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, maybe next year will be better.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
Supervisor Frost?
Thank you, Chair. I just, I wanted to echo the comments about the, the entire presentation is amazing, and the artwork is stunning. I'm curious to know, did you do that artwork, or?
He did.
He did. This is beautiful. Really beautiful. The best one I've seen. It's always my favorite report, one of my favorite reports of the year, and I just, I wanted to compliment you with the information. And I also wanted to ask about corn silage. I'm not sure I understand, is that silk or silage?
It's silage. And it's actually used for dairy feed. They grind up the actual, the full stalk, and so it's fermented and used for dairy feed.
Well, the only other question I have is relating to the bees and their impact on agriculture, and it seems like over the past decade or two, we have a lot less bees. Is that something, is that true, or is it just me living in the city where there's not as many bees?
It does ebb and flow. It goes up and it goes down. It's affected by certain factors. There could be colony collapse. There could be a lack of pollination sources for them, but right now, I'm not hearing too many issues with our bee population. We have a lot of pollination sources. The nut crops are a big source for them, and our nut crops are going up.
Great. Well, thank you for a great report.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Supervisor Serna?
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Chair. I just feel I would be remiss if I didn't call out and specifically thank and congratulate the in-house photographers who are noted on the inside front cover, so job well done.
Thank you.
Well, thank you as well. This is very impressive, and it is a great presentation when we hear this, and it's a good reminder for all of us, not only about the rich agricultural heritage of this county, but the current economic impact of agriculture in this county is really something to be celebrated. And is it Kevin, right? Kevin? Yeah, no, these are, these are really great. I mean, I think you hit it just right for each district, too, so thank you for that. So thank you for that, and thank you for the presentation. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay. I believe this is received and filed?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thanks very much.
All righty.
Hopefully, it won't be a whole nother year until we hear from you again, Chris.
I know. I'm hoping. I'm shooting for July. All right. Thanks.
All right. Number 71.
Right on time. Yes. For Item 71, this is the Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property for Florin Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Safe, Safety Improvement Projects. For Property 1, this is Florin Fuel, located at 5500 Florin Road, APN 0500271018. For Item 2, we're gonna, staff will ask you to drop that property. This was for the Burlington Coat Factory of Texas, a Florida corporation formerly known as Burlington Coat Factory of Texas Incorporated, a Delaware corporation successor by merger to Burlington Coat Factory Realty of Florin Incorporated, located at 5601 Florin Road, APN 0420012-044. For Property Number 3, this is the Pacuan Properties Sacramento LP, a Sacramento Limited Partnership, located at 6510 Florin Road, APN 0510010064. For Property 4, staff will ask you to drop this property as well, APN 0430126001. For Narinder K. Prasher and Ashcock K. Prasher, Trustees of the Prasher Family Trust, Bodraj Sayini and Kusam Lata Sayini, Trustees of the Bodraj and Kusam Lata Sayini Family Trust, Rajinder K. Sharma and Sita D. Sharma, Husband and Wife, as Joint Tenants, and Darryl M. Dixon, a Single Man, and then Garett M. Shreve, as Successor Trustee of the Margaret M. Lucas Revocable Trust, and Balwant Birla and Sadiq Birla, Husband and Wife, as Joint Tenants, located at 6901 Florin Road. And the environmental document is a categorical exemption.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Peter?
Good afternoon, Chair Desmond and all members of the Board. I'm Peter Hannan, Acquisitions Manager with the Real Estate Division, and I'm here today to introduce this item, which recommends board approval for Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property Interest for the Department of Transportation's Florin Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Improvements Project. Again, before I begin my presentation, and as Madam Clerk has stated, we've had recent developments on two of our resolutions. Number 2 for Burlington Coat Factory, and Resolution Number 4 for the Prasher Trust et al. property. In both cases, the owners have provided the necessary signed acquisition documents to the Real Estate Division, and the county has fully executed the necessary documents. Therefore, I'm affirming the clerk's request to drop both Resolutions Number 2 and Number 4. Thank you. The purpose of the project is to provide a safer environment for all modes of transportation along a portion of Florin Road and create a more attractive, functional, and inviting corridor. The project will construct new sidewalk, curb gutter, sidewalk ramps, and continuous Class 2 bike lanes, street lighting, and signal modifications. In 2019, the Real Estate Division acquired both permanent easements and three-year temporary construction easement acquisitions for this project. The 2019 temporary construction easements will expire prior to completion of the project's construction. Therefore, currently in 2023, county real estate is acquiring new, updated, valued, three-year temporary construction easements sufficient to complete the project construction. Of the 30 necessary acquisitions required for this project, four properties are the subject of this board item. At this time, I'd like to display, I have Attachment 3 here to the board's package. So each of the individual property necessary acquisitions and the corresponding easement interests are listed in square feet. So again, we will be dropping Burlington and Prasher et al. from this group. The county obtained appraisals for the affected properties from an independent appraiser and presented offers to the respective property owners for the purchase of the easement interests I just mentioned, and that are displayed again on Attachment 3. The county's negotiations with these remaining owners have reached impasse. The county is thus unable to secure the necessary easement interests in the subject properties under the current circumstances. Today's Resolutions of Necessity and anticipated eminent domain actions will provide for the possession of the required real interest in real property and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easements through eminent domain if necessary. Information to support the required statutory resolution necessity findings is contained within the staff report included with the agenda packet, along with a history of owner contacts. Notices of intention to seek approval for these resolutions of necessity were mailed to the respective property owners by registered mail and standard U.S. mail at least 15 days prior to today's hearings. If you or any of the board members have questions regarding this project, I or other project team members present are currently available to address those concerns and questions for you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. No board members queued up. Any public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
Okay, so we'll take this, first, first item to drop, oop, Parcells 2 and 4. So we'll take the, okay. Motion, second, please vote?
Unanimous vote.
And then we will need to take action on Items 1 and 3 on the proposed Resolutions of Necessity.
Move staff recommendation with the hope that at some point we can continue to acquire a property next door to 6510, where the old Taco Bell is. That's for another day.
Okay. Duly noted. Thank you. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Peter. My remarks. Have a great afternoon. Okay, moving on to Item 72.
Yes. For Item 72, this is a North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Amendment. Rezone tentative subdivision map and design review for a properly located east of Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard Community. The environmental determination is exempt.
And we will not need an oath for this item. Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, Emma?
All right, so I am Emma Patton, Senior Planner, and today I'll be providing a presentation for the Oxform Project, as well as a presentation for the next item on your agenda, which is the Murphy Development Agreement. While these are two distinct projects, they are directly adjacent to one another, and they do share the same ownership, so there's somewhat of a relationship there. So it is appropriate that these items are back-to-back on today's agenda. The Oxform Project is located north of Gerber Road and east of Bradshaw Road in the Vineyard Community. The subject site is vacant. The property is currently zoned AR10, but it is within the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan area, which plans for single-family residential for this parcel and the surrounding parcels. To the north is the approved Murphy subdivision. To the south is Gerber Creek. To the east is a planned park and basin site currently owned by the county. And to the west is a rural residence. The applicant requests a specific plan amendment, a rezone, a tentative subdivision map, and a design review. I'll provide a bit more information on each of these requests on slides to follow. But first, I will note that an exemption was prepared for this request due to its conformity with the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan. To ensure compliance with the specific plan's adopted mitigation measures, staff prepared a project-specific MMRP identifying all the mitigation measures applicable to the project, including some measures which had been captured as policies or performance standards in the specific plan document itself. Staff also updated the biological resources mitigation measures to reflect adoption of the South Sacramento HCP. To entitle the Oxform subdivision, the applicants request a specific plan land use amendment. As shown on this slide, the existing land use is a combination of single-family residential 4 through 7, single-family residential 1 through 3, and a stormwater detention basin land use. As proposed, the applicant would like to see a single-family residential 4 through 7 with a 1.4-acre park site. The applicant coordinated closely with Department of Water Resources to ensure that the 1.2-acre portion of land previously designated as a detention basin would not be needed, and with South Gate to ensure that adequate parkland would be dedicated to, in part, accommodate the proposed increase in the overall density. The project also includes an amendment to the specific plan circulation diagram. The proposed amendment would straighten Oxform Lane and Deansire Lane to allow for more efficient use of the property to the east of the Oxform subdivision. That's that property owned by the county where the planned basin and park site are located. The amendment is necessary for the Oxform subdivision to ensure that the basin has adequate storage capacity and to, not only to serve the Oxform Project, but also to serve the watershed while maintaining an adequately-sized and unencumbered park site. This change was also reviewed by the Department of Transportation, who is satisfied with the proposed alignment. Next applicant proposes a rezone from AR10 to RD7. This zoning designation is consistent with the proposed specific plan amendment. This slide includes the applicant's proposed tentative subdivision map. The map would divide the 17.9-acre site into 95 single-family residential lots, one park lot, and four landscape lots. Oxform Lane travels through the subdivision and would include a separated sidewalk on either side. And the project also includes pedestrian through access via the two courts for better pedestrian circulation. This project was brought to the Design Review Advisory Committee, who recommended that the project be found in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. The Vineyard CPAC reviewed this project in March of this year. They provided no formal recommendation following a failed motion to deny the project. We did hear from those members who recommended denial and asked for what their concerns were. One member commented that they were concerned about the proposed increase in density, noting that there were several subdivisions within the specific plan area having requested density increases beyond what was originally anticipated in the plan area. And one member commented that they would like to see more coordination with the property owner directly to the west and attention to safety and security. Finally, the Planning Commission met on August 28, 2023, and they recommended that the board approve the proposed project. Staff reviewed the proposed project for compliance with applicable codes and policies. The proposed project is consistent with general plan and specific plan policies. The proposed project complies with all, all applicable lot standards. The specific plan amendment proposed by the applicants allows for more efficient use of the county-owned property to the east to manage increased drainage needs in response to proposals for increased density while maintaining unencumbered parkland. And the park, project can be found in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. So based on this analysis, staff is recommending that the Board of Supervisors recognize the exempt status of the project due to its conformity with the specific plan, that you adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, that you adopt the resolution amending the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan, that you approve the rezone, approve the tentative subdivision map, and find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. That concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions. I also note that the applicant team is also in attendance this afternoon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Emma. I don't see any supervisors with questions. And I know the owner applicant, Mr. Carpenter, is represented. Did you have any comments, or?
Good evening, Chair Desmond, members of the board. I'm George Carpenter with Wind Communities, and I'm here with a number of members of our team. And I just, this is real quick. I'm going to only talk on this item because we also have the following item, but I'll get a two-for-one here. And I just, I want to say this is an opportunity for the county to open up an area that's been approved for development east of Bradshaw and the North Vineyard Station, and we've been finally able to figure out how to get this off the ground. So it's a great opportunity. I'd ask that you please approve this. I want to thank the county planning staff, Todd and his team, for moving the next item forward, which is the Murphy Development Agreement. It's kind of a unique approach to extend a map, and so thanks to Todd and his team. And then also thanks to the Department of Transportation folks for continuing to work with us on how to solve the transportation triggers in North Vineyard Station. And Ron has been a real thinker on how to do that. So very appreciative, and we're optimistic that Mr. DeFanti's vision of making this the best place to do business is real. So thank you.
Thank you, George. Appreciate that, that comment, certainly. Any other, any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the board for action on this item.
Can I move all of those items as one motion? I move staff's recommendation.
On Item 72?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you, Emma. Staff, we'll be hearing from you again, Emma. Item 73.
Yes. For Item 73, this is the Development Agreement between the County of Sacramento and Family Real Property Limited Partnership related to the Murphy subdivision dividing a property located at the east side of Bradshaw Road, approximately 0.5 miles south of the intersection with Florin Road in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is an addendum to a prior mitigated negative declaration.
All right. Hello again. Emma Patton here to present the Murphy Development Agreement. So the Murphy project is located just north of the Oxform project, previously discussed. It's east of Bradshaw Road and north of Gerber Road. For some context, the Murphy project is one of 22 subdivisions in various phases of development within the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan area. Unlike the subdivisions west of Bradshaw, where you see a lot of pink, which indicates that development has occurred, no subdivisions to the east of Bradshaw Road have been developed to date. The Murphy subdivision shown here would divide the 39.8-acre property into 170 single-family residential lots, two multifamily lots, and seven landscape lots. The map was originally approved on July 19, 2006. Due to several statutory and discretionary time extension, the map's current expiration date is March 12, 2024. The applicant requested this development agreement with a term of 10 years, starting on that March 12, 2024, when the Murphy subdivision map would otherwise expire. Listed here are the obligations of the property owner under the proposed development agreement. Of note, the applicant would be required to participate in the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, pay advanced funding related to transportation improvements, and construct certain infrastructure improvements to benefit other nearby approved and pending subdivisions. I'll go into a little bit greater detail on this matter in slides to follow. The county's obligation under the development agreement would be to grant vested rights to the property owner to develop the map as proposed, to work expeditiously in processing and reviewing any amendments to the proposed Murphy subdivision, and to cooperate in good faith with the property owner in securing state and federal permits for the development. The applicant provided some justification for the county to enter into this development agreement with the property owner. The applicant argues it is to the county's benefit to enter into this development agreement because the Murphy tentative subdivision map is required to construct both onsite and offsite infrastructure improvements, including transportation improvements, drainage improvements, and sewer infrastructure. Some of those improvements are shown here on this slide. The delivery of this infrastructure is key in allowing development east of Bradshaw to occur in compliance with the county's approved specific plan. These improvements could relieve infrastructure burdens that previously constrained approximately 1,000 residential units east of Bradshaw Road, either already approved by the county through subdivision maps or pending applications for subdivisions that the county has in process. The location of the Murphy project makes it the first leg in completing the extension of Ballinger Drive east of Bradshaw Road, which would offer circulation utility connections to several approved planned subdivisions south of Florin Road, making it a key project for development east of Bradshaw. Additionally, the applicant noted that the Murphy project, in conjunction with the Oxform subdivision just to the south, provides the property owner with the critical mass necessary to support the level improvements required to initiate residential development in the specific plan east of Bradshaw. Here you can see a composite map showing the relationship between the Murphy subdivision and the Oxform subdivision. Staff has reviewed and analyzed the justification provided by the applicant, both in terms of the critical mass argument and the infrastructure improvement argument, and agrees it is to the county's benefit to enter into this agreement to encourage implementation of the specific plan east of Bradshaw Road. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the original Murphy map. An addendum to that mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this proposed development agreement. The Vineyard CPAC considered this development agreement in May of 2023, where no vote was taken due to a lack of a quorum, but the proposal was supported by the council members. taken due to a lack of a quorum, but the proposal was supported by the council members present. The Planning Commission later considered this request during their August 2023 meeting and recommended approval of the development agreement. The development agreement would allow the Murphy subdivision with adequate time to develop and deliver key infrastructure that could help encourage implementation of the specific plan east of Bradshaw Road. Based on this justification, the support from the CPAC and the support from the Planning Commission, staff is recommending that the board determine the addendum prepared for the prior mitigated negative declaration is adequate and complete, and that you adopt the ordinance to amend the Sacramento zoning code to approve the development agreement related to the Murphy subdivision. That concludes my presentation. I am available if you have any questions. And I do want to note that I'm joined today by Emma Carrico, the project manager for this application, as well as the applicant team. Thank you.
Thank you. Emma, Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to commend staff and thank them for this unconventional way of, you know, meeting a reasonable accommodation for an extension. This is the kind of, you know, critical thinking workaround that I think is needed in order to, as was mentioned, be the best place to do business. So thank you very much. With that, I would move the item.
Second. Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Couldn't agree more. So thank you to staff. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay.
And we did not have any public comments for that item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Item 74.
Item 74 is a zoning ordinance amendment to amend the Fair Oaks Boulevard Main Street District's special planning area for properties located within the Main Street District and the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms community. The environmental document is an addendum to the Environmental Impact Report.
Good afternoon. Welcome, Joelle.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Desmond and members of the board. My name is Joelle Lindman. I am a principal planner with Planning and Environmental Review, and this item today is the Fair Oaks Boulevard Main Street District SPA Amendment. Before I begin, I just wanted to acknowledge staff's work on this project, including now former senior planner Todd Taylor, principal planner Wendy Hartman, environmental review staff Kurt Steiner, and the environmental coordinator Julie Newton. Right. For a little background as to why we're here today, October 2011, the Board of Supervisors adopted the Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor Plan, which established an overall vision, planning goals, objectives, and design concepts for the corridor, which includes a portion of Fair Oaks Boulevard and Manzanita Avenue in the unincorporated Carmichael community. The corridor plan also established four land use districts within the corridor that provided separate visions for each of them. Those four districts are the Manzanita, East Fair Oaks, Main Street, and South Gateway District. The corridor plan and the community refers to the Main Street District as Carmichael's economic and social center. It's the heart and soul. It's downtown. As such, the Main Street District was the only district to receive a special planning ordinance that established required development standards and land uses for that unique geography. In addition to development standards and design standards, there is also a land use table that establishes permitted uses, permitted uses subject to conditional use permits, and prohibited uses. In many cases, those are unique to that specific SPA and differ from what is allowed in the zoning code. Fast forward to 2022, almost exactly a year ago today, November 15, the Planning Department brought a workshop before the Board of Supervisors on planning priorities, and one of the main pieces of feedback that we received was that there was concern regarding our special planning area ordinances in the county in general. Your concerns were about the age of some of our SPAs, deterioration within the SPAs, and the limitations of some of our SPAs. There was an expressed desire for flexibility, for revitalization, and economic growth within these SPA areas. Based on that feedback from the Board of Supervisors at the workshop and past feedback we'd received from some of our customers, we initiated the Main Street District SPA Amendment. The project includes a zoning ordinance amendment to allow for drive-through retail, drive-through service, and car wash uses, subject to an issuance of a conditional use permit to the Board of Supervisors. It also includes minor corrections to include a planning director determination, updates about data references with our updated zoning code, and finally, some administrative amendments as well. This slide shows the updated land use table for the SPA, and that red C there in the Main Street District indicates that these uses will be allowed with a conditional use permit, and reference footnotes tie these uses to development standards already within our zoning code. Key points for the board to consider. First and foremost, this really is intended to provide flexibility consistent with the Board of Supervisors' direction. These uses are currently prohibited, and there is no path forward for potential projects. This update would allow for these uses to occur with oversight through the CUP process to the Board of Supervisors. Applications would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis and weighed against applicable and adopted standards. As mentioned, these uses would be subject to the standards for drive-through and automobile car wash facilities already included in our zoning code. They would also be required to meet the design and development objectives and standards of the corridor plan and SPA. The CPAC and by extension, the community, along with the Planning Commission, would review these applications, receive public input, and make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Conditions of approval can be applied to the conditional use permits. Approval of these projects is therefore not guaranteed. Staff and ultimately, the Board of Supervisors will consider these projects carefully against the needs of the community, the environment, and those standards that we just discussed. This amendment was considered a project under CEQA. Therefore, PER prepared a CEQA addendum to the previously certified Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor Plan roadway project final EIR. The ER team conducted an assessment to determine if any of the proposed changes would result in new or substantially greater significant impacts than what was disclosed in that final EIR, and found through the CEQA addendum that the proposed changes would not create a new or substantially greater significant impact than what was previously disclosed. It also concluded that all mitigation measures previously adopted will be applied as applicable to any projects that come forward consistent with this amendment. The amendment was also subject to a few advisory meetings, the first being the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms CPAC, which was on July 12, 2023. CPAC did note that they were not in favor of drive-throughs generally, but they were supportive of flexibility and wanted to review these projects on a case-by-case basis and receive public input. They were not completely shut down to the potential for these uses to be planned appropriately within the SPA. With the benefit of flexibility and the opportunity to review, the CPAC voted to recommend approval for yes, zero, no. Planning Commission also met on September 11, 2023, to consider the item. Like CPAC, the Planning Commission was supportive of flexibility. The Planning Commission did inquire about why the level of review was at the Board of Supervisors rather than a lower hearing bodies, such as the Planning Commission or the zoning administrator, and inquired about whether PER had heard any inquiries for these uses in the past. Staff communicated that the CPAC and community members, including those in support of the amendment, agreed that having careful consideration by the Board of Supervisors for these specific CUPs was extremely important and warranted, given that this area is considered the economic and social center of Carmichael. Staff also explained that over the past more than decade, that there have been inquiries about these particular uses, and that we had been responding for more than a decade that there was no path forward for these uses. Public testimony was received with a majority in support, and the Planning Commission recommended approval 3-0. With that, staff recommends that the board determine the previously certified Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor Plan roadway project final EIR, together with the CEQA addendum, is adequate and complete for the proposed project, and approve the ordinance amending the Fair Oaks Boulevard Main Street District SPA. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Joelle, and thank you, staff, for working on this, Todd in particular. You know, I've had several discussions about this. You know, I'm a lifelong resident of Carmichael, very close to Fair Oaks Boulevard, and was involved in some of these efforts when that SPA was created, with the hope that this would result in a new vision for Carmichael, and we could really turn that Fair Oaks Boulevard into a Main Street feel. The reality is that has not happened, and nothing even close to resembling that has happened. And I can attest to that personally, and we have only seen more and more vacant parcels there. And so my colleagues can attest to that because they've seen it very recently out there in that part of the county. And I certainly don't want to abandon, you know, a vision or these idealistic ideas of things we could potentially do, certainly in the context of some changes. I'm looking at Mr. DeFanti here. In the context of some changes we're making in the county with respect to our development review process. But I think the reality is that unless we inject some flexibility in some of these SPAs, it's going to keep heading in that direction. I do like that this would have to, would require board action. I know that's onerous for applicants, but I think that is an important feature of staff's recommendation. And the other thing that is, I think, was not mentioned is that, you know, you look at the areas just outside the SPA, and you're seeing some of these uses go in, and you almost have this, you know, in a way, almost a crater of inactivity along that stretch of Fair Oaks Boulevard. So it's something I support reluctantly. I wish it was not the case, but I think this kind of flexibility and revisiting these SPAs on occasions, if they have not accomplished their purpose, is appropriate. So I'll stop there, and I, do we have public comment on this item?
We do have several public comments at this time. We have about 10 speakers.
Okay, so we'll go to public comment.
Our first public comment is Lisa Marie.
And we have a very full agenda this afternoon, so please keep your comments at two minutes or less. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Lisa Marie Isaacs. I grew up along this stretch of Fair Oaks Boulevard. I've seen it deteriorate over the years. I currently work in Carmichael, and I am in favor of this amendment. We need more businesses coming in to the stretch of Fair Oaks instead of leaving. And we've had some businesses leave just in the last several months. The 99 Cent store is closing in the stretch of Main Street. So that's all I have.
Thank you. You don't have to be that quick with your public comments, but thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Marzell, and I have lived in Carmichael for over 40 years. And I'm very excited about the changes that are about to take place, I hope. I've watched this area of Fair Oaks Boulevard deteriorate over the years. I love the idea of making improvements, and we have beautiful sidewalks now, and I really appreciate that, but it's not conducive to a walking community. And I just feel like we need, I approve the amendments to just open up and allow businesses to come back in. And I love the idea that they still have to be approved by the committee here, so thank you.
Next, we have Nick.
Afternoon, Nick.
Hello. Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I'm Nick Bloys. I've been a resident of Carmichael for over 50 years, and I'm here in support of the modest change to the Fair Oaks Boulevard Main Street SPA. Currently, there are three drive-throughs in the SPA, Walgreens, Starbucks, and Jack in the Box. As a member, as a board member and current chair of the Carmichael Improvement District, P-Bid, I am very familiar with the SPA and the Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor Plan. I love the Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor Plan concept, but it hasn't worked well as designed, and that's why I think we need some modest changes. Working closely with our P-Bid owners to develop their properties along the Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor, I've had many of our property owners say that due to the lot size and the cost, these projects on these properties are not profitable. Some of these properties have been vacant for over 18 years or more and have become blight. These locations have also become a hotspot for drug-addicted unhoused who leave trash to be cleaned up by the property owners. Drive-throughs approved at the Board of Supervisors level and not a lesser level on a case-by-case basis would, I believe, improve the Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor and could spur development. I ask the Board of Supervisors to please support the modest SPA changes to the Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor and Main Street SPA. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Kyle.
Is that Kylie?
It's Kylie.
Kylie.
I get it all the time. I'm here to voice my support for the amendment to the Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor Plan. Fair Oaks Boulevard is filled with vacant buildings and empty lots, and I believe that having less restrictions to development will help encourage economic activity in Carmichael. Please consider voting in favor of the amendment. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Adam.
Good afternoon. My name is Adam Marzell. I'm also born and raised Carmichaelian, as I like to call it. I grew up there and went to school there. And I've also seen, seen that stretch of Fair Oaks Boulevard go downhill over the years, from when I was a kid to what it is now. I'm also a property owner on the corridor there, and, you know, as they discussed earlier, we have had inquiries from various businesses that wanted to come in, and every time, it didn't fit in within the SPA rules. You know, and that's just lost opportunity, lost economic impact in Carmichael. So I'm supportive of the amendment. I want to see more development. I want to see less vacant lots, and I want to see Carmichael and Fair Oaks Boulevard come back to what it was once. So I'm supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Annie Marzell. No relation to Adam Marzell.
Different spelling.
And thank you to the Board of County Supervisors for everything you do. I'm in support of the amendment, and same story. Grew up in Carmichael. My kids go to school in Carmichael. I went to school in Carmichael, and we're really looking forward to this opportunity. So thank you for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Greg Thatch. I'm here representing the Marzell family. So you're hearing from a lot of us today. By the way, I used to be able to take those steps one at a time. Doesn't work as well anymore. But anyway, thank you for this. And Supervisor Desmond, thank you for leading this effort. It has been a very difficult time in Carmichael. Not only do my clients own property there and have been trying for years to do something with it, I live out there, and I can tell you, it has deteriorated badly. It doesn't get better. We do have beautiful street. The county put money in and did a wonderful job on the streetscape, but the businesses haven't changed. They've deteriorated. It needs a shot of economic development, and hopefully, this will give it to that area. So again, Supervisor, thank you for leading this.
Thank you, Ms. Katie.
Hello, I'm Katie Say. I'm actually a newer Carmichael resident, and I have to say, when I first came here, I was a little surprised just to see the beauty of the general area, but all the vacancies and the type of businesses that are along Fair Oaks Boulevard and the whole Carmichael area. So I just think it would be very exciting to, you know, see some new opportunities and see what we can come up with. So I'm hoping you'll support the amendment.
Good afternoon, Gary.
Good afternoon, members of the board and Chairman Desmond. I've had an office on Fair Oaks Boulevard since 1983. I was the chairman of the steering committee that created the P-Bid in Carmichael. I was on the Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor Committee. This is a long history. Started with Muriel Johnson. There was a time at La Sierra, there was over 200 people from the community that came together and tried to communicate to the county what their wishes were. The wishes were to make Carmichael a destination, not a path. The wishes were to make Carmichael a destination, not a pass-through community. That's part of the reason why, when we were on the Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor Committee, we limited the three lanes going each direction on the Fair Oaks Boulevard to two lanes with the turnout, so that it would not be a pass-through, that it would be a destination. I don't understand why the county, having spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop Fair Oaks Boulevard and revitalize it, did not even consult with Bruce Race, who was the consultant on that project, or Andy Plecha, who is in Sacramento and worked on that project. It seems to me that you would have wanted to get the reasons why that the drive-through restriction was placed on this SPA. I find it interesting, and don't be offended, I was invited to the dedication on March 21st, 2022, but I wasn't invited to the workshop on when this was discussed by the county. So I think that you have a history that you're, I don't know that a drive-through is going to improve things. If you wanted to improve the vacancy, then you could bring back thrift stores and cannibal, pot dispensaries. So I don't think that allowing drive-throughs is going to improve the vacancy problem. A vacancy persists throughout the entire county. There are two other areas that are going to have a drive-through in the near future. There's a one acre lot near Bel Air that's going to have a Chick-fil-A. Why would one business want that entire property? Because of their takeout and they have people waiting in the drive-through. You're going to have another proposal before you at Manzanita and Winding Way and you're going to supposedly have four drive-throughs there. So I just don't think that a drive-through is beneficial to the community and I think the community has asked for that not to be the case when they adopted this SPA. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Our last public comment is John.
Good afternoon. My name's John. I'm a resident and was born and raised in Carmichael. I think we all know the challenges that we see on the Fair Oaks Boulevard Corridor. I now, as a professional, am in commercial real estate and so this is what I do every day, is I work with these buildings, these tenants and these landlords. And I would say from a functionality standpoint, these buildings are relatively obsolete and so reusing existing is challenging to do, it's costly, and I think a lot of the demand right now is for new development and new construction of drive-through type uses and other type uses. And I'm very confident that if we allow some flexibility in the zoning and kind of get a jumpstart with some of these drive-through operators who are doing transactions right now in this tough environment, that will spur additional development along the corridor. So I'm in favor of this amendment.
Thank you, John.
I conclude your public comments.
Okay, well, I mean, I'll wrap up. John, I appreciate actually ending with that comment because, I mean, that occurs to me as well. I mean, if there's more activity, it might generate more interest. But I don't want, I mean, I'm going to make a motion to support this today, but if it, if it passes, I certainly don't want this to be the epitaph of the SPA and the Fair Oaks Boulevard or the efforts or vision to establish a Main Street. Again, looking at Mr. DeFonte because I think of some large parcels along that stretch that, you know, I would love to see if we could come up with some ideas where we could potentially attract some investment, affordable housing developers there or other businesses to relocate along that area in Fair Oaks Boulevard. So with that, I will move approval of the staff recommendation and thank staff for your work on this, on this proposal. Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, for item 75, I do need a motion to drop this item. This is the BB Brothers Market PCN Request for Public Convenience or Necessity Letter from the Board of Supervisors for Type 21.
Mr. Stop. Second.
Unanimous vote. They will bring that item back when they're ready.
Thank you.
Okay, for, we are right on time for item 76. This is the Sacramento County Emergency Medical Services Report on Ambulance Patient Offload Times and the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District Report on Mobile Integrative Healthcare.
Okay, Tim, you're going to be kicking us off.
I will be. Good morning, Tim Lutz, Director of Health Services. So ambulance patient offload times or A-POT is something that I know, we've had a number of conversations with board members, importantly, something that we've really been talking to our stakeholders about, certainly in my year here and I know before that as well. So first, I really want to thank a lot of our partners here today. We have a number of hospitals, hospital council, fire districts, and ambulance providers in addition to SAC area firefighters union. Just highlighting, I think, that the interest from all of our stakeholders in this topic. When we talk about A-POT, it really is something that impacts every single one of us. When we call 911, we have an expectation that an ambulance is going to get there as soon as possible. If we have to go to the emergency room, that we get admitted as quickly as possible. And recognizing in Sacramento where we have some challenges with A-POT, we want to make sure that we have a lot of eyes and discussions on this topic. So what we're going to have today for you all is Dr. Khan, who's the EMS Medical Director, is going to take everyone through a brief snapshot of what exactly is A-POT? Why is it particularly acutely relevant? And then we're going to invite SAC Metro Fire to come up to talk about their MIH program. Recognizing there are a lot of tools in the toolbox to help address A-POT without any single one solution, we thought this was an opportunity to highlight one of those solutions, but also recognize there's a lot of different options or levers that we're pulling to try and address A-POT community-wide. So with that, I'll invite Dr. Khan up if you want to start.
Thank you, Tim. And let me just say while you're, Doctor, while you're making your way up there, I appreciate you coming and I think you've put in the staff report that I was the one who initiated this, but I know that everybody on this die is here has a great interest in this and we've all asked questions about it. So appreciate everybody being here today for this update.
Very good. So thank you to the Board, Chairman Desmond, for allowing us to come today and giving me the opportunity to talk about A-POT. I'm just looking back behind me and to the, to the folks that we have in the audience today. And I think that to see the participation that we have from our fire chiefs who are in attendance today, medical directors for the fire agencies within Sacramento County, we have hospital representation from Sutter Roseville, from other hospital council and our EMS agency. I think it just, it highlights the fact that, that us as a collective, we live and breathe every single day of our life with that number. And the reason why we do that is because of that number, in my judgment, and I, and I hope I'm speaking for everybody else in the room, but that number represents a clear and present danger to the health and safety of the folks who live in Sacramento County. I'll have you flip to the next slide if I could, or is it? Okay. So I put this number up. This is a simple number, 62. So 62 can be a lot of things. It's somebody's age, it can be, you know, a number of different numbers, but this is a particular number which is of prime importance to us in Sacramento County. It's actually one month out of date, but this was the, the number of minutes that it took a patient who was arriving at one of our emergency departments in Sacramento County to get off of an EMS gurney and to be into an emergency department bed in the month of September. So to put that in a context, it took over an hour from somebody arriving at a hospital to getting off of that EMS gurney into an ED bed in order to start treatment in an emergency department. And these are patients who may have sepsis, they may have underlying heart disease and having essentially critical illness, which is putting them at jeopardy.
Dr. Khan. One moment, Supervisor Serna.
Sorry to interrupt your flow. I just want to make sure I understand the number. So that's a, that's an average?
So this is what we call the 90th percentile. So this is 90% of our ambulance offload time happens within this number.
Okay. Is it the case though, that depending on what the situation is with the patient, that if it's much more emergent, if there's more emergent need for immediate attention, heart attack, stroke, that kind of thing, that case by case, hopefully, you're going to say it's lower than this, because I would, I would hope that, but that's why I'm asking whether it was an average or not.
So what you're saying is true, in that the folks that are coming in who have obvious need for specialty care, so they're having obvious heart attacks, they're having obvious strokes, there's trauma patients that need immediate care, they are getting off of the ambulance gurney much quicker than this. But I need to stress that when folks come in who are, what we say, undifferentiated in that they're, they're coming in with a chest pain complaint or they're coming in with a shortness of breath complaint, abdominal pain, you don't know who the ticking time bomb is. And, and those ticking time bombs are sitting on the wall in our emergency departments right now. To this very second, somebody is sitting on a wall waiting to get care started when they have an underlying critical illness. So I put this up, you know, is why is this important? Obviously, we've started the conversation about why we need to get people off of the ambulance, ambulance gurney and into an emergency department bed so they can start the care that they need, so that we can start doing the investigations that we do in an emergency department to identify life threats. And if we can't get folks off of the EMS gurney, we're not able to start that process. And, and by delaying that care, that brings consequences down the road. So I think, also think about this, and all of those paramedics and those pre-hospital providers that are in the hospitals with their patients on the wall, they are not available within the 911 system to carry out other calls. So paint the picture. There was a situation within the last few months where there was a 911 call from Galt and we ended up having to have a Folsom fire agent, fire medic drive all the way to Galt in order to respond to that 911 call. And that's because our status was so low, because we had EMS gurneys on the wall in hospitals with our paramedics tied up just watching patients while they were waiting to move into emergency department beds. This is, this is where that threat comes, in that we, we live in Sacramento County, the capital region, we live in an area of the world that has a lot of healthcare coverage. We've got some of the best hospitals in the world, but we have this issue which faces us that we need to get over so that we can, we can continue to provide the care that our citizens quite frankly expect when they pick up the phone and call 911. So I've already mentioned, within that 62-minute window, is the patient that's sitting on the wall critically ill? Are they somebody that is, that is essentially their, their chance of having downstream consequences rising by sitting on the wall and not being treated? Care is being delayed? And then this is the, this is the key, this is the take home. So this could be your child, this could be your mom, your dad, this could be you who are, call 911 because you have a perceived emergency and you can't get off the wall and start care in an emergency department. And I think that that, that sentiment speaks for itself. So what is A-POT? So the, this essentially, there has been some controversy here. We've had some movement forward at the state level, which has helped us define this, but essentially, A-POT or ambulance patient offload time is the time from when an ambulance arrives at one of our emergency departments, when the clock starts, to the time when that patient is moved from the EMS gurney onto an emergency department bed and there's a signature from hospital staff, which is typically a nurse. So the clock starts and stops with those events. Our current SAC County EMS Agency policy is that we would, we are shooting for a 20-minute offload time or A-POT time 90% of the time. And that was agreed upon way back in 2016 by our stakeholder meetings. So you can see that there is a significant gap that we are not achieving in getting our patients off of the EMS gurney. So this gives a 12-month rolling picture of where we are in the county. You can see 62 in August of 2023. So I said it was September, my apologies. We did have some improvement in the September number down to 56 minutes and we have seen a general kind of downtrend over the last number of months, which is, which is good to see. It's, it's encouraging, but we have a lot of work to do. We were able to get numbers from the National Traffic Safety Agency, which provided the national numbers on A-POT. And you can see where we're, we're kind of all up and down across the top in the red line with the last four months and from the last slide being on the top, we're at 56 in the month of September. You can see where this number lies nationally. September, 25 minutes is where the time, that 90th percentile, where 90% of the patients are being offloaded within that time. So we have a, this is not a, this is not a specific to Sacramento issue, but it is, it is definitely a California issue and we are one of the worst when it comes to our A-POT times in the state. I was going to come up here and stand up here and say we are the worst, but just within the last month, we are now second worst. So we've, we've had, we've had some improvement, but again, we, we are, we are nowhere near what we need to do or where we need to be in order to provide the people who live in this county with the care that they deserve. So Assembly Bill 40, which was signed by the Governor just in September, put forward a standard for ambulance patient offload times within the state. So the bill would require that every local EMS agency, which is Sacramento County is one, there are 34 across the state, by the 1st of July, develop a standard not to exceed 30 minutes at that 90th percentile. So we've actually gone a step forward and we've defined an objective or goal at 20 minutes. And I think that that is, that is where we should be. We have the staff in the pre-hospital environment that, that are motivated and can achieve this number. And like I said, we have some of the best hospitals in the world. We can get to 20 minutes, I believe that. But we had, but we have the, by statute, needing to be at 30 minutes. And with an implementation of the, of the, essentially meeting those target goals by the 31st of December in 2024. So I want to take a couple of minutes now just to highlight some of the levers and the pressure points that we feel in the pre-hospital setting that we can apply onto the A-POT issue. We've got a recent policy, the 50-50.18 policy, which governs patients that arrive at our emergency departments who we deem to be stable and can move out into our waiting rooms. We've defined what that is and we're, our EMS providers are actively implementing that to try to move those non-critical patients out into the waiting room where they can start to achieve, receive care, kind of just as if they had walked in through the front door of the hospital. We have a BLS tiered response system, which I'll recognize SAC Metro is, has having done a lot of work with this in the last few months and some of our other providers are looking to stand into this wholeheartedly over the next few months, which will essentially take ALS paramedic providers off the wall and put them back into the system. So people who are low acuity, who don't need to have a paramedic standing over them in a hospital, they don't need that. They can have, they can have a BLS response with an EMT come and take over that duty and can actually respond primarily within the 911 system. We've got programs which are addressing our ED high utilizers. So these are folks that will call 911 100 and 200, 200 times, 300 times a year. And how can we address those people with other resources that they don't need to get in the emergency department? We have triage to alternate destination plans, which are being put in place, kind of following on some of the other legislative activity this year. We've got discussions with our hospital council and with hospitals about trying to clear some hospital discharge barriers and then looking at EMS-driven community interventions, of which the MIH will be up here and giving you a discussion momentarily. So I put this up, this slide, I think this is the most important slide out of the entire deck. I, I look at this every day and I, and this is my roadmap on how we get ourselves out of the situation that we're in. What I've done here is I've put together a timeline, which, which essentially defines a patient healthcare event. So on the left, you've got the patient who, who gets sick and calls 911. They go all the way through that, their, their healthcare event, engaging with EMS, going to the emergency department, their hospital admission, and then going home and then staying home and being able to fly and to thrive and not return to the emergency department. So, and what I've done is I've highlighted all of our pressure points or levers, as, as Tim had mentioned, that we can pull in order to try to make a dent into this A-POT number, which sits at the number, which sits at the EMS to ED interface. So we've already talked about the high utilizer strategies, there are, there's discussion that we're having about 911 dispatch destinations, so can we do some work with, with our 911 call center to try to, to try to put people in the appropriate place where there's room? We talked about triage to alternate destinations, tiered response, the ED to waiting room policies that we've put in place, healthcare destination, so keeping people within their healthcare system, that's something that is critically important within our county, and we've implemented that. So if you're a UC Davis patient, or Kaiser patient, or Dignity patient, and you've had your care within those facilities, you go to those places. We know, we know that a patient that goes to the wrong healthcare system and gets admitted to hospital has on average a six-day length of stay, versus the patient that goes to the appropriate hospital has a three-day length of stay. And there's, that's a multifactorial discussion as far as why that happens, but we know that as a fact. So keeping people in their home systems is important. And then moving forward into our, our hospital admission, looking at discharge barriers, looking at, at trying to get folks out of the hospital 24 hours a day, barriers to getting home health services, and then in-home follow-up. These are all things that, that need to be done, and we need to continue to, to, to apply pressure on our system in order to get our A-POT numbers down. So on the bottom there, I also just highlight some of the other EMS-driven community interventions, where we're, we're going to be rolling out EMS buprenorphine to address, or to help start addressing our opioid use challenge in the county. We've got providers that are doing telehealth work with, with a telly 911 system, and there's some discussions that we're having on stroke destination and other things that will ultimately continue to help put pressure, downward pressure on this A-POT number. But I rise here today just to, to point out that we, we have numerous interventions that are being done on the pre-hospital side. I, I am happy to see our hospital folks here today and engaged in this, but we need to continue to have hospital engagement in this issue. This is not solely a EMS issue, this is a us issue, this is EMS, this is hospitals, this is all of you, this is everybody in the room. We all need to be engaging on this, and again, putting pressure where we need to in order to bring this number down, because it is critical for the folks who live in this county. Last point, and this is, I'll, I'll recognize Supervisor Hume, who's been a, a huge supporter of, of our EMS agency, with the passage of AB 767, the Gibson legislation, which cleared the road for community paramedicine and triage to alternate destination. So we have now staff within our agency that's going to be able to do some work to try to get our, a handle on our psychiatric patient population. A lot of times, these folks don't need to be in the emergency department, they, they would be better served in other areas of our community, or other healthcare environments, and to be able to move them to those environments, avoiding emergency department admission, would be helpful for our overall A-POT number. We also have sobering centers, so taking folks who are intoxicated kind of into a similar vein, trying to avoid emergency department admissions where we can. So with that, I'm happy to turn it over to you if you have questions, and I'm, I'm happy to always have a conversation on this issue, because it is, like I said, it is a clear and present danger to our community.
Thank you. Dr. Khan, we'll start with Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to thank you, Dr. Khan, I mean, from literally the first day I met you, we had a conversation about A-POT, and as soon as you hit the ground here, you started taking on the issue. And I want to thank all of the folks in the audience, both from the fireside as well as the hospital side, who I think have leaned in on this, and, and we're chipping away at that us versus them mentality, and realizing that it's the system that's broken, and we need to do what we can to design a better system. You know, I, I think that the ED is, is the pinch point, but what we really need to do is narrow the mouth of the funnel, and keep folks out of, out of the, the, the emergency room in the first place. And so on that pathway forward slide, was that essentially the ways you're looking at how to implement, or what you might be looking for when the hospitals develop the plan to be in compliance with AB 40?
So these, the, the timeline slide certainly gave a fair number of the, again, those pinch points or pressure points that we can put into to try to drive A-POT down. Certainly, there are many more. I'll, I'll recognize Sutter Roseville. So they, they are in compliance today. They're under 30 minutes, and, and I applaud their efforts. You know, one of the things that they do, which is phenomenal, is they match patient arrivals by EMS with their nursing staff. So you have the right people, they're at the right time to deal with the right patient. This is, this is exactly the things that we need to do, and that's one of the things that they excel at. So we, we need to get best practices from our hospital partners. We as EMS professionals can put policies in place which deal with the pre-hospital phase of care, and, and we're doing that, and we're, we're putting all the pressure we can, but we are not going to get to 20, to 30 minutes or then 20 minutes with just pre-hospital initiatives. We need to have things like Sutter Roseville's doing, having our hospitals bring these best practices forward, and come to the table with plans on how they're going to achieve what we need them to achieve.
Well, I know, I know that this was an issue that I was not aware was an issue before I took office, and I believe it was either Trevor Jameson, who I see in the audience, or, or Chief Rodriguez, that brought it to my attention first. And then it's one of those things that, once you hear it, you go, oh my gosh, that is a, that's a serious problem. But you're right, that just fixing the front end is not going to be all of the solutions. But I think that, that is the important piece that's not being discussed, which is that we really only have two of the three legs of the stool here represented, the third leg being the providers. Because one of the issues is that there's not a reimbursement unless they transport to the ER, and so there's an incentive, I guess, if you will, to, or a requirement by state law to transport people to the ER. But then the second one, as you mentioned, I think it's in the, the health plan best interest to have their patient go to the appropriate healthcare provider, not only for, as you mentioned, to reduce that length of stay, but also to reduce their cost, if it's not something that requires a hospital stay, to be able to, to have them go to an urgent care, or a, as you said, a treatment center, or a sobering, sobering center. So I think it's important that we engage those folks in the conversation as well.
Absolutely.
But I, I just really appreciate all of the work that's been put into this, that I've witnessed in the last couple of months, and so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Surratt.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the, the presentation. This is an issue that, since I was seated to the board more than a dozen years ago, has persisted, hasn't gotten any better, it's gotten worse. And it's somewhat disheartening, to say the least, to know that, that number, which you kind of have your theme of presentation around, that 62-minute number, I noted, there seems to be some seasonality to that as well. But to note that, in some cases, it's, it's past 80 is really a cause for a great deal of concern. I guess what I would like to, to know is, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there is a certain amount of discretion by EMTs when they respond, depending on the situation, depending on the condition of the patient, where there's a, a point where they will ask the patient, do you want to be transported or not? That's the first question, and is that the case?
Well, absolutely. It's every, every 911 call and every response does not result in a transport.
So, so is there anything, is there, how much latitude does an EMT have by law to, you know, maybe say more than that? No, you don't really need to go to the, the, the hospital. Is there any way that they can kind of influence that decision?
You know, I think that there are certain presentations that might be lower acuity, where we could certainly dig into that issue. But you, you always, as a medical director, I always have to be able to look forward into the field and put myself, myself in the shoes of that paramedic or that pre-hospital professional. And we never want to be putting our, our folks in, in a situation where they can't win. You know, where, where they have somebody that might have that hidden illness, where they're going to decompensate, where there's going to be a problem. So we work within our policies to try to identify pathways for patients as best we can. We have now telehealth, which is coming into the, into the community, which is, is very, very good, in that you have now an opportunity to, to have a, a healthcare professional right on a screen with somebody, and, and giving them that off-ramp. We certainly need to continue to leverage those things.
One of the things I didn't see, maybe I missed it in the presentation, is a, an average or a percentage of EMT response, medical response, that is associated with alcohol and, and illicit drug use. I mean, so can you enlighten us about that statistic?
Sure. That's, that's a hard number to pin down, because a, a lot of times, there can be concurrent illness, or there can be other things like psychiatric issues, which are also where the, where the substance use can be hidden within those patient populations. I, I think that, as, as indicated by the fact that we are going forward with EMS buprenorphin, which is a, a program where our paramedics can engage with folks who are undergoing opioid withdrawal, to provide them with the care that they need.
I was really very interested when you mentioned that. Very familiar with the administration of buprenorphin as a means to deal with the, the opioid crisis. I was under the impression, though, that there had to be some waiting, some time for withdrawal before it can be administered, so it's not like naloxone where you can do it immediately to bring someone back. Is that, is that the case?
So there, there is certainly a window immediately after a naloxone wake-up even, where buprenorphin can be provided. When patients have, have significant withdrawal symptoms, because they haven't taken their, their substance of choice for a number of hours or days, then those are patients that can be identified in the field and given care. And the, the pilot program that was done in Contra Costa County actually had numerous cases where it was in the immediate wake-up period after an overdose. When you've got a patient who is highly emotional, they realize that they just had a brush with death. And, and that's an opportunity, that's a gateway or a window, where if you have the right person talking to that patient, and can engage with them and get them started on the right therapy, that's, that's a win. One of the things I'll point out from the Contra Costa study was that over 30% of the patients that were started on EMS buprenorphin were still enrolled in therapy 30 days later.
That's great.
I, I, I'm struggling to identify another EMS intervention with that kind of, of success. So I, we are, we are not late to the game, but we're not early into the game in Sacramento County. We're probably seventh or eighth county in the state to, to be looking to launch this, and we're going to be doing that into the new year.
Can you explain a little bit more about that? What does that require? What, what role does the county play, if any, in terms of helping that along?
Sure. So we have, we have a standard set of operating protocols with, that our paramedics in the county can, can function under. In order for us to expand that scope of practice, we need to get approval from the state, from the state EMS authority. So those, that local optional scope of practice request has been written and submitted, and we'll be going, I will be presenting this in San Francisco on December 12th, for us to be approved. And once that approval is done, the protocol is there. So we'll, we'll be talking with our stakeholders in the county that same next month, with a, a look to implement, I would say May 1st would be our implementation date, because there's a training that needs to happen between implement, us being approved and the start. And that's a heavy lift that the folks who are standing behind me are, the knives are out right now. But it's a, it's a heavy lift, but it's a good lift, and it's good work that we need to be doing.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Khan. I just had a question, you know, the, the chart, the Sacramento County percentile or the average versus the national average, what would the state of California look like? I mean, you said we're one of the worst, but would you see this huge disparity between the national average and the state of California?
The state of California is much, much worse than the national average. I would, I would put the, the...
The state's about 40.
Forty, I was going to say 40. So we are, we are significantly higher than the state average. There are some counties that are doing quite well, but oftentimes, those are smaller populations. And there's just, there's a lot of, this is a multifactorial issue.
As, as I, I look at this, and that huge disparity between certainly Sac County and national average, but even California, it sounds like, and the national average, and I look at some of your, your strategies for a pathway forward, I mean, it just, is there some, something big systemically in California that's, what, what is it? It screams to me that it's something much bigger than, than a, a lack of utilization of some of these paths forward.
I, I say this in almost every meeting, that there is an elephant sitting on the table, and there's no one silver bullet that's going to take this out. You know, we, we have, we have to, to attack this thing with an all-in approach. All of the things that I've talked about, there are other hospital-based approaches, there are other EMS approaches that I'm sure are going to be brought to my attention from the, from the folks that I work with. But this is, there is no one silver bullet that's going to make this better. I think that, I think that we, we live in a, in a moment where people want their healthcare now, and the, 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 the number of people who seek primary care through the 911 system is huge. The number of people who are coming to our emergency departments for the low-acuity things, where they could be seen in other, other venues, they just want, they want their, they, they want their care today. And, and it's, and it's human nature, and it's understandable, but it is a pressure that is, that is put on our system and systems across the country, that is very difficult to achieve those, those expectations from the public, and to do it safely. Because when people come in with a complaint, we have to take it all seriously, and we've got to be on the lookout for the people that could be seriously ill.
I, no, thank you. It wasn't a rhetorical question, truly, I'm trying to understand, what is California doing so dramatically differently? But, okay, well, thank you very much. I, I imagine there might be additional questions after we hear for our next presentation. So with that, we'll move on to Mr. Perryman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here, I'm really excited. I'm going to start a few things to make sure that I got it all ready to go. Members of the board, and members of the public, thank you so much for allowing me to be here. My name is Scott Perryman, and I'm a battalion chief with Metro Fire. I've been in the EMS service for about 22 years, and I'm really, really excited to be here in Sacramento County, because I think we have something special. I'm also happy because I've got two of these fine gentlemen beside me. I've got Chief Rannicki, who's our EMS chief, and I have our medical director, Dr. Alex Smoltz, with me to back me up, should I have any questions or, or need any assistance. What I've got for you is, you're going to find out a little bit about me. I'm really nervous, and I'm going to talk really fast, because I'm excited about this topic, and there's a lot of topic to discuss, so please forgive me. You're going to find out that I love quotes. There's just some cool quotes out there, and this one right here, it's spoken to me many, many times, because it just hits really hard. And it says, "Pain is not insignificant. Pain, based on history, has been the greatest awakener that the world has ever seen." Because it's not until you experience a level of pain that you start asking yourself a question, there has to be a better way, this hurts too much. And so what is that pain? What does that hurt? Well, let's talk a little bit about that pain and that hurt. We've talked a little bit earlier about the COVID vams. In 2005, we had roughly 700,000 people in Sacramento County, and we're running about 64,000 911 calls for Metro Fire. Well, in 2020, we're now at about 760,000 individuals, and we're running darn near close to 100,000 calls. Now, we're easily surpassing that 100,000 calls per year. So what that means is, the population is going up, but the 911 call use is just going dramatically higher. The system has to change. Another one of the pain issues that we see is high 911 utilizers. We have individuals, just at the top 20, they account for nearly 1,000 911 calls. And I want to be very clear, it's not that they don't need help, they do need help, but I don't think 911 is always the correct resource for them. The next thing I want to talk about is on the paramedic side. As a paramedic, I love being a paramedic, but when you call 911, I, I generally have two options. Those options are, is I take you to the emergency room, or you sign a patient initiated refusal of service. So you stay there, or we take you to the emergency room. And granted, there's some things that are coming online, but that's less than 1% of all the calls that we're running. So we really don't have that many choices. You just learn that we have the second worst A-POT time in the state. You can imagine what that does to the paramedic morale, what that does to the system, but also the most important side is the patient, their delay in care. So that's an issue there. The opioid epidemic, we're seeing over 1,600, those are where we... The opioid epidemic, we're seeing over 1,600, those are where we, where we gave Narcan. That's not including the, the meth issue that we're seeing, that's not including anything other than, those are 16, about 1,600 patients that we gave Narcan to last year, and this year, we're gonna easily surpass that. The behavioral health issues, between 5% to 6% of our patients are calling for mental health issues, and we take them where? To the emergency room. I don't know about you, but if I had a mental health issue, going into the emergency room where I'm gonna be around a whole bunch of people with lots of alarms and people where I'm not gonna get a chance to kind of get back into baseline, that's, that's not necessarily the greatest place for them. And so there's lots of issues there. We may, you may recall that there was this little issue called COVID a few years ago, and it's still out there. That was a big issue for our EMS system. We weren't really prepared for a pandemic. How do we address this? You remember when the pandemic first started, a COVID test was too advanced for a paramedic. We weren't allowed to do COVID tests. And then they said, okay, yeah, I guess you can't do COVID tested. But it took a delay, a significant delay, before paramedics were allowed to do a COVID test. So I was always taught, well, that if you bring a problem, you better have a solution. So I'm really praying that this news clip works.
Why?
I see that they've called 911 like 10 times in the last month.
Scott Perryman is a battalion chief with SAC Metro Fire.
I started in Southern California as a paramedic.
He loved medicine so much, he put himself through physician's assistant school at Stanford. When he went back out in the field, he quickly realized
There were a lot of issues that I was seeing as a paramedic that could be treated in the field, and they didn't have to go to the emergency room.
A lot of calls coming into 911 were for something as simple as medication. So he decided to pilot a program in Sacramento where physician's assistants or nurse practitioners accompany the paramedic.
The beauty of that is, one, is it saves the patient from going into the emergency room and spending resources there. It saved the hospital because they're not taking patients that don't need to be there. So now they can focus on the patients that truly need to be there.
These advanced providers can educate patients and prescribe meds, providing direct and definitive care.
Our advanced providers present allows us to bridge a gap in care that we may not be able to provide at a paramedic level.
Three hospitals, Sutter, Dignity, and UC Davis, gave 1.1 million to fund the pilot program, which Perryman says is already saving patients, hospitals, and insurance companies' money.
We saw that those high utilizers of 911, we decreased their 911 use by 55%, saving the system over $350,000 in just a three month period.
One area of impact is psychiatric emergencies.
A lot of the time, they have to go to the emergency room to be medically cleared before they can go into a psychiatric facility. We're able to do that medical clearance in the field.
Getting patients the correct care they need the first time to free up first responders for more critical patients.
I think that's a great summary of what mobile integrated health is. It's getting that advanced provider, either a nurse practitioner or a physician assistant, paired up with one of our amazing firefighter paramedics, or paramedics. So we don't have anybody working outside their lane, they're working inside their lane, they're just literally, they're bridging that gap. And so tonight, I actually have Danny Belashki, who's our firefighter paramedic here, and I have Kimberly Renicki, who's the, the nurse practitioner here on the MIH unit. So I'm glad that they're here.
Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, just a quick question. I want to make sure I understand. I think it's awesome what I just saw. Does that mean that you're able to write scripts in the field?
That does.
Wow.
Yep. We don't have to change any protocols, we don't have to have anybody get, work outside their box, they work within their own protocols, just like any nurse practitioner or physician assistant would. Most of our providers right now currently work in either an emergency room setting or something similar. So if this patient went into the emergency room, guess who they'd be seeing? Probably one of our providers, so.
All right, thank you.
What I like about that video is it shows a few things. It shows that we're able to bring faster care, definitive care, and it saves resources and a lot of time. But what you want to know is you want to know the numbers. So let's talk a little bit about the numbers. The numbers that I want to bring out to you right off the bat are the bottom numbers. What we did is, we were able to, when we first started, November 15th of 2021 is when we officially started. We were Monday through Thursday from 8:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night. That's what we had funding for, and so that's what we did. We were able to look at those utilizers, those high 911 utilizers, we started working with them. We saw a 43.6% reduction in their 911 use. The way we got that is we looked at six months prior to MIH involvement, and then after we first started with them, we looked at six months after. So that number even equates for those who are like, eh, we're still not interested. So that was a huge savings in a lot of individuals. The other thing is, we were allowed in the 911 system towards the very end of the program, so that number is slightly skewed on the 85% treat and release on scene. We assume that that it's going to be more than the 60% range that we're able to treat and release, and that's just looking at the data from other departments that have a similar program. Either way, 60% of the time, we're able to fix it definitively right there without them going to the emergency room. The thing that you see at the very top is the million dollars in savings. That million dollar in savings, we were able to definitively and directly say, okay, this is how much money it costs, and this is how much money we're able to save. Because when you look at the average ambulance transport, $2,600, and then you look at the low cost of an ER visit, around $3,000, that's a lot of, that's a lot of money. And if we can just fix it right there, then there's a huge savings. What this doesn't include is those things that you can't definitively measure. We mentally cleared individuals in the field and got them directly to the correct care the first time. So that way, they didn't have to spend several days in the emergency room before they were medically cleared and back into the psychiatric facility where they needed to be. So we weren't able to quantify how many hours and how many days of savings that was. So we know that number is on the very, very low side. So tremendous savings. There's several things that I could talk about on
I want to thank my husband.
Sorry, I'll get back to this one. I'm trying to get it back to, here, let's try to get back. All right. On this, on this number right here, again, this is one unit working four days a week. When you look at, we, we've just seen, just this year alone, there's a 260% increase from just last year. So we're seeing a tremendous increase in this use. There's a reason why LA City Fire Department has four of these units, and they're asking for an additional 20. There's a reason why. It's because it's working. So I can talk all day about the numbers, but what I want to talk about is the more important things, which is the actual patients. The patients who are falling through the crack. So there was a patient, and her son had an unplanned event, and it forced them to move into a second story apartment. The context of the story, though, is that this patient and her son, they were, they're both wheelchair bound, and the apartment complex does not have an elevator. Their only way up and down the stairs was the fire department, and they called 911. Just a, a little bit more, they accounted for 22 911 calls in just a two month period. APS was involved, CPS was involved, I don't know why, but they were involved, and a whole bunch of other organizations were involved. It took mobile integrated health to get there, work with the apartment manager to get them an apartment on the bottom floor. But then, who was going to move them? They couldn't even get up and down the stairs themselves. That's where MIH and Metro Fire stepped up, and we moved them. This is important because, well, Supervisor Frost, this one is for you. This is her.
I want to thank the fire department for, for moving me in my Sunday vet O'Brien on September 15th, the Friday. I will never be able to thank you guys enough, and the lady too, for coming and moving us from a second floor apartment into a two bedroom, two bath apartment on the ground floor, so I never have to have the fire department come and take me into my wheelchair, down the stairs, and bring me back up the stairs when I, when I come back from the doctor's office. It's just amazing, and this apartment is so beautiful, just, it's just, I can't thank them enough. So please, please, tell all the boys and the girl, thank you, thank you, thank you, from the bottom of my heart. I wanted to go on the radio and say thank you, but I didn't quite know how to do that, but thank you so much. It's just amazing.
Supervisor Frost, she's in your area. The other thing about that is her son had not been out of his apartment for over a full year because he didn't want to drag any more resources to help him up and down. So you can imagine his, just his joy when we actually moved him. Supervisor Hugh, this next one is for you. What it was is, this individual was, this individual was falling through the cracks. They weren't a high 911 utilizer yet, but the fire crews recognized that there was an issue, and they engaged, they engaged our MIH program. We got there, we worked with them, we showed them how to use their equipment. They had medical equipment there, but they had no idea you had to actually use it. So we showed them how to use their hoar lift, and they actually had a back issue, were able to give them medication, and then time in with their primary care and their healthcare and transportation needs. This is in your area.
My husband is 77.
Years old.
Years old. He's a veteran, he's got Agent Orange.
Poison Agent Orange.
Poison Agent Orange. The integrated, what do you guys call it?
Mobile Integrated Health?
Mobile Integrated Health people are so much better than any doctor or the VA. I can't tell you how much we appreciate them. I don't know what they get paid, but whatever it is, it isn't enough. They are fabulous, and this is the best service we've ever had in our life, and I hope you continue with this. This is a great service for people that are in
Bed bound.
Bed bound and a lot of trouble. I'm recuperating myself from kidney cancer, my husband's got cancer, and he's got this horrible thing on his back, and they've been beyond fabulous. I can't say enough about these people. I hope you continue with this. This is the best service we've ever had. Thank you very much. Bye.
Supervisor Desmond, the next one is for you, except I didn't have a recording for them. Basically, what it is, is it's a husband and wife. They were at their home, they called 911 because they called their primary care because they both had COVID. They were trying to get in with their primary care, and they said their next available appointment was six months away. And if they didn't like it, to call 911. So that's what they did. Mobile Integrated Health got there, we were able to treat their issues there without them having to go into the emergency room, saving time and resources, and a little over $10,000. Healthcare system is so expensive, that is it, as it is. Supervisors Kennedy and Serna, I'd love to talk more, but I'm running out of time. Basically, there's a lot of gaps. You want to know where we are at now. Again, I said that we have over a 260% increase, and by next week will be the 200, or will be the end of the two year, so I'll be able to crunch more numbers and tell you what we've seen in that year, too. The other thing that we have is, we're doing jail clearances. We've been working with the, your jail staff, Dr. Jacqueline Abdullah, and we have that jail clearance where we can get patients cleared, and then they can go directly to the resource that they need to. So we can do those sutures, we can do the, the taser removals, we can do the dog bite fixes, we can do so many different things where we avoid the emergency room, they get faster care, and they have the correct form so that the jail accepts them, getting valuable time to the officer instead of sending, spending time on a hospital wall where they don't need to be. So that's one thing that we've been doing. The other thing is, we started telemedicine in a very short, in a very narrow cohort, and that started in August. We're gonna be opening it up to all of Metro. The other thing is, that mental health side, we're getting much, much more proficient. Thank you to Dr. Quest, and of course to, gosh, there's so many people we want to thank on that, on the mental health side. I'll, I'll think of it in just a minute. But working with your crisis intervention teams, Jen Reiman, they have been fantastic, meaning we're able to medically clear using a smart clearance form. We either get them to a psych, either respite center, or to the psych urgent care, or to one of the more, like, advanced centers, like Heritage Jokes or Sierra Vista. We can direct them. We don't have to go outside our protocol, it's, it's, it's already there. So we've been doing that. The other thing is, we started Narcan, or we already started Narcan drop offs, and we're officially able to do the medication assisted treatment. We don't need to change any protocols, it's already there, ready to go for us. So what does that do? It saves time for the patient, it saves time for our law enforcement officers as well as for our crews, meaning that it's not overburdening the emergency room, that's already overburdened. It means that our ambulance system is not getting absolutely destroyed, and that they're available for those strokes, heart attacks, whatever else is out there. The other thing is, is it saves a lot of money. It's saving a lot of money for the patient, but also on the healthcare side, far as everything is going up. This is one of the things that's only reducing the cost. So there's a lot of wonderful benefits with the now. So the way I looked at it is the funding. Don't worry, I'm not asking you for more money right now. The first thing is, I want to thank UC Davis, Sutter, and Dignity. They're the ones who gave us the 1.1 million to start the program. I look at that like, kind of like your milk. That's what started the baby, to be able to grow, here you go, here's your milk. Now, we're currently on to the table foods. It needs to be cut up a little bit, but then the toddler can feed himself. That's where that's coming from, is we're working on grants right now. Those three patients that I just told you about would not have been available today without the funding that you guys provided through the American Rescue Plan Act. We've applied for the opioid settlement funds that will be able to allow us to expand our program even more. So there's wonderful growth opportunities there, but that's where the table food is. I want to be like that guy on the far right of that slide, where he's cooking up whatever you want. But in able to get there, we need a sustainable way to do that. And it's really difficult, because I can bill right now, but it's a primary care office visit. And I'm not seeing 30 and 40 patients a day that have minor issues like primary care office visits. I'm seeing things that would be identical to an emergency room visit. But I can't bill for an emergency room visit because I don't have the brick and mortar. So there's lots of challenges there that we're trying to work through. We'll get there, but it's just gonna take more time than, well, a year or two. So we're getting there. So what do we have? What we have is, well, we talked about pain, and we talked about connecting people to the right resources at the right time, at the right place. The future of this is looking very bright. Memphis, Tennessee has a population of about 100,000 less than us. They have three units, 24 hours a day, and it's now their busiest units in their entire department. So, and with LA City asking for that many more units, there's a reason why it's going really, really well. I look at the high utilizers, we decreased it by 43%. We look at the high, the low acuity 911 calls, we're able to treat and release, we're probably gonna be around that 60% range. You look at the mental health patients, we get them directly where they need to go the first time. You look at the opioid stuff, we're already fixing that. You look at COVID, well, what's the next one that's gonna come our way? RSV, the flu, who knows what it is? We don't have to change our protocols. Our nurse practitioners, our PAs are staying within their lane, and their paramedics are staying within their lane. The future is bright for this, and we have solutions. Is this gonna fix absolutely everything? No, it's not. But it's a great start. I quickly want to thank Brian Jensen, Dr. Casirio, Tim Lutz, Dr. Khan, Chief House is here tonight, and then Chief Renicki, and Chief, and then Dr. Schmaltz, and of course, my MIH team. There's a lot of people to thank because this would not be possible without them. We've got a lot of support, a lot of support from the hospitals, a lot of support from the patients, a lot of support from everybody. We're just asking for your continued support. I'm ready for your guys' questions.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with Supervisor Hugh.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, thank you for the wonderful presentation that was very in depth and spot on and just really told a good story on top of everything else. You started out by talking about the pain points that you're experiencing, one of which was call volumes. Can you give me an idea how much call volumes have increased? And we can factor COVID out of that if you'd like, and just go like 2019, 2018.
Yeah, so I mean, the stats that I have in front of me right now that I can give you is, in 2005, we ran, we ran 64,740 incidents. And then we had that population of 703,479. So about 700,000, 64,000. And then in 2020, population of about six, or 760,000, and we're right at about 100,000 calls. So we're definitely seeing that the call volume is, is going up, and it's even, it's increasing every single year.
So nearly doubled, then? Okay. And so in that time, and I know one of the, the, the reasons, in addition to the health of the patient, but also the use of resources, that A-POT is such an issue is because of the resources that are getting tied up, both the paramedics, literally the wall time, in wall time, and the, the units that are sitting outside the hospitals. Has there been an increase in the amount of traditional ambulance units being deployed, both because of the increase in call volumes as well as the units being held up at the ERs?
Probably defer that to Chief Renicki.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Appreciate it. As we've heard today, there's many strains on the system, and we're constantly battling and using resources most efficiently. We learned about this lever that can be pulled. So as we pull that lever, reduces some pressure. What we don't want to do is overflood the system with more ambulances. As it stands today, in Sacramento County, you have your four fire agencies along with AMR in the system as well. So today for Metro Fire, we have 20 ambulances along with 10 AMR resources. And that's a, that's a number that we know we will increase with in a proactive, fiscally responsible manner to make sure that those call volumes warrant that resource versus other solutions, such as one we're talking about tonight with MIH.
And so I'm just trying to get an idea on the need versus the utilization. Did you have 20 units back in 2005 when the call volumes were two-thirds?
I couldn't quote those numbers right in front of me, but we have had an increase.
Increase the number of units to respond to the increase in calls?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and so we've hovered not too much, not too far from there, plus or minus two or three in that range. But what we've seen a difference in, at least with Metro Fire, is what resources we use that are most effective. So for example, if we're able to reduce a percentage of calls that go to the hospitals, then proactively, we got to identify is how can we better use those resources? So the number of ambulances transporting are going to be affected specifically by A-Pot and how we can also benefit and help those patients not transport if they don't need to.
Right.
To your point, we can flood the system with more ambulances and just transport everybody, but that's not the best thing for the patient. So we're really trying to navigate that in a fiscally responsible way.
Absolutely, because that's an expensive solution. Back to MIH, couple of questions here. First of all, is when you mentioned a unit, an MIH unit, how was it determined whether or not that would be deployed as opposed to a traditional ambulance?
So they're in the, they're kind of, I like to call them ninjas. I call my, I call my MIH ninjas. They're kind of in between, they're kind of in the background of the system, and any of our fire engines or ambulances can can call out, and they can add us to their incident. So if the patient meets criteria for MIH, then they can, they can call our MIH unit out. The problem is, is that the, the fire engines and trucks, they don't know if our, our unit is already on like another scene, like maybe they're dealing with a high 911 utilizer or they're dealing with a behavioral health patient. So that's why they'll have to check and say, is this unit available? And if they're available, then allow them to their incident.
And with the advent of telehealth, is there an opportunity to reduce the number of MIH units required to be in the field as opposed to basically each unit having, you know, a way to talk to the patient?
So right now, our telemedicine, what's great about it is our providers are the telemedicine. So they can talk while they're driving to another call. So the other systems, they're calling a third party that would be down in like LA or they're calling another entity. With our telemedicine, it's actually calling our own providers. So when you're calling, you already know you're talking to Kimberly or you're talking to one of our providers that you're aware of. So what that's essentially doing is that's just expanding our reach. Memphis, Tennessee, they're using telemedicine exactly the way that we are, and it's just expanding their reach.
Okay. And then the last question I have at this point is, is there a way to, I guess, move the, the sieve, if you will, up to the dispatch level and so that you would have somebody staffing at dispatch that might be more engaged and knowledgeable than simply move this resource to this place?
I would say absolutely there's, there's always that possibility. There's also something very vital with being able to actually see the patient, because what you get in dispatch is you get a lot of subjective stuff. My grandma, if she told you that she was bleeding and you asked her if she was bleeding seriously, she'd be like, no, I'm fine. But yet her arm would be cut off and it'd be spurting blood everywhere. And then you ask somebody else, are you bleeding? And they're saying yes. And they'd ask, are you bleeding seriously? Yes. And I'd go up and I'd say, here's your Band-Aid. So there's a lot of subjectivity when you call 911 and dispatch versus actually being able to see.
If I might add, it's a really good question because we do work closely with our dispatch system and center, and they're proactively working now to get to such a state where we can have a healthcare provider of some training or level to help us filter some of those calls. So as we talked about levers and things we can do to help the system, that would be the first place where we can triage or filter some of those calls to make sure we're helping the system. And I think it then gets back to your first question about number of resources. So again, that's the objective, is to clearly get the right resource to the right patient at the right time.
Well, and I guess I'm just looking at how do we, again, reimagine the system, recognize that it's not working. And so you have the logistical piece at the dispatch and there. Then you have, you can have a different level of response in the field that is maybe to divert away from the ER. And then potentially at the ER, you could have a, you know, a communal paramedic that can accept up to four patients, right? And so I'm looking at the low hanging fruit that we can start to implement to drive that number down while we work on how we redesign the system. Because some of these are going to be facilities that we're going to have to find funding for if we're going to, you know, make them happen.
Supervisor Hume, I think you should join our working group. You have a lot of those answers. But to your point, yes, we're working closely with Dr. Khan and the systems, and we're looking at any and all options to, to be efficient as a, as a county and as a system. It's not just Metro Fire, it's all of us together. So it's proactively being worked on.
Right on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you. I don't know who this is directed to, so anybody jump in. So I've been meeting with the Hospital Association, Sutter, and others for years on this subject and been very interested in it, and MIH in particular. But I was told, I thought for sure, maybe I'm remembering it wrong, that the state wouldn't allow it and that there were hurdles to us implementing it. What happened?
I can take that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Supervisor. I'm Dave Magnin. I'm the EMS Administrator. It's that old saying, do it and then ask for forgiveness. The state still has not come out with a written cease and desist to any of the other counties that are doing MIH. And so we're all operating on that precedent until they send us the actual documentation. It was all just word of mouth, and so that's where we're at.
Okay, it's an answer, not a very good one, but.
I mean, like I said, they, they told us, they told us two years ago that, no, they would never approve a program like that. And we're still, well, LA is expanding theirs. So we're hoping it may change.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that does make it difficult from a policy or resource perspective for us at the county. Okay, well, that's, that's all the questions for now. We're going to go to public comment, and I think there will be some additional questions and comments from board members. But thank you for the, the presentation. That was really wonderful, and I'm very proud of SAC Metro and certainly to be served by, by your organization in my district, so.
Thank you very much.
We'll go to public comment, starting with Mr. Jensen, who was in the video.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and the staff and partners that are here with us. My name is Brian Jensen with the Hospital Council of Northern and Central California. And I want to first say that in recent days, I've had a loved one who was transported by one of the EMS agencies represented in this room to one of the hospitals represented in this room. And I am deeply grateful for both partners, for their service, their professionalism, and the great care that my loved one has received. And it's in that spirit that I think we are all gathered here, because we're here to serve the public, and we have some daunting challenges. I first want to just comment on, on the challenges that others have described. Our hospitals right now are more full with more sick people than historically they have been. The, both the volume and acuity of the patients is worse than it has been traditionally. So you have more and sicker people there. We have, we're one of the few growing regions in the state of California. We have also tremendous growth of people who have no need for emergency services accessing emergency services, where they need care of another level. So all these things combined, but I want to just transition into this. I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to the county for investing heavily in things that we've been working with you on for years in behavioral health, both the mental health and substance use disorder programs and facilities. And I know you have many projects in process for subacute facilities in that space, which is part of the problem with A-Pot, is the back door of the hospital is closed. Not literally, but when you cannot safely discharge someone to a subacute facility for psychiatric care, substance use disorder care, or simply a skilled nursing facility, then they stay longer in the hospital unnecessarily, which means at the front door, there's a backup. And then our friends who are so diligent about wanting to get back out and, and answer the next call, because we need them to answer that next call, are stacked up unnecessarily. I want to thank the hospitals for the innovations that they're making in operations and throughput because they're doing tremendous work. I want to thank the EMS agencies for innovating, SAC MIH, Tele 911, that the city of Sacramento and Kasunus Fire are both invested in. We're thinking differently because we have to. The, the approach is yes and, as Dr. Khan said. It's all of these things layered together. It's the only way forward because we have a very complex system, a large growing region, very intransigent problems, and yet there is hope because there are new ways of doing it. And if we lean into these innovative approaches, we're going to get there. So I want to say thank you to you and thank you to our partners in the audience.
Mr. Jensen.
Brian. First of all, I just wanted to, Chair, if I may, I just wanted to thank you for all of you done to be leaning into this issue on behalf of your clients in the, in the association. One of the things that Dr. Khan mentioned was the implementation of AB40. And so obviously, that's a deadline that is going to be fast approaching. And so, you know, I appreciate all of the folks you just called out and look forward to the participation as we kind of come together, you know, across the aisle, if you will, and figure out how to get this done.
No, absolutely. There, there, we believe that the only way forward is through collaboration, not just communication and cooperation, but truly collaboration where we build something jointly. And, and we have great partners in the audience to do that. And, and we are grateful for that, and we're grateful for the leadership of the EMS agency as well. So absolutely, we need to talk about how to implement that. And I'll be the bad guy for Greg. Dr. Khan, as he corrected me the first time I met him, he's too embarrassed to correct anyone else for calling him Dr. Khan, so I'll do it for him. He is a great leader in this, too. I want to acknowledge him because he outlined in a, you know, graphic, something that, you know, he spent an entire meeting with, with some of us, you know, in recent weeks, half a dozen different things we can be doing, policy-wise, protocol-wise. There's a really a scope of work for the next few years that we can implement. It's going to take a lot of work together, but there's a way forward, and, and he's got the vision and the drive and the right approach to doing that. So we're very grateful for that as well.
Thank you, Brian. Rose.
Hi, I'm Rose Clansell. I'm the ER Director at Sutter Roosevelt, also the System Lead for Sutter Health for our A-Pot Committee. I would like to thank Supervisors Patrick Kennedy and Pat Hume and county staff for your work with our LMSA and specifically solutions to A-Pot. Hospital emergency departments and emergency medical services are critical components of California's healthcare ecosystem. They work together hand in hand to make sure residents can access needed emergency medical care 24 hours a day, seven days a week. At Sutter Health, our emergency department personnel focus their work on delivering quality care to patients in the most efficient manner possible. We aspire to receive every patient in a safe and expedited manner so that ambulance crews can quickly return to their duties in the field, serving the broader community. We have a history of working together with local emergency medical services to reduce offload times by establishing data and foreign mitigation strategies. Reliable data is key to measuring accurate wall times and is very important in assessing whether our strategies are continuing to be effective. Data reliability can only be achieved when involved parties agree on the methodology of measurement and outcomes are transparent for review and validation. This is an area of continued refinement. As a system, Sutter hosts monthly A-Pot meetings with emergency department leadership to review transfer of care times across more than 20 emergency departments and share best practices. We have updated our electronic record, medical record to now capture A-Pot times internally and display outcomes so our executive teams are continually updated. We use the A3 Lean process, an international best practice developed by efficiency experts at Toyota, to develop, deploy, and refine strategies. This is all implemented in concert with our LMSAs to identify opportunities for improvement and monitor outcomes. At Sutter, our goal is to be a resource for our community and provide access to all patients that require medical attention. Our success in reducing our A-Pot time by over an hour at our Roosevelt campus was in collaboration with our LMSA and our EMS agencies in Placer County. I now look forward to collaborating in Sacramento County with Dr. Khan, and we all share the same goal, to serve patients safely and efficiently and get EMS personnel back into the communities to serve those in need. Let's continue to build off this good work, maintain the current standard, and work together to use accurate data to improve our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, Rose, I just wanted to publicly thank you. I use you as an example quite frequently of how this thing can work and how it can be done right. And you've taken a lot of time with me and to educate me, and, you know, anytime Kerry wants to move you over to Sacramento, you know, we'd, we'd love to have you.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost.
I just want to say I'm excited to receive this report. I've met several times in the past with many of you, also with the same conversation prior to you launching this amazing program. And I want to thank the hospitals who have so generously invested in, in this. And also, I want to say on a personal level, even before COVID, I've had a lot of trips to the emergency room with senior, my, my parents. And we waited sometimes for a day or two in the emergency room, waiting for a bed to open. So this is an, this is an ongoing problem, and I can't believe how it's growing. I, I did want to say that I, I think it's genius, the mobile integrated health. And it seems like even if you're seeing a patient in the field, you could triage over the phone and get to them in the field and reevaluate or triage and say, no, this needs to go to the emergency room. So it's not like you're taking this, you're actually able to get to them sooner and still get them where they need to go. It, it seems like it's, it's genius, the way you have outlined this program and the way it's so flexible. I did want to ask if your vehicle for MIH is a special, do you have a special, like a medical office vehicle for, for these, these individuals who are treating patients in the field?
It's an SUV, and it's actually located right outside, if you guys would like to come see it afterwards.
So it's not like the, the CERT, you know, when they go out to the fires, they have, you know, you can actually take someone inside there and treat them or do a minor surgery or whatever. It's not like that. It's just.
It's an SUV. We looked at two models, the one of like an ambulance, we could do procedures in there. But getting a chassis for an ambulance was going to be about a year and a half versus getting an SUV. We were able to get that within three months.
Great. Well, congratulations, and I think you're courageous to take a big step forward. I think we, we're all grateful, and I look forward to seeing it grow and supporting it.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask Chief Rodriguez, I know he's been leaning in on this issue, and it convened a huge and I think very effective meeting earlier this year. If you had anything to add relative to sort of the needs of our first responders generally, we heard a lot about MIH, but maybe you could address some of the other needs?
Thanks, Supervisor Hume. Honorable Chair Desmond and Supervisors, Felipe Rodriguez, your Fire Chief, serving at a Kasunus Fire in Elk Grove and Gull and all of South Sacramento County. Most definitely, great words, great presentation by Dr. Khan, great words by Mr. Jensen, Metro Fire and everything they have going on. But as first responders, pretty much it just comes down to implementation of AB40, working together, the follow-through with that. Of course, investment by us and the hospitals to make sure we have enough staff, enough units, and innovation. And a lot of that was spoken of tonight, so telehealth and MIH and the funding for all of that. But together is the key word for us to do this together. I've been serving as a Fire Chief here in this county since 2017, so coming up on seven years. As been mentioned, for over 12 years, it's been a problem, and it continues to be a problem today. We're sitting at about an hour, and it's just not going to stop. So we have to do this together, and it just takes that investment by all of us.
Okay. And thank you, Chief. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. So first, I do want to add to the course of thanks here for enlightening us about a very successful, what appears to be a very successful intervention, rife with a lot of creative approaches. So I want to congratulate you on all that you've achieved at this point, and certainly want to continue supporting you and being a partner in any way the county can. I was actually encouraged to hear the ask for forgiveness comment because I think that can stand for a lot of things that the county is responsible for as well on occasion. I know that this is a non-action item on our agenda today, it's a presentation, but I'm going to suggest to Siobhan that, it just occurred to me that we're, we in District One are using some of our ARPA funds, I forget the amount, I want to say maybe 300,000, 300,000 to work with One Community Health on delivering street medicine for our homeless population. I'm getting the sense that there may be an unintended I'm getting the sense that there may be an unintended but welcome consequence of that in terms of keeping that particular population from having to visit ERs for things like wound care and other ailments or medical attention that's needed. So I would just encourage us to think carefully about how we can kind of maximize that added benefit. And once the street medicine program that we've envisioned is up and running, I think we should definitely at least have a conversation with many of the speakers today about how we can help them in their mission while we're achieving ours to assist our homeless population. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you. And I promise this is the last time I'll queue up on this item. I just wanted to offer Chief House if you had anything you wanted to add as well, given this first time in chambers for you.
While he's coming up, I just have to point out that these guys just can't help themselves with wall time back here. Look at this.
Chair Desmond and Supervisors, Adam House, Fire Chief for Metro Fire. Colleagues, this does look different than wall time in the hospital, though. Chief Rodriguez hit the point, this is all of us working together. Innovation really is the word. Thinking outside the box. Your comment, Supervisor Kennedy, on asking for forgiveness. We have to really look at our constituents, and patient care is the priority. Dr. Khan coming in with innovations and thinking outside the box is very apparent, being very progressive, five-to-two in their support, collaborative effort, because this entails labor. And being proactive and visionaries is the key to this. MIH, at the root of this, we're seeing statistical data of change. We need more of them. It's no secret that Sacramento or LA City is asking for more. We should be very proactive in that ask. So thank you for the time, but that data is working.
Thank you. And then lastly, I'll just say, Dr. Khan, Mr. Magnino, my colleagues and I were able to get some money in the budget for staff time dedicated to this issue. Is there anything else that we need to be doing from a county side in order to support this effort?
Absolutely. So we have the staff in-house now that are able to start to develop the relationships to get people to alternate destination. So, you know, we are going to be reaching out to community-based organizations that exist currently today. I've had conversations with folks in the county just over the last few months where they said to me, "I can't believe I've never spoken to the Sac County EMS Medical Director. I can't believe I've never had an opportunity to speak to the person in your seat." And it just, it highlights that there are silos that exist that need to be broken down. We've got folks that are doing outreach programs today that should be doing outreach programs to be dealing with the high utilizers, to be dealing with the folks that are calling all the time that don't need to come to the emergency department. So we appreciate the funding for the staff positions. It allows for the data analysis that's going to allow us to make decisions. It allows us to have people that are going to start doing the contractual discussions that need to happen in order for us to have alternate care destinations. But I think you raised the point yourself is that we need the brick-and-mortar places. You know, we've got, we've got places out there, like the Well Space Crib comes to mind, you know, but they have a very limited capacity. And we've got a growing population and a growing subpopulations with medical and healthcare needs that, again, don't need the emergency department but need to go someplace. So being able to continue to get your support on trying to identify these locations is critical.
Okay. Well, thank you. That concludes the presentation. Let me just also thank everybody who participated today. Dr. Khan, I will not make that mistake again in pronouncing your name. Our major hospital partners. And Brian, thank you for drawing attention to the back door. And I think this board has been very focused on expanding capacity that will provide that relief, and when we continue to expand that capacity. And Chief House, yes, it was great to see you here in chambers. I think we need to make sure that this presentation is, results in some either policy change or resource allocation from this body. And if, even if the policy change is to advocate at the state level to make it very crystal clear that MIH is not only allowable but eligible for funding from different sources, then we need to take those steps as well to support those and other efforts that will improve APOC, improve these numbers that we're talking about. So I, too, am very hopeful, certainly very hopeful in seeing all of you here together and seeing how well you're working in the support from the labor side, from the departments, from the hospitals, from the county. And I think we get to continue working in this direction. But Mr. Lutz, you know, as policy decisions and resource needs come up that this board can support, I hope you will certainly be bringing those to our attention as well. So. Okay. With that, thank you very much, and we will move on to our next item, which is item 77?
Seven. This is the Homeless Outreach Workshop.
Okay. Emily?
Thank you. Hello.
Let's wait one, one, a few seconds here, a few people clearing out.
I gotta bring the other set in. We come with backup, too.
One group of uniforms leaving and another group of uniforms coming in. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much Supervisor Desmond. And the Board of Supervisors, Emily Howken, your Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing. And I'm happy to be here today at the Board's request to give an overview of how both my department works on homelessness, but collaboratively Sergeant Tiffany Vettel, who will come up in a minute, and talk about how the Sacramento County Sheriff's Homeless Outreach Team works. So as many of you know, in about fiscal year 2122, the Board really started making a much more concerted effort to both increase the number as well as the types of outreach staff working in our unincorporated county. You, thank you, allocated a significant amount of funding to create what we now call our multidisciplinary outreach teams that include navigators, peer specialists, and our behavioral health partners from the Department of Human Assistance. While these teams include county staff, I'd be remiss to not recognize the tremendous efforts of our partner, Community Health Works, formerly Sacramento Covered, who do a lot of the, almost all of the on-the-ground, day-to-day work. And Kyle Stefano and Scott Young, as well as my staff, Rachel Davidson, are also here. And want to acknowledge the hard work that they and their teams do to implement what I'm going to try to describe to you at a really high level. These teams are coming out of our office. They are focused primarily on delivering services to those experiencing homelessness, connecting them with shelter, with housing, with other critical services. But we always do that through the lens of how we can also address the impacts of encampments in our broader community. We understand that our role and how effective we are is really impactful to the way that we are able as a community to respond to those concerns. So today, our teams, again, driven mostly through Community Health Works, have the capacity to deploy in the unincorporated county in three ways, each of which I'll describe to a slight bit more in subsequent slides. First, we are deploying proactively into larger encampments in the unincorporated county as well as the Parkway, in areas that are prioritized primarily through county staff. Secondly, we're able to deploy in response-driven needs to crisis or other immediate needs that come up on a daily basis. And third, we have teams who are regularly out in community office hours, trying to reach the more suburban areas of our community, but also allowing people to self-refer into services if they're seeking those services. I also want to note that our teams are also continuing some encampment support services that really began as a response to COVID. This is specifically our efforts in providing sanitation and water delivery into encampments. And we also coordinate with the Waste Management Department on debris removal in encampments. So now honing in on those three deployment efforts that come out of our office. The first approach is the Encampment Services Team, and this really was the crux of a lot of the policy and funding decisions that were made back in 2122 budget. This team focuses on those camps that are brought to our attention either through the public, through your offices, through 3-1-1, from our department partners such as DOT and Waste Management, who are out in the fields all the time, through our outreach teams, through our partners of the sheriff. These tend to be camps that have more complex needs, that require a more intensive and oftentimes more time-intensive efforts to help move people out of homelessness into shelter or housing. This is, we have some subjectivity here, but generally, we're prioritizing camps based on, A, the size. We're looking at camps usually, definitely more than six or seven camps, tens, up to 20-ish or larger, depending on the location. We're also looking at the vulnerability of the folks living in those encamps, encampments. That includes encampments that have a large number of folks who are elderly, or if there is presence of minors or presence of pregnant women. And we also look at the behavioral health and physical needs of folks in the encampments. We certainly consider, and we get a lot of input from county departments, on safety concerns. This would include camps that might be blocking public access to a sidewalk, might be in close proximity to moving vehicles. As many of you know, we have some county roads where there isn't, it isn't safe there at sidewalks, and we've had to, we've had to address some camps in those because of proximity to moving vehicles. We've had camps that are closely proximate to waterways or steep slopes where we need to get in as a county and do maintenance or repair work, and we can't do that because they're encampments. We also look at safety concerns regarding weather and flooding especially is one of the primary things we look at. And then finally, we look at public health concerns, and this might be pest or vermin infestation, also large quantities of trash and debris, et cetera. And so this is, you know, this is the factors we look at, and we try to make sure that the Encampment Services Team is available throughout the county and targeting various camps over the course of the year. So over the course of this year, at least from January to September, the Encampment Services Team has been in nine different camps throughout the county. They tend to spend two to three months in any camp. So nine camps doesn't sound like a lot, but that's because these are the larger camps with more people, with more complex needs. You can see that in those nine camps, there were over 200 people living there. And the community health workers or outreach specialists, navigators, whatever you might call them, job in the Encampment Services Team is to spend the amount of time and effort to hopefully engage as many residents as possible in services, to make linkages to long-term resources. That might be shelter, that might be housing, that might be behavioral health, it might be all of the above. They're spending a lot of time in these encampments, which often tend to be a little more isolated, creating rapport, creating trust, and increasing people's willingness to actively say yes and to engage in services on their own. When the Encampment Services Team is saturated at a camp and they are moving on to another camp, if there are still active needs, they will pass on those individuals for case management into the CBO, is what they call it, the Community-Based Organization Team, which is another subset of outreach. And this team often, we talk about a lot about co-deployment with our Behavioral Health Heart Team in relation to our relationship with the city of Sacramento, but we do that exact same relationship here in the Encampment Services Team. And we have heart clinicians and heart peer members who are deploying to help address those complex needs. The second sort of group, and I should say there's four, four of the community health workers are dedicated to the Encampment Services Team. Then we have our American River Parkway Team, and we have 10 community health workers solely working within the park system, primarily the American River Parkway, but also the Dry Creek Parkway and other components of our Parkway system. Similar to the Encampment Services Team, they are doing all the deep engagement, they are trying to connect people to services. But they also, because the Parkway is so unique and has such complex, both geography but also needs there, they work very, very closely with the Rangers. And they'll target areas, for example, in the winter that are likely to flood, and we need to get people to safety before the waters come in. They'll also work with our Parks Department if there's a planned event, a triathlon or something else, or we need to do goatscaping to help move people out into safety before those efforts come in. They'll also respond to vulnerable, they'll also respond to vulnerable clients that the Rangers or others lift up to us. And because of the geography of the Parkway, and it's so vast, and there's no way, even with 10 people, they could be everywhere at one point, they also have office hours of sorts. I'm putting that in quotes, there's no offices. They are in designated locations throughout the Parkway where both Rangers know where they're going to be on, let's say, Tuesday at 2:00 PM, but also the residents living in the Parkway know. So there's an ability for people to find the Rangers if they don't happen to be, sorry, find the outreach workers if they don't happen to be in a place where they're working at that particular time. The third group, which consists of the final eight, we have about, we have 22 in our current contracts. If you add up what I just, which I said, we have eight community health workers who are assigned to what we call our community-based outreach team, or CBO. And these are the folks who are doing the balance of everything else. They are providing that long-term case management for folks who are referred out of a deeper encampment team. So once the Encampment Services Team leaves, if there's still people who have unmet needs, they can make a warm handoff into this team. And this, this is more of an individualized service versus a camp-level service. These are also the folks who will co-deploy and respond to immediate crisis needs, whether that's coming through the sheriff's office or from one of your offices or another avenue. And they also are the teams who are out primarily in our more suburban areas of the county where there's not huge concentrations of encampments, but still a really intense need for these services. And they hold office hours. Currently, they do office hours in the Arcade Area, in the Carmichael Area, in the South Sacramento area. And they rotate in community spaces like libraries and parks. And while technically, not technically, this is not a part of the Department of Homeless Services, we do work incredibly closely with the Behavioral Health Heart Team, who, of course, their touch is countywide. I know all of you are very familiar with the work of the Heart Team. We often talk a lot about co-deployment with the city, but they are co-deploying with our teams as well. And so they are doing on-the-ground linkages, referrals into behavioral health services, but they also provide an additional level of rapport building and trust building. They support general engagement and help provide those warm handoffs into other services as needed, especially for clients with complex behavioral health needs. So they're a huge asset to our teams. So what happens when someone says yes? There's a lot of things that can happen, very individualized. This kind of provides the most common things that you might see. And I do think it's important to discuss that, you know, yes can be very iterative, depending on where a person is in a moment, depending on what the weather conditions are, depending on what's being offered. And so the first yes we might see might be a willingness to accept a bottle of water or a snack. And the second yes might be a willingness to provide, some identifying information, but not, not really the depth and level we might need to enroll in services. And the third yes might be that willingness to enroll in services. It's also important to say, people say yes and then say no, and then say yes and then say no. And so our team spends a lot of time gaining that trust so that people do say yes, and we're always willing and eager to help turn a no into a yes. But you can see the myriad of things that are available. Certainly, these teams are the critical touchpoint to access sheltering and housing through our homeless management information system and the coordinated access system. We currently, certainly have a capacity issue in that system, but they are working to ensure everybody who wants shelter or housing is connected into the system and maintains that connectivity, because it's a, that's also a fast-moving system. And if you're, if you're not ready when you get that call, then you could lose an opportunity. But they're also doing lots of things to get people ready for that next step. Making sure you have your ID is critical to almost every service that we provide. Being connected, I just listened to the great presentation from our healthcare providers, making those linkage to your, your medical care provider so that the folks in our encampments aren't calling 911. And they're making that connection, they're getting enrolled in CalAim and other types of health services. They also do a lot of assistance with getting people to where they need to be. It's complex to get to various places, so our teams do a lot of transportation coordination as well as direct transportation. But there certainly are times when people say no. And this could be an initial no, this could be after multiple attempts. And again, as I said, anytime a no translates to a yes, we will take it. We are working to get more refined data because, because this is such an iterative process where what you say today and what you say tomorrow can change drastically, it's very difficult to sort of measure what that means. But we're working with Sacramento Steps Forward, as well as Community Health Works, to try to get a little bit more data about at least at that moment that you say no to something, what is the why? And we're trying to do that mostly so we can help inform where are the gaps in the services we're offering? Are people saying no because what we're offering is too far away? Then how do we think about better locating our services? Are they saying no because they don't have the transportation to get to and from? Well, how do we fill that gap? And this can help not just inform how we as a county fund different programs, but also our system as a whole makes those connections. This is, you know, we, certainly our teams, and they may have more to say about this, talk a lot about people's particular situations, the things that tend to rise the most in terms of when somebody says no. And say the first one is probably the most important. Is it... And say, the first one is probably the most important, is it people's willingness to engage in a permanent solution versus a temporary solution? People who are living outside may say no to a shelter, but would say yes to permanent housing. And so that's a challenge, and one of the reasons that we're building different types of sheltering that is more attractive and amenable. But historically, there has been much more higher preference for permanent solutions than large congregate shelters we've had, been able to offer. You know, as much as we try to lower barriers to access, it is true that all of our services require you to reveal a lot of personal information. And a lot of folks have experienced trauma, have behavioral health issues or other challenges, and there's a hesitancy sometimes to provide that personal information, which is why the rapport building and the trust between the on-the-ground workers and the clients is so important. But we do see folks who are unwilling or untrusting to provide that information. Certainly, the experience with our system as a whole has, you know, rightfully or not rightfully so, caused some people to lack some trust. You know, if you were offered a shelter bed four years ago, and it was, you know, a big congregate shelter with 50 people, and you couldn't bring your dog, and that's your only experience, getting you to say yes is something that's different. It's our job to explain and help people to understand why it's different. But there is certainly past experience with either our homeless system of care or other systems of care that lead people to say no. And then finally, you know, we do hear concerns that if you engage with outreach, that might influence decisions that we, as a community, make about enforcement or cleanup. I don't think this is founded, but there certainly is concerns in the populations that we see. So I do want to share, you know, some of the outcomes and impacts that we see. You know, I talked about the three different teams, the encampment services team, the Parkway, and the community-based CBO team. In the first nine or 10 months of this year, we have enrolled over 1,100 people, and you can see how it breaks down. Enrollment means not just that they've come up and said, hi, I'm willing to take a granola bar from you, but that you've been willing to enroll in an outreach program. That means you've identified yourself, we've put your information in the homeless management information system, and you've agreed to actively work with the outreach workers on whatever the next step is for you. You can see, you know, the positive exits, and this is permanent housing, temporary housing, and shelter. And while these do, you know, these are lower than we would like, I think it's really interesting to see, especially in the Parkway. You know, the Parkway houses some of our most chronically homeless, most vulnerable, most long-term homeless. We have permanently housed 40 people, straight from living on the Parkway, into a permanent housing. That is not insignificant, and that really speaks, I think, extensively to the efforts that the outreach teams do to find unique solutions to people who have really, really complex needs. And in addition to just exiting, which is our primary look, did you actually exit homelessness, we're providing over 11,000 services. And this is not unique, so one person could get 20 services, or one person could get one. But this is everything from helping you get your ID, signing you up to Medi-Cal, helping you navigate the CalFresh system, whatever it might be. And so we're really working hard to try to track these a little bit more nuanced, and looking forward to sharing more detailed reports with you, including some more information on the trajectory between yes and no, or no and yes, hopefully, as we move forward.
Okay. Emily, let me pause for one second. Supervisor Serna?
Thanks. So are these numbers from January 1 of this calendar year?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I just wasn't sure how to interpret the header on this, and I wanted to make sure that I understood when we're talking about 40 being significant, that's 40 over 10 months?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, my apologies for the title. That actually concludes, I want to hand it over to Tiffany. Obviously, I'm here to answer any questions. I offer Kyle and Scott as well, if you want any more detail from them. But right now, I think I'd like to hand it over to Tiffany to share the efforts of the HOT team.
And before you do that, thank you, Emily, for this, and thank you for, you know, Tiffany being here as well, the Sheriff's Department being here, and Kyle and Scott very much appreciate both of you being here as well. I think one of our challenges is now you have things broken up between EST and Parkway Teams and CBO, and it's just in terms of some of the terminology and the acronyms is a little tougher. It always used to be, hey, these are the navigators, right? They collectively refer to everybody. It's sometimes our challenge, my challenge, and my staff's challenge is helping people in the community understand these things. I mean, how would you prefer that we refer to this collectively to people, instead of having to separate it out and try to?
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think especially with the CBO team, and I would, so I think for your, you don't need to. This is really just the way that we have assigned staff. But from the community's perspective, and the roles that the different staff play, from the community's perspective, they can report to yourself, to 311, and it will get to the appropriate place here. We can also, I think we have shared with you, we can share again, the community locations for the CBO, which is, you know, where you can self-refer. So we're just dividing it up here to sort of show the different levels of effort, but you don't, you and the constituents do not need to understand this. They need to know, I need help, how do I call? And the answer is, is, the best answer is calling 311 or 211.
Okay. So I'm just going to refer to it collectively as our homeless?
Yes.
Outreach Teams, and then we can get into more details from there, but, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Tiffany, welcome.
Hello, good afternoon, or almost evening here. I'm Sergeant Tiffany Vettel, and I'm the supervisor of the Sheriff's Homeless Outreach Team. I was asked to provide an update from the team's efforts since our last workshop, what we held in May. I'll be sharing relevant information and statistics that have taken place during this period, and I will start off with a review of our team's staffing levels. They haven't really changed much since the last time that we were here. We still have nine deputy sheriffs assigned to the team. Eight of those deputies are in the field, and they're divided between our North Division, Central Division, and East Division. I have one deputy who's modified duty, who's assigned as the liaison for homeless outreach and support. I have one probation officer that's assigned to our team, and one deputy assigned to the Work Release Division, who supervises the inmate work project crews. I have one crime and intel analyst and myself, the supervisor, assigned to the county-wide unit. I also have a sheriff's lieutenant, who shares this as an additional duty, while assigned to the operations commander of the North Division. Service areas have not changed as well. We still deploy out of North Area, and we cover Central and East Divisions. Rancho Cordova PD has their own HOT team. Our HOT mission continues to be crime prevention and community safety through high-visible contacts, which include outreach, resource, and enforcement. We continue to address any of the criminal activity and the victimization that is incurring, correction, sorry, occurring within these encampments. This is accomplished through an emphasis on improving law enforcement and community response to homelessness and connecting homeless individuals with support services. How do we accomplish this mission? Well, we continue to do this through the ongoing personal contacts that we have with the homeless individuals in a way to increase their trust and make referrals to our service providers. We have developed multi-agency partnerships to increase collaboration between law enforcement and service providers in order to assist the homeless in becoming self-sufficient. By working with these local outreach organizations to coordinate medical and mental health services, housing, and employment for homeless individuals, through enforcement of laws, through, i.e. trespassing, public intoxication, aggressive or prohibited handhandling. Our next slide here, we'll talk about some of our partnerships. So some of the stuff that we've been doing recently. We actively engage with our partners to help educate and assist businesses and the public in a way to help enhance community safety. Our approach involves attending meetings and engaging with different community-based organizations. Some of those meetings that we attend are the Community Business Watch meetings throughout the county, Property and Business Improvement District meetings, also known as P-Bid. We'll attend any of the Board of Supervisors' meetings if we're invited, and also the sheriff's offices started our community meetings again, and we attend those. During these meetings, we engage with local businesses and residents and share information and best practices to prevent and address public safety concerns. We believe by doing so that it's fostering a sense of community and trust amongst all the stakeholders. I have regular or bi-weekly discussion with DISH's Assistant Director and Law Enforcement Liaison, where we're able to collaborate and address homeless-related issues and concerns that are affecting the communities that we both serve. She coordinated a meeting with Sacramento Steps Forward as a way for us to discuss the issues and concerns that we have with the CAS system. We also recently coordinated, HOT team coordinated and hosted a meeting with the Community Health Works, formerly SOT-Coverd, and DISH. We had a very productive discussion, and we were able to finally meet face-to-face with both of our teams and the navigators that are responsible for each of the service areas. They were able to meet with the deputies that are assigned to those service areas and exchange numbers and ideas. We were, we feel better being able to see them face-to-face, because we can help accomplish each of our missions by working together. Since our last presentation, we also attended the open house ceremony for the Florence Safe Stay Shelter and had the opportunity to tour the facility. We toured Next Move Family Shelter, which was very eye-opening for us. And after speaking with them, we were able to help them this holiday season. So we're going to be partnering with the Sheriff's Toy Project, and we'll be able to support 20 of their families that are in need this holiday season. And then lastly, we continue education and training for our team. We recently attended a homeless liaison officer's training, which was presented by the California Peace Officers Association, and taught by a sergeant with the Anaheim Police Department. The training had equipped us with the valuable insights and additional skills to assist us in continuing to address the issues of homelessness in our community. The slide that's up here will be stats from May 1st to September 30th. The first stat is the 14,643 is strictly calls for service that patrol handled that were transient-related. The next number, the 3,800, is going to be all the calls that just the HOT team handled themselves, in addition to the 14,000. We've cleaned 309 camps, 1,812 sites have been visited, 217 misdemeanor arrests, 122 felony arrests, 351 citations have been issued. We've towed 133 vehicles and 49 heavy-duty tows. We've responded to 3,913 emails and voicemails. We've recovered 652 shopping carts and 4,877 syringes. Year-to-date for syringes is 12,239. Additionally, May through September, we have our domestic violence stats, which you guys have probably seen before. So when we go out and contact individuals, we also do a confidential survey, trying to find out where they've come from, how long they've been homeless, why they've gotten, or how they've gotten into this way of living, how we can help them, and then we ask them if they've been a victim of any crimes. So here's some of the numbers on the domestic violence. We've had 115 victims who reported, or who told us about 850 incidents. At the time of our contact, 182 were reported and 668 were not reported. We started collecting that data as of July 16th, so we're missing May and June. Sexual assaults, still we have 98 victims with 668 assaults, 162 reported and 506 that went unreported.
Can I ask you to pause for a second? Supervisor Kennedy?
Sorry, curious about the domestic violence numbers. You say "not reported," what's that mean?
When we speak to them, they didn't call 911, they didn't report it to law enforcement at that time, upon our initial contact with them.
So how do you find out about them if they're not reported?
When we do the survey. So we'll ask them, have you been a victim of any crime? Have you been, and we do specifically domestic violence and sexual assaults.
Got it.
So, and the DV goes, the majority is going to, is females, but there are males that fall into that category as well.
Thank you.
And then criminal history, subjects convicted of a crime, 346. Violent history, 301. Nonviolent, 560. And those who've been a victim of a crime, in addition to the domestic violence and sexual assault numbers, is another 395. And then cleanup for the year from May to September is 351.78 tons, which is over 700,000 pounds. Year-to-date is over a million. And we got additional information from President Clean, so it actually puts us at 1.392, 320 pounds of trash that we have cleaned, year-to-date. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Tiffany, I see our undersheriff stepping up to the podium.
Don't go too far away.
For?
Sheriff Board members, thank you for giving me a few minutes today. Each of you know how, that this is a priority, like the number-one priority for the sheriff since he's been in office. And the approach that the sheriff has, for lack of a better term, aggressively taken in law enforcement, if you leave any community unchecked, I don't care if they're housed, if they're unhoused, what area of the county incorporated, if you leave that unchecked, there's going to be a small number of people that take advantage of that community. And as you just saw, the numbers, the domestic violence, the sexual assaults, which many of them are rapes, and Supervisor Kennedy, you asked a very good question. How do we know those aren't unreported? Because when the HOT team goes in with the POP team, the individuals that are on the HOT team and the POP team are hand-selected. They're the most compassionate, caring people that we have. And they have a rapport with the homeless community where they might not have access to phones, or might not have access to call, or might be afraid for their life because they're on the Parkway or some other undisclosed place where they don't, they don't really have access to call 911. And we go in, that rapport is really important for the officers to make, especially with women and the elderly and the children. And I think the, I think the statistics that you saw really point out that the sheriff's vision of going in and dealing with the homeless is to protect the homeless. It's not a crime to be homeless. But there are victims in these camps, a lot of them, and there's a small segment, I don't know if it's small, you saw the numbers of the felony arrests, over 300 felony arrests and misdemeanor arrests, right? It takes a lot to arrest somebody for a misdemeanor anymore. So we have a real crime problem in our homeless camp, and that's the approach the sheriff's, the sheriff has taken. I think it's been effective. We've done six operations. These numbers aren't even inclusive, because we started these operations in March. So there's three months of data that aren't on this board. And one of the things, and this is where the sheriff and I would like to work more closely with the county are, is services. Some of the stats that weren't up there, there were 731 contacts, and in the seven months of data we gave you, we had eight adults accept services. And mind you, it's not beat cops out there talking to homeless, it's people that care about them, that are, that are trying to provide services. We had eight adults that accepted services, and six kids attached to those eight adults, basically four adults.
And when you, when you say "accepted services," what does that mean?
Actually, wanted help, I guess is the best way to say it, right? I need?
So that, could that service include either shelter?
Housing, yeah.
Or, okay, or any kind of outpatient-type treatment?
Yeah, it's all of the above.
Okay.
I mean, we, I mean, we're very, very well-versed on what the services are that are out there. I would like to give the board kudos on a couple items. The core program is working out really well, the habitual offender program is working out very well, and we're working really close with the DA's office and their community prosecutor for the homeless. And mind you, just for everybody in the room, we're focusing on criminal activity. Notice that there was one stat up there you didn't see, and that was the number of sweeps we do. We don't do sweeps. We go into, we clean up, you know, if there's environmental waste and hazards, we clean that up. But we don't move, because of the Boise decision, we don't move camps. But we go in there and we, we're victim-oriented on this. The other program is the automated voucher system. We came, so we're a little different, right? We're out there, it's not the HOT team and the POP team all the time, it's patrol officers. They're out there 24/7, seven days a week. Homeless doesn't stop after 5 o'clock, and it doesn't start at 8 o'clock in the morning. And so we are able to get those that are most vulnerable, like the mother of three children, or the mother of two children, vouchers to hotels now, and get them off the street instead of calling 311 and waiting too long to get those services. So I'd really like to give the board kudos for helping us out with that in the county also. But that's the state of homelessness, and we're going to continue these operations. They're working. And I was talking to Tiffany earlier, and she said pretty much the large camps that we were seeing six months ago, they're hard to find now, because that's what we focus on. And so I'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
So I'm going to start with Supervisor Serna, but before he talks, I also want to give some kudos certainly to Siobhan and Emily, because I think they helped, they worked with your folks on making those vouchers available to the most vulnerable, who your deputies are encountering. So Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So, like, I want to start by offering my own thanks to the HOT teams. I think you're well aware that the southern portion of the district I represent has some areas of odd political geography in terms of, in one case, unincorporated peninsula that's surrounded on three sides by the city of Sacramento. I can tell you that, having heard directly from my constituents that are living in the city, literally across Stockton Boulevard, from an unincorporated portion of that same neighborhood, they're seeing a clean side of the street and not so much on the other side. And while that, I think, speaks well for the effectiveness of our HOT teams working in areas like that, what are we doing to best coordinate between what the city of Sacramento is doing in particular? is doing, in particular, in those areas where we have those, those borders, where you have different jurisdictions, you have different law enforcement agencies attempting to do very similar things?
Well, that's a, that's a tough question, right? Because our jurisdiction is only in the, in the corporate area. I've talked to the mayor's office several times about the operations we're doing, and talked to the city leaders about the operations we're doing. And one of the questions that comes up is, "Hey, Mike, where are they going?" And it was never the sheriff's intent, it was never the sheriff's department intent to push them into the city, out of the, it just, it could happen. But the answer was, we can't, we don't, you know, they do have freedom, we can't track them, right? And so, I guess the, the best way to answer that Supervisor, it's just a different ideology of how to address the problem.
I mean, in a perfect world, would we, would we have coordinated, and I know sweeps, sweeps are not what we're doing, and I know, I assume SACPD doesn't do sweeps either. But in a perfect world, it seems like you would have our hot response, at least temporally, you know, associated with what SACPD might be doing on any given day or week, so that there isn't some, you know, great distinction between just the cleanliness of one side of a, a street versus the other, where we have the border between incorporated and unincorporated areas. So, I guess what I'd like to suggest is maybe, not necessarily through the mayor's office or other city council offices, but maybe, you know, brainstorm a bit with counterparts in Sacramento, SACPD in particular, to see how we can better coordinate that. Because I certainly get an earful when I go to these community meetings, and it's odd because I'm, I'm getting a lot of sometimes terse feedback for, for the county doing a great job. It's kind of a strange situation. The other thing I wanted to note is, I saw, I think in one of the first slides from the, when the sergeant was up here, the fact that we have one probation officer, I think that's...
Correct.
Who, and how was that determination made, that there would just be one? And could we do more if we had, you know, a willingness by probation to maybe lend a, a few more POs to, to help out?
Well, you, you put it on the T. I'd love to have more. So, we'll talk to the probation department about that, because they're very helpful, right? Because as you saw, a lot of, a lot of the people that were targeting for criminal activity are either on parole or probation.
Yeah. And the last question I have is, is there a standard uniform for hot that's different than normal patrol?
I don't think so. I guess I'm wrong.
The hot team, we wear usually like an army-green tactical pant and a black t-shirt, and then we have the outer carriers that say sheriff on the front and back. Just with the elements that we deal with, wearing a patrol uniform is a little, little bit more difficult when you're climbing in between trees and bushes and different things, so.
Do you get the sense, Sergeant, that even maybe, I don't know how to characterize that, a more dressed-down appearance in terms of the uniform, do you think that that still poses any kind of weird psychology on the receiving end, when you enter the encampments, that, "Oh, here comes law enforcement." They have a badge on, but it's on a polo shirt, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, we'd like to think, I mean, command presence is everything, correct? Like, there's a difference between this uniform and the uniform we wear day-to-day. We, it's about officer safety, so we're not, not wearing the vest or the gun belts or any of that kind of stuff.
Sure.
So, I, I think it is probably a better approach than maybe a full uniform. They know who we are, they see us all the time. I know some people have different, you know, kind of outlooks on that thing. Maybe they're intimidated and don't want to accept services, but these are folks that we're dealing with every single day, that we're in and out with. There's a gentleman I've been dealing with for 23 years, and we've been trying to help him, we've gotten him help, but he goes right back out. So, there's the, there's the few that you can't help, and then there's ones that are willing to. So, I don't know if the uniform deteriorates people. I would hope not, because we're there to, to help.
No, understood. Thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
I just want to thank the sheriff and undersheriff, and especially the hot deputies. You have, your hot teams have done a masterful job at helping with communications and supporting me in my district. A lot of people in the district have questions, like, "What are you doing? Why aren't you fixing this problem?" And when the hot officers come into the community meetings and they begin to tell their stories and express, you know, 90% of them don't want services, and we can't make them, it's not illegal to be homeless. They give them a shot of, a little bit of a shot of reality, but they also communicate the, the many, many things that the hot teams are doing. Seems like you need more of them, really. Need more.
Well, so, on those six operations, it's not just the hot team, we've had up to 50 officers out there. So, we actually pull resources from the rest of the department. We have nine, but we'll have, the minimum we have out there is 20. So, we pull people, it's expensive, but it's the number-one priority. I mean, 94% of the public wants something done, right? They don't know what, but they want something done. So, we have to, we have to pull those resources, most of it's overtime, to make these operations effective and make them work. So, we're, it's not just them out there, they're directing it, but we got a lot of officers out there at these operations.
Oh, that's, that's good. Because the, there's a shift in the way that public feels about this issue, and they're, they're increasingly impatient that we need to do something. And so, it's, I just wanted to thank you, thank you all for everything you do. You're, I'm really glad you're there and look forward to, you know, hoping that we can add and build on what you're doing.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Undersheriff. This is probably a stupid question, but just so we're all talking the same language, and not just here, but outside, you know, in your mind, what's the difference between enforcement, which is the new word, and sweeps?
So, sweeps are real, right? You go in and you actually move a camp. We're not doing that.
Okay.
We're going in and we're enforcing criminal activity within a camp, whether it's 110 or 2010s or whatever. So, we're not actually going in there and taking their living conditions away, with the, with the idea that that's not the sheriff's purview, that's not, that's out of his jurisdiction, right? Boise made, you know, that a real thing for us, but it is within the sheriff's jurisdiction to protect every citizen, whether they're housed or unhoused.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Undersheriff. So, I had a couple questions. I mean, my objective today, or my hope today, was to hear from, because I, we, I think we've been really waiting for Coho, Community Health Works, to be in place and, and fully deployed. So, we, my office, all the supervisors' offices have this other real alternative to go to, for, for someone who is living unsheltered out on the streets and is not causing any kind of criminal problem, right? We're not, we're not getting reports from that perspective. But my, my hope is, having you both here, both the law enforcement approach and more the, I call it kind of, this is a social services approach, be here, is to encourage more collaboration, more coordination. And so, you know, and I talked to Tiffany, talked to Emily frequently, and I know you're, you're starting to have more regular meetings with not only the county staff, but, but also the Community Health Works staff, the outreach workers who are, who are out there. But one of the things I think that's really missing, in terms of my constituents, in terms of both business owners and residents, is they know where to get, find the sheriff. They know how to get in touch with you. And, and the sheriff's department is, is at Business Watch meetings, they're at P-Bid meetings, they're at Chamber of Commerce meetings and events and things like that. Certainly have not, and I know a lot of your folks, I'm looking up at Kyle and Scott, I'm going to ask one of you maybe to come and comment on this in a moment here. I know you, you're relatively new in terms of getting your teams up and running. So, I'd like to ask you, what is your, I guess, strategy to engage with the community so they will be more educated about the resources, non-law enforcement resources that are out there, that they can call upon? And as Kyle, as you're walking down here, I will say, you know, we had a breakfast a few months ago, me, you, and Scott and Tiffany, and, and that was great. I mean, those are the conversations that we need to be having regularly, so.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Emily. Thank you for having us. Nice to see you. That's a big question. I think I would just lead with saying, and I think I can speak on behalf of Scott and our whole team, that we're always willing to come to the table, including, of course, with law enforcement, to, and breakfasts, to collaborate on this issue. I, I for one, would love to be more present in community meetings and would be willing to do that, because I think that there is a lot of education to be done. To hear Supervisor Frost say that 90% of people don't want to accept services, I think it's a little misleading. I'm sure that statistic is true, but what's, what services are we offering people? You know, there, the services that are available don't fit every case. I read almost every single assessment that comes through our program, not just from our street outreach team, but from our Cali clients that are also experiencing homelessness. And there's so many folks that are newly homeless, that just got, you know, rented out of their apartment. They're not always people that are using substances or refusing the services that we have. I mean, I always think that there's a missing component at the table, which would be SHRA. You know, we don't have access to housing vouchers anymore, so people can't afford to live around in some of the resources that we have. So, you know, what are we offering folks that they're saying no to? Are we offering people a spot in a congregate shelter when they have small children, or a partner that can't come with them, or any of these sort of things that make them feel safe? So, it's complicated. You know, it's easy to say that people are saying no to what we're offering them. And then when I, when Emily showed the statistics about the housing placements that we made, it might seem like, I mean, I'm wondering what you guys thought about those numbers. To us, the fact that we're housing people directly from the street into permanent housing, that was never the way that the grants were written. You know, the grants that we took on were about moving camps and clearing camps, and we've kind of gone beyond that, and we're finding ways to house people directly from the streets, which we're so proud of. But it's almost like miraculous when we do that. You know, the, the PSH placements are gone, and right now, there's no more housing vouchers available at this time right now for our clients that we're serving. So, we really have to get creative on, on where we can put people. And we also have staff. A lot of our community health workers are like, almost adjacent to housing insecure, because, you know, people are just barely making rent, right? So, if our staff that are out there serving clients are having that problem, like, it's a, it's a really challenging problem. And it's not just about crime and the, and the encampments and people not wanting to come off the street. I really have a hard time believing that people want to be out there. So, I don't know if I'm answering your question. I think I'm sort of riffing, but...
Oh, you're, you're, no, it's, it's good riffing, but I, you know, and Emily too. So, I guess, no, and I appreciate all those points, and obviously, it's up to us to make sure we have more of those resources for people. So, we, we have more, go ahead, Emily.
Yeah, I just wanted to want to add other things specifically to your question, Supervisor Serna, what the, how the community, because like you said, the community knows how to call the sheriff, they know how to call the, and certainly Sacramento, Community Health Works is a great resource, and we would love to expand them and sort of, but I don't want the community to think that they are the only ones doing this work. And the reason I know it's unsatisfying that we say call 211 is because our system has said we want one single front door. And so, a disconnected person experiencing homelessness, or a loved one who's trying to connect, they don't have to connect. Kyle's group is great, it'd be great if they could connect, but if, the, the 211 system also has navigators, they call them the CAN team, Community Access Navigators, that are employed by another social service provider. And so, the, the challenge, I think, that we all feel, the sheriffs feel, certainly your teams feel, is that it feels dissatisfying when you call and there's no immediate access because the capacity's so low. But there are, in addition to the great work that Community Health Works does, we have the CAN team who are deployed through 211s. That's intended to be somebody who's completely disconnected. I've never met Kyle or Scott, I've never met the Department of Community Response in the city. I'm just somebody who's languishing and needs help. They can, they have navigation resources as well. Certainly, it's not enough that every single person outside can have that individualized case management, but that's why I keep, I, I'm also suggesting for the community at large, 211, because they would then be able to, they can look at HMI and say, "Oh, you're a, you're living in this encampment where Community Health Works, I can see you're enrolled in their program, let me reconnect you to Kyle." Or they can say, "I see you've never touched our system at all. Let me see if I can get the CAN navigators out there." So...
No, and I appreciate that. I'm going to just, just push back a little bit by, you know, talking about the experience in, in my district, probably would, I think, 75 to 80%, I think, of the, of the folks who are out there living on shelter on the streets, they're, they're, they're not in large camps that are kind of hidden from view. They're along commercial corridors in the suburbs, where they may, may move around within one geographical area. And, you know, 211 isn't at the Business Watch meeting. 211 is not at the P-Bid meeting, or, you know, or the, or the chamber event. But Tiffany is, the sheriff's department is. And it used to be, and Scott and I have had this discussion a lot, when I was running for office, I'd go to every one of these meetings, and either Scott would be there or one of the Sacramento Self-Up Housing Navigators would be there, in real time, talking with a business owner or with the sheriff's department about, "Hey, here, there's this camper here that's causing, maybe, maybe they're trespassing, they're causing a problem with a business, we're going to go out and make contact with them, you know, first and see if we can convince them to get into services." That, that's what I'm talking about, Emily, because that is the experience in the, in the unincorporated communities with, with, I think, most of the homeless that people see all the time.
And I, and I don't want to, and I, I hear Scott, I think we're willing, we're willing and able and happy to do that as well. I just didn't want it to be that if you don't happen to be at P-Bid meeting, or you don't happen to know who Scott is.
Right, right. And I get that. I mean, you know, I support everything. I'm, I'm just telling you kind of the dynamic we face, and I know it would be a heck of a lot better if people knew that you're an alternative, that Tiffany is not the default for everything. And sometimes that's appropriate for the sheriffs to be the default, because there is some kind of criminal activity happening, but a lot of times, there's not.
Yeah, just really to answer your question directly, we are, you know, making a concerted effort to get out more in the community and do that. Before this meeting, I was meeting with Macro Partnership. Yesterday, we met with the North Watt Business Watch. And so, we also are going regularly to the HART meetings, the homeless, the H-A-R-T HART, HART meetings, and we're really trying to make a concerted effort to make sure that people in the community know who we are, know what the resources are, know where the resources exist, where our community health workers have their drop-in hours, whether it's in the north area, or whether it's, you know, throughout the community. So, I think, just to answer your question, that's something that we're committed to doing, and we're, we're, you know, definitely going to be doing more of in the future.
I appreciate that, Scott. And I know, I know you've done a lot of that in the past, and I understand you're still getting kind of up and running and new staff and things like that. And I would also challenge, you know, Tiffany, I mean, I don't know if the sheriff's department attends some of the HART meetings, because you'll have some of the same discussions that are, that are more, not, not focused so much on business needs, but on, on more of the social service providers. I mean, I think that would be an opportunity for the sheriff's department to be more involved there. I just think it's a, and, and thank you, Scott and Kyle, very much, for, for everything you're doing. I, again, in the unincorporated Sacramento County, where we know, I think the, the nature of where the encampments are, they're, they're much different from what you see in, in, I think, in downtown Sacramento, where they're much more static, they can be much larger. They're, they're a lot more mobile in the unincorporated area. And we know it's a different, it's a much different law enforcement picture in unincorporated Sacramento County, in terms of, of the response. And I just want to see, kind of, both, both sides of this to be working better together, because that's how we're going to maximize effectiveness in terms of getting people placed into services, whether that's shelter or behavioral health services that they need, or permanent supportive housing that they need, or if, if it needs to take some kind of law enforcement response. So, I'm just a firm believer in that, and I appreciate, you know, your, your commitment and, and look forward to seeing you at events where I get to introduce you to people and really crow about the investment that this board is making in, in your, your outreach efforts, so. I'll stop talking and go to Supervisor Kim.
Thank you, Sheriff. I have just a couple of questions, Emily, if I may. In your, on the slide where when someone says yes, what happens? The last item said that was referencing data entry and tracking. Do we only collect data and, and track our contacts with folks when they say yes, or do we do it every time we talk to them?
So, it's difficult if people don't identify who they are to track data. So, the enrollment is, and when I say, yes means, yes, I'm willing to now enroll. When we say enroll, that means that you're going to identify who you are, give all your information, so that we can create up a, a, a data for you. I mean, yes, we do, at the high level, try to collect data on, like, we went into this camp and there was 20 people. But if there's 20 people and 19 don't talk to you, we can't say a lot about the 19 who don't. So, it's a constantly moving challenge. The best data is at the time when people... moving challenge. The best data is at the time when people will enroll, because that means that they're giving you their identification, their histories. We're able to look them up in HMIS.
So, do we have any way of knowing if we have, you know, I think it was 1,102 enrolled, how many we've actually contacted that didn't say yes? I mean, do we have an idea?
Yeah, I don't have that at my fingertips, and I don't know if Scott or Kyle does, but it has been asked to me. And so, it's also a little bit of a moving target. In the EST world, where we're going into encampments, it's a little bit easier, because we can define, like, we're in this encampment, there's 20 people, all the people come and go. The other work we do, especially on the Parkway and the Sebo, is a little bit less encampment. I'm going to respond to your needs, or the ranger asks for this. So, it's, it's a little bit more of a moving target. But on the encampment-based approach, we, we don't, I don't have it at my fingertips, but it is something that I've noted, and on our ongoing reports, I've asked staff to try to capture that. It's imperfect at best.
Which I can appreciate that, but I think it is an important part of the data framework that, you know, needs to be examined as far as the workload that, that folks are out there doing. And then you brought up the Parkway, and now, time to be a little bit harsh. And, you know, remember when you had the slide on the vision statement or the mission statement for DISH, and I said, "Language Matters"? You referenced folks in the Parkway as residents living in the Parkway. They are trespassers. They're illegally overnight. This board has voted that we will enforce no camping in the Parkway. And so, as we approached with the EST teams, or, excuse me, the Parkway crew, the 10 folks that go out, and somebody refuses to speak to us or refuses to accept help, are they informed that they cannot stay where they are?
So, I don't know if that's an active, I'm looking at Scott and Kyle to say, "Do we do that?" I mean, the Rangers are the enforcement mechanism. Sometimes they're with you, and sometimes they're not, I believe, is the answer. So, I mean, our teams try to separate out our role from enforcement. The Rangers know where we have been. So, for certain, like, they report out and say, "Yep, we went to this camp today," and so it's, so at that point, the Rangers know you've made contact. You know, I don't think the social service staff necessarily are the ones that deliver that message. Sometimes we do partner. For example, if we know there's a large goatscaping or some other construction project, we'll say, "Hey, this is gonna be cleared in the next couple of weeks, because the goats are coming in," or something like that. But the actual, like, you've been violation, that's really law enforcement. So, the Rangers would be the, and the Parkway would be the ones doing that.
So, would it be safe for the Rangers to assume, then, that every contact, that the, every camp that has been contacted, anybody who remains has refused help?
I don't think so. I think that that's, again, you know, refusal of, as Kyle was sort of saying, oftentimes, people are like, "Yes, I want help," but the help that we have to offer them in that moment doesn't create a place where they can physically be differently. So, we've, we've enrolled you into a shelter waitlist, for example, or we've got you queuing up for a permanent supportive housing, but we don't have a physical place to go. I think there's a difference between that and the people who are just flat out like, "I'm good. I don't want to go anywhere." And that is very difficult to discern, the data. And again, as I said at the front, it's very iterative. Today, I say, "No, thanks, go away," and tomorrow, it's raining and it's cold, and I'm like, "I'm ready." But then our response is, "Great, we're gonna do an assessment, but if the bed's not available that day, it's not available for weeks." They're, they're still physically gonna likely be in that encampment.
And I appreciate that, and I'm not asking this just to be mean, but this board, prior to my arrival here, established that the damage that's being done on the Parkway is not acceptable. And so, when they say, "I'm good, I don't want to go anywhere," that's not an option. And so, UnderSheriff Ziegler mentioned the Boise decision, and if we're gonna hold up Boise as, as a reason to not do something when it's convenient, then we can, when we are absolved from what the Boise decision requires, which, again, I won't go off that I think it's being misinterpreted, but nonetheless, when they refuse to accept the help that we're offering, and they're in violation of what's been established by this board, I think we should be telling them, "You don't have to go into shelter, but you can't stay here." And with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Hume?
Thank you. So, aligned with this current stream of thinking about pushing back a bit, I'm gonna add my two cents. You know, when Kyle came up and responded to Supervisor Frost, that she, if I heard correctly, just doesn't agree with the statement that was made, that 90% of folks aren't, aren't saying yes. That's the very reason why I asked you months ago, asked all of us, we gotta get our hands around understanding the psychology of no and the psychology of yes. And I understand it's iterative. It's complicated. I get that. But we have to somehow conclude, maybe it's setting a time standard. So, let's say, in a six-month period, we went out with this service, you know, offer in January, they said yes. We came back in February, we offered some more assistance, they said no. If they're still in the same condition, in the same circumstance, six months later, to me, that's a no. They didn't take, they didn't take advantage of, of what was offered. And it's not just defined by whether or not they were housed, it's whether or not they are, it's whether or not their circumstance has changed for the better. Did they get mental health treatment, even though they're still living on the street? Did they get some kind of attention for their substance use disorder, even though they're still living under a bridge? So, I think it's how we want to define success, and I'm not willing to just kind of throw up my hands, and I'm not suggesting, Emily, that you're, you're doing this, but I'm not, for one, gonna just say, "Well, it's too complicated. It's too iterative." At some point, we have to say, "Listen, we have bent over backwards to get them what we think makes at least some contribution towards changing their circumstance of homeless, homelessness." That's the first thing. And the very reason, though, again, because of, you know, the fact that we can throw out percentages all we want, 90%, it's all anecdotal. That's why I'm feeling this thirst for data, you know, so that we don't have to, you know, guess, and then maybe go to a community meeting and throw out numbers that aren't, you know, supported by something other than our own windshield survey of the world. The second thing I want to push back on is the statement that was made earlier, that no one wants to be homeless on the street. Totally agree with that. Part of the problem is, and we know this, I think, both through our own experiences interfacing with homeless folks and through the data, that there is a great reluctance to follow rules sometimes. Not every homeless person is like this. Not, it's not the circumstance, you know, painted with a broad brush, that this is true for everyone that's unsheltered. But there is a reluctance, especially if they're chronically homeless, they've been homeless for years, that, yeah, maybe I don't want to live on the streets, but I don't want to follow rules more. I don't want to go live in a congregate setting, and I'd rather be where I'm at versus that. Or, my dogs are just too important, and if I don't have room for my dogs, I'm sorry. So, I agree. No one wants to be homeless. No one wants to be on the street. No one wants to live on the American River Parkway. But I think we have to be real honest with ourselves at some point, and say, "There's a portion of the population is just that they're rule-averse." And that makes it extraordinarily difficult for us to kind of have a productive way of providing them what they need, and, and again, getting to a place where, you know, we can make a difference. And that's what this is all about. So, I mean, you're hearing a lot of frustration, not, not just from me, but I think from many of us up here.
A couple of things. I, I do agree with you, I think. First, on the data thing, I agree, is that this, it's not okay to just have sort of anecdotal information. So, we, like the sheriff, are working on that. You know, we are working with SSF to add some fields about common reasons of why people say no, and, and, you know, and so I want to commit that it's not just too hard. We are gonna, we are gonna work on that. The second thing on the refusals, I don't want anybody to misunderstand. I don't think there's a level of, or, I'm not suggesting there's not a level of personal accountability. And folks, sheltered, unsheltered, wanting to engage the system, also have a personal accountability. And, and that is, it doesn't, you don't get to let go of that just because of your housing situation, so.
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry, I don't know how much time we have, but just one quick, concrete example to address maybe what you were expressing, Supervisor Serna, what I was getting at about this, questioning the statistic. And I totally agree with what you're saying, that sometimes if people in the Parkway are saying, "No, no, 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 no," for no reason, that's against the law, and I respect that. I think where we come into challenges and where people are saying yes, and we can't put them anywhere. And a concrete example that I have that we're struggling with right now is, for example, we have a building called Central Sacramento Studios. That's a new building that is, was supposed to open in April, that we were just stoked about. We have so many clients that are matched to it, including a big handful of folks who are living in Project Room Key. And that opening of that building was promised in April, and it's still not open. So, we have people who are waiting, 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 waiting. And in fact, some of the folks that came out of Project Room Key, the county's paying for them to be in a hotel. So, when I was saying before about, like, it's sometimes to us, it feels like there are people missing from the table. Like, we don't know why that building's being delayed, but we're the ones that have to deliver that message to our clients that trusted us, that did all that application, that shared all their personal income information with us, and got accepted to this placement, that they thought they were moving in in April. And now it's November 7th, right? So, I think that's what I was getting at, when it's hard to take that question, like, people don't want to go, you know, we're up against some systems that we don't know how to explain that.
If I could, are we completely full now at Safe Stay Power in Florin? Do we have vacancies?
Yes, we still have...
Okay, this is my point. This is my point. So, why, I understand what you're saying. It seems to me, though, we can only kind of tailor the, you know, to the desires of folks to a certain point. Maybe it's not a permanent housing situation that we can get you into right away. Maybe it's a Safe Stay for the time being. Maybe we have to triage the situation. No, 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 but I don't like those Safe Stays. I don't want to go to a Safe Stay. It's not what I was hoping for. It's not an apartment. Shelter is, is, comes in a variety of types, right? So, that's my point, is that, you know, here, as we kind of debate this a bit, we still have vacancies at, you know, a fairly novel attempt to add capacity. Again, it's just, it's very frustrating, and it's not aimed at you. It's aimed at the situation.
Sure.
Thank you, Superintendent Serna, Superintendent Hume. I mean, I agree with those points. I mean, I think that we, it feels a lot of times that we are, we are trying really to do good things from this dais by bringing on more capacity. And it feels like, I mean, and obviously, we always need more, but there isn't, there isn't an obligation or an expectation on folks who are unsheltered to take advantage of these services. I mean, and, and I agree philosophically that people need to take some agency. I mean, we can't just be out there with outreach and engaging for months and months and months and let someone say no forever. I mean, one of your, your points you made, that it may be no because of concern that if they engage, it will, it will influence law enforcement, law enforcement experience. I would say they should be told that, "Look, if you don't engage, it's going to influence the law enforcement experience." And I think that's because that is the reality a lot of times, especially like on the Parkway. And I think Superintendent Hume is right. This board made that decision. We were, we were obviously told that there's limitations to that, that ordinance, I'm just speaking on the Parkway now, that if it's an immediate fire hazard or an environmental hazard, it's something we could, we could move someone right away, prohibit them from camping. But in the larger Parkway, our hands are tied by this Boise decision. But I think if someone is offered an alternative, an alternative that's not just a spot in a parking lot somewhere, but certainly in one of these Safe Stay communities, then they should be told, "Look, either you go into that, or you leave, but you can't stay here." And that's, that's, you know, I think that's the challenge we have. I frankly would be supportive of an ordinance in Sacramento County that says, "Look, if you are offered a bed as defined," it would have to be defined a certain way, a certain number, a certain number of times, "then you can't camp in public." And I think a lot of municipalities are going that way because of some of the frustration that they're seeing. And to me, that makes me think of another point. How do we, how does our, how do our Rangers, for instance, on the Parkway, since we're talking Parkway, how do they know if someone has been offered a bed? Is that information shared with them? Because I know we've had this discussion as well, Emily.
It's difficult at the individual level. HMIS data is not available to any law enforcement. That is a policy decision. I'll say it's very standard across most HMIs. It's not unique to Sacramento. So, probably at the individual level, they, they wouldn't necessarily know. But I, I did want to say, you know, to your point about, you know, if you were offered place, you can't camp here. We are seeing that at Florin. I mean, we're not quite full yet, but we're getting there. I mean, I know Supervisor Kennedy shared that when he stayed there, you know, there were very few, if any, folks camping. And I think that's a commitment, not only of the outreach folks bringing people in, saying, "Hey, I've got this opportunity," and this is, if you don't, I do think that message is shared, then. The, the operator of the shelter is going out and saying, "Hey, you can't be here." And then frankly, the sheriff's doing the follow-up. And I think that that is where we're seeing it.
That's great.
It's just in a very concentrated area. And bringing that to scale, especially at the Parkway scale, I think is a challenge.
It's difficult. So, I, in response to your, and so that's great. I mean, I think that's, that's about the Safe Stay, and that's certainly something we've built into this model with our ordinance, the 1,000-foot, you know, area, plus the prioritization of the surrounding area. And it's a good segue into our next agenda item tonight. But in terms of the data, I mean, it, it seems to me that that's gonna be crucial. We have to figure this out, a way to either share that with law enforcement, or, I mean, I suppose an alternative that I know law enforcement has brought up before, is, "Hey, can you, can you set aside a few beds for law enforcement?" So, they can make that offer in, in real time. If the person doesn't take it, they can say, "Okay, well, then you're, you know..."
Right.
What do you think about that? Because I just think we're dead in the water.
No, I agree. And we've, and I know that the undersheriff sort of referenced these, you know, very small subset of vouchers, which, that was not the intention of them necessarily, but it could create that. It's, it's not at a scale that we could do that.
Right.
I think that, you know, access into individually identified data is gonna be probably a big challenge. I don't disagree with you that they need to know. I think the other thing is, we'd have to, as a community, agree to, what is a no? Is it a no, "I didn't do the assessment"? Or is it a no, "I did the assessment, made it all the way through, got the call for the bed, and said no to the bed"?
Right.
Is it both those things? How, you know, so, I, again, not, not an excuse...
Or is it no to an outpatient resource, right?
Right, right. But to your point, I think you're right. We're seeing lots of communities, the city of Sacramento is doing this and others, for lots of probably good reasons, holding some beds outside of the community-wide system to allow us not just to address law enforcement things, but let's say a big storm came and we needed to move a bunch of folks in the Parkway, or there was a big construction project and DOT needed a camp cleared. So, I do think there's some validity there, and I'm definitely happy to work on what that might look like for us. I know that when we've had those resources, I don't want to speak for Tiffany or Kyle, but I think that both teams have been excited, because they're like, "Finally, I have something that feels tangible and real, and I can give that people." And I, I don't want to strap our law enforcement officers either with having to navigate a system that they shouldn't have to be experts in, right?
Yeah, okay. Superintendent Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. So, one thing that, you know, I did have the opportunity to go visit Chico last week, and you and I talked about that, Emily, and their Safe Stay community. And it all came about because the city of Chico got a little too cute, and, you know, decided that a tarmac, you know, is housing. And so, the courts ended up getting involved. And I guess, here's my warning. If we don't find more sites, if we don't find more opportunities for Safe Stays, and I'm a huge believer in the Safe Stay as one of the most valuable solutions, if you want to call it that, and the courts step in, I'll tell you what I saw in Chico, was their hands are tied, and, because it was all court-generated, and some of the very things that we have done in our Safe Stay that, in my opinion, are making it a success, no walk-in, walk-out, controlling how much stuff they can have, which has a very significant health impact, you know, they, because the courts have told them, "No, you can't do that." And so, what you have is a very inferior product, in my opinion, to what we're standing up. And I just, you know, think that we have to look at, and in all five districts, we gotta find places to, to stand up before the, someone gets the courts involved, and, and we lose a lot of our control.
Thank you. Couldn't agree more with that. And Emily, you're doing an outstanding job and all of that. So, please, you know, don't take this, I mean, because we, you know, you and I have these conversations all the time. I mean, our constituents are frustrated. I'm frustrated. A lot of us are very frustrated. But Superintendent Kennedy is absolutely right. I mean, I think we have a formula that we know is the right one, and it's a matter of having more capacity. One last thing I want to bring up, that's something I've talked to you and Siobhan about, and a little bit with the undersheriff, is, you know, we look at some of these kind of multidisciplinary teams, or teams like the CRT team we have with the Sheriff's Department with a, and you know where I'm going with this, with a, with a social worker embedded with that team. Could we explore, if the sheriff would be willing to do this, some, maybe even a pilot project? How about we have a navigator, whether that's a Community Health Works navigator, or outreach team worker, embedded with the hot team? And, or maybe it's not embedded day-to-day, but maybe more assigned to the And, or maybe it's not embedded day-to-day, but maybe more assigned to the hot team. And again, to me, the, the positive aspect of that would be that, look, if the Sheriff's Department is called out to something and they have this person that's working directly hand-in-hand with them, they can avert a law enforcement response by hopefully getting this person into some kind of help that they need. I mean, could we explore that?
Yeah.
I know there are models that exist.
I'll let the undersheriff speak from his perspective. From our perspective, yes. And historically, a couple of years ago, we had that, you know, we had, at the time it was DHA social workers that were, they weren't like riding in the vehicle, but they were much more, so I am definitely open to it, either through Community Health Works or other contract providers, and I'll let the undersheriff.
Okay, great, yeah.
The answer is yes. So it's important for the board to know that we do two totally different things, right? We operate totally different way. We're focused on the criminality in the camp. So normally, go back to your question Supervisor Kennedy about sweeps. Normally, before you do a sweep, you give a 72-hour notice, right? And then we notify the county of the date before we go in, not a sweep, but before we go in by request, four weeks out. When you're dealing with a criminal element, you can't do that. And so when we, that's why we don't do sweeps. And that's so we don't give the 72-hour notice. We show up in the morning or in late at night or whenever, and then we look for criminal activity. So that would have to be worked out. But I think, I think with both sides understanding what the other side's goals are, I've already talked about the hot team, the pop team, very qualified, handpicked. I really believe they know what they're doing. They're at the highest level briefing me and the sheriff all the time about what they're doing, about the things that they're offering, you know, they know the right people to call. But just a navigator assigned to the Sheriff's Department or a team with the focus on criminality, we'd have to be able to continue operating like we do. Because we're not sweeping. We're not moving people out of their, they're unhoused out of the residence. That's not our goal.
Right, okay. Well, no, I appreciate that. And, you know, I know details that have to be worked out, but it seems if we can do it with the CRT model, we can do it on the homeless outreach model.
And that works. Yeah, that works really well. And not to bring up a side note, but I heard it mentioned a couple of times and me and the sheriff have had a lot of in-depth conversations about this, but it's also a jurisdictional issue. I think the park, the Rangers in the Parkway should look at the model about the criminality because we don't go down there. And it might be something for further discussion too, to bring all the players together.
All right, thank you. Thank you for being here. Do we have public comment?
We do have one public comment. Jeff Powell.
Jeff, you're up.
Hey, thank you, everybody. Whew, it's a huge problem, this homeless thing. In fact, it's very, very serious. It's more serious than only 22 people that are allocated. 5%, 8%? I think the numbers are embarrassing. I'm sorry. I mean, I like everybody here, but 8% success rate in a year to get somebody to say yes? Do you guys know what HOPE stands for? Hearing other people's experiences. I just don't think we have the right people out there to share the experiences and talk to these people to get them to kind of commit and do the things that they need to do. I have a lot that I've written down, obviously. So a little bit about me, I'm a mental health advocate, I'm a navigator and I'm a filmmaker. I know Emily, I know the sheriff, I know some of the board of supervisors. I've been in the community navigating services for 12 years, probably like 15 years. So thanks to the veterans, police, first responders, it's a huge problem that's going on. You know, there are a lot of things, there are some common themes. The right person at the right time, navigators for all acuity, brick and mortar, that was not only for this topic, but the prior topics, you know, substance detox facilities and gaps. You know, I talked a little bit about the percentage of the success rate of like placing people. You know, I talked to Mike outside about the criminalization, things that have taken place from a felony to the misdemeanor, what that looks like. You know, the allocation of overtime for sheriffs to go out there. There should be some open employees, I would think, for the homeless problem. I look at the touchpoints as far as getting the trust, but yet we don't have the data from the people that said no, but yet we're supposed to be out there building trust, but yet we're not connecting, reinforcing that because they don't have the data to show it. So how do we get there? Where is the solution? You know, I sit on that AFCIA, you've been over there, the Arden Arcade, Carmichael, faith-based, we have mobile showers, charging stations. We give reasons to go out. Phil Serna said it himself. Where are we going out with mobile medical? What are we doing to touch up with these people and talking to them a little bit and building that trust for some kind of incentive or some kind of services? You have people that are not connected to the county, not connected to the, you know, the community partners that are out there making a difference. I'm going to tell you, as a navigator and somebody that works for absolutely nobody, I have housed more people than the county. And that is a fact.
Jeff, can you start wrapping up?
Yes. And so I just wanted to just, and I love everybody here and everything that everyone's done, but the truth needs to be said. We really, really have to focus on the person-centered, the holistic approaches, the population, the navigation. I really love the idea of bridging the gap of the communication between the county, the sheriff, and putting that navigator to be able to go into the system, to be able to be able to give access for everybody to know exactly what's going on to, so we can solve the problem. The problem is huge. Sue Frost, thank you so much for what you said. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. A lot of good participation, good comments. Appreciate all of you being here and the work you're doing. We'll just keep forging on and Emily and Siobhan certainly appreciate the work you're doing. I know you have an incredibly, incredibly difficult job and appreciate all you do. So no action by us on this item, so we will move on to our final item.
Okay. For item 78, approve the construction and operation of a safe stay parking community at 4837 Watt Avenue. Approve American Rescue Plan Act district-directed funding allocations for District III in the amount of $1 million and for District IV in the amount of $300,000 for construction. Retroactively approve bids for modular buildings to be received as specified in the bid documents for the Watt Avenue Safe Stay Parking Relocatable Modular Office Structure Contract. Approve retroactive authority for the Department of Homeless Services and Housing in the amount of $3.6 million and approve grant authority to enter into an expenditure agreement with Kingdom Causes doing business as CityNet in the amount of $3.4 million for Safe Stay Parking Site Operations effective December 1 through June 30 of 2026.
Thank you, and I'm so sorry for the title flow. That's horrible.
Well, you should be sorry for the term relocatable modular office structure.
Good afternoon again. Happy to be here today now to discuss with you hopefully some reprieve to some of the challenges that we just talked about a minute ago. So happy to be here today to kick it off and then pass it to my colleague Natasha to talk about our proposed safe parking project at the Watt Avenue facility. As most of you will remember, when we first took the purchase of this site to the board in October of 2022, we envisioned that a component of the ultimate safe state site would include up to 50 spaces of safe parking. And again, in November of last year, when we came back with some initial site design concepts, we again contemplated the inclusion of safe parking. Since these two board items, we've had many public meetings, we've had two very large public meetings that all three supervisors attended. We've also met with the P-Bid and other smaller business groups and community groups around the role of the larger site as well as the component of safe parking. As you know, CityNet, who is our operator at Florin and Power Inn, will also, is also contemplated to be the initial, the eventual operator of the entire Watt program and did agree with the county to launch Phase 1 as a safe parking while we continue to work on the design and build out for the full site. And we did this because we recognize, this was brought up, I think, in just the last meeting, is that there's many people, especially in this area, along Roseville Road, in the McClellan Business Park and elsewhere, who are currently living in vehicles and therefore really are more challenging to transition into traditional shelters. And we envision providing a safe parking program to allow them to transition out of living in a vehicle into either shelter or housing. We recognize this is a short-term solution and not intended to be a place where people are permanently sheltered in their vehicles. As with all of our other safe stay programs, we envision that the safe parking program will similarly have all the robust services needed, both to meet people's daily needs, so food, laundry, sanitation, but also the wraparound services, again, to help them transition out of their state of homelessness into housing. As with other safe stays, the people staying in the safe parking will be expected to engage in the services that we offer, to help them assist them with securing employment, housing, treatment, other services, and either with repairing their vehicle or disposing of their vehicle once they find alternative housing. We are very committed to not creating a shelter where people are living in vehicles for a long time. Importantly, because this site, as it's designed or proposed to be designed, will not have full hookups and CityNet is not being asked to inspect vehicles for operational components and other things, that the participants will need to commit to not using facilities, if they have them in their RV, for sanitation or cooking and instead use those services offered on-site. And we're very committed because there's environmental hazards should that happen. Again, our goal is to really use this Phase 1 and this portion of the site to help move people out of vehicles into safe and sanitary and affordable housing. We anticipate that this program can operate independently for up to two years while we continue with the site design and planning for the full site, and then we'll consider incorporating this into the larger programming. As you know, we applied for funding from the state of California and we were awarded $3.5 million in their encampment resolution funding grant to support the operations of this for up to two and a half years, specifically with a commitment that we will target camps or vehicles along the state right-of-way on Roseville Road, but also in some of the right-aways in the McClellan Business Park. So that ends my comments. I'm going to hand it over to Natasha, who's going to talk about the site design and construction, and I look forward to approval today and opening hopefully early next year.
Thank you, Emily.
Good evening, Supervisors. Natasha Drain, Deputy Director, Department of General Services. And today I'd like to briefly summarize, emphasis on briefly, for you, the design features of the safe parking project at Watt Avenue. But first, I just want to touch on a couple of the property details. I'm going to come over to the projector if I can. So as you know, the site is, can you hear me okay? The site is located at 4837 Watt Avenue. It's situated between Wynona Way and Myrtle Avenue. We have a business park here on the west side of the property and some fast food restaurants and a health clinic on the east side of the property. And the site area, which is denoted by this yellow line around the property, that's actually a cyclone fence. The total approximate site area is 13 and a half acres. It's improved with a 130,000 square foot warehouse facility. The unimproved area, which includes all of the parking, the landscaping, as well as the loading dock area, is approximately 10 and a half acres. And of that 10 and a half acres, one acre of that is going to be where the safe parking area is. The safe parking site is also completely fenced in with a cyclone fence. To that, we are adding a privacy screening cloth on the outside of that fence to prevent anyone on the outside of the fence from being able to see into the parking area, obviously providing some privacy for those that will be staying there. We're going to be upgrading the lighting to LED fixtures and also adding two solar-powered fixtures as well. The guests here will be utilizing restrooms and shower facilities inside of the warehouse building. Our DGES facility staff are making some improvements to those facilities. We are also including portable units within the parking area. This will be portable restrooms as well as handwashing stations to provide some convenience for guests during the evening hours. We'll also have two double-wide office modular unit, as you said, a relocatable modular office structure. On the site, it will serve as communal space for guests as well as administrative offices for CityNet. And we're also contemplating a pet relief area underneath that shade tree there. And once this is complete, this should serve up to 30 guests. And I'm going to go ahead and move away from the projector now. So as to schedule of the safe parking project, we are currently in permitting and we expect to have final permits in the coming week. If all goes well, we will have a contractor onboard by December with contractor boots on the ground the same month. We're targeting construction completion by the end of January, but that has to be validated by the contractor once we get them onboard in December. So I want to also speak briefly to the next steps for the overall site. As Emily mentioned, relating to the full site build-out, we continue to work with DLR Group and our contracted architectural design firm to finalize the programming phase of the project. We're aiming to complete the programming phase of the full site by the end of December and coming back to the board in January to provide you an update on that progress. At that time, we hope to provide you a site layout for the safe stay community. And then finally, I just want to note the recommendations before you today. I'll just briefly summarize them for you. Of course, we're seeking approval for the construction and operation of the safe parking community as well as approval of the allocation of $1 million in District III ARPA funds and $300,000 in District IV ARPA funds for construction costs. We're also asking, excuse me, retroactive approval for the, to bid the office trailer and seek approval of the trailer plans and specifications. And then finally, DHSH is seeking authorization for the director to enter into a revenue agreement with the state for the grant funds that Emily mentioned, and finally also to enter into an agreement with CityNet for the operations. And with that, we are both happy to answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. What will be the expectation for the folks that take advantage of this aspect of the site in terms of their vehicle movements? So in other words, will they, will they, are they, what if they're like working homeless? So they need their vehicle to go to work, but they don't have enough income to, you know, have shelter at that point? That's their vehicle. Are they going to be permitted to move in and out daily, hourly, 24 hours a day? Or is the expectation, no, you go and you park and let it sit and that's your dwelling?
Right. Now, that's a great question, Supervisor Serna. So if somebody has an operable vehicle and they are using it to get to work, certainly we'll let them come and go and facilitate that with them. And we would want to support that. And actually, those types of folks would probably be amongst some of the easiest to help transition into housing. If, if they have a vehicle that's inoperable, we could do one of two things. And we do have some flexible funding that we've contemplated so that if it's repairable, we'd like to support that because their vehicle's a huge asset. And if it's not, working with CityNet to help folks dispose of those vehicles and whatever it means that looks like. But if they are using a operable vehicle to get to and from work or school or appointments, we will allow that.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
So in terms of the idea about repairing, I think that's great. I would have us kind of scour the county for any kind of technical institutes where young people are learning a skill set devoted to auto mechanics and, you know, that maybe those vehicles could be the subject of their, you know, their learning. So maybe that's a twofer. Another question, if some of those vehicles are inoperable or barely operating, and I only say this because I've seen it for myself, I think we probably, most, most of us have probably seen it. Many times, they can be leaking all kinds of nasty fluids, everything from, you know, fuel and oil to, you know, brake fluid and other things that we don't want contaminating the area. So what's the plan to make sure either before they take up occupancy within that fenced area with their vehicle, to make sure that it's not going to pollute the area? Or will there be some kind of other preventative measures to, you know, make sure that it's or will there be some kind of other preventative measures to, you know, make sure that it's not getting into the drains?
Yeah, I think, something we've grappled with, I would say, long-term, when we have the full site built out, those people that you just described Supervisor Cernah would probably not be given the option to bring their vehicle, they'd give up your vehicle, we've got a space in the Safe Stay for you. In this interim time where all we have is the safe parking, that's going to be, we're going to have to do a little bit one by one and assess, and obviously CityNet are not mechanics, so I do appreciate your thought about employing some help from folks who are mechanics. You know, what we have included is that they cannot use their vehicle for heating, cooling, cooking, but I hear what you're saying, if they have gas or other, or liquids escaping, we will, I don't know the answer, we'll have to, we'll have to work on that. I will say that when CityNet and my staff did sort of a cursory review of Roseville Road, it doesn't look like a lot of the vehicles there are in top-notch working order, so we're probably expecting a lot of folks who, who vehicle may need some assistance getting there, and then our primary goal will be getting them out of that vehicle. But yes, I hear you, we've been very concerned about environmental hazards, this does not have the appropriate drainage and hookups for all those things, and so we have, we have committed with CityNet that we'll be watching that, yeah.
And is the idea, Emily, that the, or Natasha, that the, each of the 30 stalls are going to be a standard parking stall, or is each of the 30 areas a little bit more expansive than that because, again, from just what we've all witnessed, many times when people are living in their vehicles, there's all kinds of accumulation of stuff leaning up against those vehicles or behind the vehicles, on top of the vehicles, underneath the vehicles, I mean, what's the expectation in terms of site use?
Yeah, just a couple of notes there, so theoretically you could have up to 30 vehicles, but it's, the guest capacity is 30, so you could have fewer vehicles if you have more than one individual in a vehicle, so I just want to make that note. The other thing is, is they are individual stalls, but you'll see we spaced the vehicles out in this plan.
You staggered them?
Yeah, the idea is to have them staggered to provide that, that bit of privacy and space that you're suggesting.
And you may have mentioned this in your presentation, but this will or will not accommodate RVs?
It can.
Okay, up to a certain size, I suspect, I mean...
I think some of those details we need to work with CityNet on and make some determinations on that, and it'll also be based on what vehicles are already there, so a lot of those assessments are going to have to be done sort of real-time.
Okay, and then the, just one last question, just looking at the aerial, where the double-wide would go within the fence for management of that particular area, would that also have some of the service needs of those folks living in their vehicles? In other words, will there be bathrooms there? Will there...
Yeah, so similar to the Florin site, that will encompass offices for the staff, some case management space, some gathering space for eating meals, the restrooms are inside the warehouse, so we're using the existing restrooms and showers, and DGS is improving them so that they're workable, which is why we get to the 30-person cap, that's a restroom-to-person ratio.
I suspect the rest of the parking field will be utilized for staff and others to use?
You mean the staff of CityNet are visiting to like park their cars?
Yeah.
Right now, we're targeting this area for that reason.
Okay, if I recall correctly, when I toured this months ago, over a year ago, I thought the bathrooms and the showers, there are showers, right? Are in the eastern part of the building?
There is another set of restrooms on this side of the building, which will be utilized by CityNet's staff.
Gotcha, okay.
So we're, there's, I don't believe there are showers on that side, but I could be wrong on that, but we, there are certain, we are utilizing this side of the warehouse for guests and then this side of the warehouse for staff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Hugh.
Thank you, Chair. Unlike the last item, I'm not asking this question to be punitive, but I'm assuming that we will not be concerning ourselves with current registration or insurance or that type of a thing?
We are not planning to, because that will be a prohibitive barrier, I would imagine, with most of the vehicles, however, we will be working with folks to bring them back operational, and in that case, we would work with them to help support registration and any car insurance needs.
And so my question is one of liability, in that when they come to us unregistered, uninsured, that's one thing, because we're providing them a place to stay now, if we allow them to leave in violation of California Motor Vehicle Regulations, is that a problem?
If Ms. Travis wants...
Yeah, I have not looked into that question, which we could explore further, but I would, off the top of my head, say no, because we're not liable for what they are doing, and they're the owners of the vehicle, but we can certainly look into it further.
Okay. Does anybody know a former CHP officer?
Or lawyer.
Okay, Supervisor Frost.
Oftentimes, when people are trying to connect to income or get a job, they go homeless, they live in their car, but they can't get a job because they don't have an address, will they use the address of this facility, or how will that work, and what about their pets?
So first, the pets, pets will be welcomed here as they are at other shelters, it's a really great question, we actually encounter this at all of our shelters, not just at this place. People do use shelter addresses for things like licenses, I would, we would encourage against it because as soon as you move out, it's wrong, but we also have other ways to help people get addresses, including through Loaves and Fishes and DHA, so if that is a barrier, that is definitely something either at the site or through other programs we can help them with.
Thank you, thank you.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, just wanted to follow up on Supervisor Cernah's great suggestion of, you know, mechanic programs. UEI, I think you're already familiar with, UEI has a program for automotive repair, and they have already been in touch with CityNet, so...
We'll connect on that specifically, thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
Okay, well, I'll finish by thanking you, Emily and Natasha, for this, and my colleagues, Supervisor Cernah and Supervisor Frost, we did a community meeting, it was the second about this site, but it was, I think it was more tailored towards this interim use that we had been contemplating, and I know you came to the 80-watt P-Bid meeting, and we continue to engage the community, which I know we will continue to do. I know this is the first safe parking shelter in the county, is that correct, Emily?
There was one the city of Sacramento operated for a short time, it's no longer operational, but this will be the first one the county's operating.
I'm sure that one was a failure, but, no, I'm sorry, it's getting punchy, but, no, I know there's a lot of unanswered questions and some things we'll have to work out, and great suggestions from my colleagues here, but I am very, very supportive of this, and I think it's a great thing to do an interim use. I would also, as the longer-term permanent use for this comes online and other ideas pop up, I mean, I think we should be open to other potential interim uses too, because it's going to be a while until this is built out and brought up to the standard of a full Safe Stay community that we're contemplating, so with that, I will certainly move approval of the item, and thank you. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, well, that brings us to our county exec comments.
Very, very briefly, I just want to, I know this is a really challenging topic for all of us, but I do want to thank Siobhan and Emily and Emily's team for all the work that they're doing on this issue.
Okay, thank you, Anne, and I have a couple things here really quickly. One, I received a letter from our state comptroller congratulating Chad Rendell and the county for our award for county financial transactions reporting, I wanted to make sure I call that out, so please pass it on to Chad, and I forgot the name of the award this morning when Supervisor Cernah was talking to our airport director, the airport experienced news naming Cindy Nickel as Director of the Year for medium airports throughout the country, and just really, our airport system is really a source of pride, and I like to be the voice that gets to welcome people to the airport, I know that that's going to be short-lived when our next chair, that's true, it should be every 10 minutes.
I was there, and it took a long time to hear twice.
Right, well, I'm going to, you know, I'm going to suggest that, and maybe every five minutes. And then, and then the final thing, final thing is, I just want to, I had a conversation with the city manager, Howard Chan, and this board a few months ago passed a resolution unanimously, asking the city council to consider this peninsula that Supervisor Cernah actually referenced earlier in the meeting, sending it to LAFCO to at least evaluate whether that could possibly be de-incorporated and brought into the county. The city is not going to be taking this up at a city council meeting, according to the city manager, but they are very, he told me they're very open to exploring some other relationship, maybe an MOU or something like that, and I don't know where that might end up, but what I'd like to do is have our Parks Director reach out to her counterpart at the city, I had the name here, Jackie Beecham, and have a discussion and start gathering some information about what resources the city provides to maintain that portion of Del Paso Park, so then, so this board, we can at least have a discussion about whether that's something we want to explore, so that would be my request. Okay, thank you. And with that, I know Supervisor Frost, oh yes, Supervisor Kennedy?
No, I'm just kidding.
Okay, I know Supervisor Frost has a German in memory, did you as well?
I just wanted to thank David Villanueva for joining me, and we had representatives from SHRA, Habitat for Humanity, Southgate Parks and Rec, who else? We had a number of folks out at Jack Davis Park this past Saturday to celebrate kind of the final cherry on top of all the improvements that have been made over several years with the assistance from the King's Foundation, building a full-sized basketball court there, the county of Sacramento, because we worked with Southgate to actually enlarge the park with an immediately adjacent tax-leaning property, and Kaboom, affiliate with Disney Corporation, that did a barn raising of a day of building a fantastic playground a few years back, and then the cherry on top was the completion of probably the most over-engineered shade structure that I've ever seen, it's never coming down, and a new performance stage and reconfiguration of the picnic area. It is one of the finest-looking, I'm going to brag a little, it is one of the finest-looking parks, I think, anywhere in South Sacramento, especially when you look at the amenities per acre, because it's not the biggest park, but it's full of a lot of activities for the entire family, including a handball court and so much more. So I just wanted to express my thanks to David for representing the executive team this past weekend, and invite everyone to go see it for yourself, if you, if you have on occasion the chance to be in South Sacramento, it's on 44th and 16th.
Thank you, Supervisor Cernah, and now, alternative to Supervisor Frost, for a German in memory.
Thank you, Chair Desmond, I just want to request this evening, if we can please close our meeting in memory of Jason Worth, I'm sad to report that we lost another community member to fentanyl. Jason Worth was 19-years-old, he was having pain, the information that we've received is that someone gave him a pill and it was unfortunately laced with fentanyl, it was just one pill. Jason was known as a great country boy, he was loved by everyone, and I want to express my deepest sympathy to Sean and Tabitha Worth and their entire family, and the entire community is wrapping around them, bringing meals, we just want to send our prayers for them at this time, and if you, we could close in memory, that would be great.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Frost, and with that, we will adjourn in memory of Jason Worth.